Good evening, everyone. My name is Miki Kellum. I'm Mayor Pro Tem and we're starting our meeting. We're gonna delay it for two minutes. The mayor is on his way. So I just wanted to welcome everyone. And the mayor is on his way. Thank you. I would also like to say the most important people in this city are here.
All right, I assume we are ready? Waiting on me? Yes. Thank y'all. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I call this CRA meeting to order. Today is September 21st, 2022. It is 5:05 PM. We are 100 Polk Avenue here in Cape Canaveral, Florida. And we're gonna start with the pledge. Councilmember Raymond, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the republic, the states, and to the republic which stands one nation, uncut, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you very much. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Board Member Davis. Vice Chairperson Kellum.
Here.
Chairperson Morrison.
Here.
Board Member Raymond.
Here.
Board Member Willis.
Here.
Everyone's here, welcome. Thank you all for attending. Council, staff, citizens. At this time, we're at the public participation portion of our meeting. If anyone would like to participate during that. This is the CRA, Community Redevelopment Agency Board Meeting. We will go into our council meeting next at 6:00 PM. Public comments. If you do want to speak, we ask that you fill out a card. I don't see any up here for this particular meeting. Let's see if our deputy city clerk has any hands raised. For those listening online, I see none. And with that, our public participation is closed, which moves us on to the new business portion of our meeting. Item number one, approve the minutes for City of Cape Canaveral CRA Board Meeting of June 21st, 2022. City Manager, is there anything here out of the ordinary that we need to know about? Okay. Council? Everyone's okay? I just need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes of previous.
Okay, got a motion by Board Member Willis, second by Board Member Davis. Any discussion? Board? Okay. City Clerk?
Board Member Davis.
Four.
Vice Chair Kellum.
Four.
Chair Morrison.
Four.
Board Member Raymond.
Four.
Board Member Willis.
Four.
Motion passes 5:00. To adopt the minutes from the June 21st, 2022 meeting, moves on to the second item of new business, approve fiscal year 2022-2023 City of Cape Canaveral Community Redevelopment Agency CRA Board Meeting Schedule and Financial Reporting Requirements. City Manager, anything here you need to know beyond what we've discussed?
No, sir. This is a routine every year.
Okay. So by stay at while, we have to do this?
Yes, sir.
Council, if there's no questions?
All right.
Vice Chair, your answer?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay, please.
I would like to add a meeting in October, if we could. I don't know what's available, but I think, you know, with the letter we got from the county and with the talks we've had at the previous meeting about going over the plan, kind of diving into it and changing things and making it better, since it was first adopted in 2012, I think another standalone meeting that we're not rushed through to work on that and also, you know, the grant information and advertising budget that we kind of rushed through at the last meeting because we were at the end of time. So I was hoping that we could add an October meeting for the CRA on its own, you know, because the other ones are scheduled before the council meetings. And, you know, something like, you know, diving into the plan and trying to make it better and see what we can do takes probably more than an hour. So that's my request.
Just to clarify, what this is before us tonight is to approve for fiscal year starts in November. And so the first?
October 1.
Oh, thank you. So that would go on the fiscal year 2022-2023? If she wants in October, it wouldn't, we would need to amend that here.
This is, these are the minimum meetings the CRA board has to have. You can always have additional meetings.
So she want, I'm just trying to make sure that October, next month, it does not fall into the schedule that we've already approved. This would apply for what we're voting on tonight because October 1, we would add that, we could add that in and it would be appropriate for this vote.
Mia, do you see any issues with that? We can add them anytime we want.
Okay. So you're, do you have a specific day in October?
No, I don't. I, what, you know, we have to look at what's available in October and I don't have that in front of me, but I thought Mia and Nick would be able to help us with that.
Okay. So I just need, if we want to discuss this, I just want to clarify a motion to add?
A meeting.
A meeting.
Mr. Chairman? Can I ask, can I ask a clarifying question?
Please, yes.
Miki, is the purpose of the additional meeting to help the board with their budgetary process? And if it is, then it probably should be before October. It should probably be in August or September prior to the board taking action on your, on your budget for the following fiscal year?
No, not necessarily because I think we're gonna talk about the budget.
Okay.
The CRA budget. This is just to add another meeting in October to have, like we talked about going over the plan, making changes, trying to implement some of the programs that we, and begin, you know, October 1 starts the new fiscal year. So I just thought that would be important to get that rolling.
Good. So I got a motion to add an October meeting date to be determined. Is that what you're, and we'll work through it, but just the open, the concept of adding in October is?
Yeah, just a standalone CRA meeting in October.
Who's making that motion?
I am.
Vice Chair. Okay, so I'll need a second to discuss it further.
I'll second the motion.
Does it, just by seconding, does it mean or even motion mean you support it?
I just wanted to say, I thought that now is really a good time to discuss it. We have time right now to discuss this. And I think that it's appropriate before October 1 to discuss this. And if you have things that you would like to add, I think you need to talk to us about that.
I would just like to add a meeting in October. I think today, tonight, we have the CRA budget to discuss, which is gonna take up time. And really, once we adopt the budget tonight, the meeting in October is really just digging into the CRA plan and redoing things that need to be done, addressing affordable housing for the following year.
Well, most, most of the time when you come up with a budget, you look at the components of the budget. That's how you determine what a budget is. You don't start with the end sum and then talk about the individual things. You start with the components of the budget. That's how accountants decide how we get to the end sum. So I think that we should discuss those components, the things that you want to add tonight so that we can either say yes to this or no.
Okay. I just, you know, the budget, if we're gonna add the thing, things into the budget, like the $50,000 is there for the improvements. I thought at the October meeting, once the money's there, we can decide where it's gonna go. Is that something, I mean, does that have to be decided tonight?
Which $50,000 are you talking about?
The $50,000 that is put into the, it's the SIGN incentive grant program.
Okay, want to make sure everyone has a chance to, Board Member Willis, did you, saw your hand go up?
I'm trying to catch up here, so.
Okay. Anything as of now, Board Member Davis? So just to, Board Member Raymond says, hey, let's try to do this tonight. If you're willing to try that, but at the end, you feel that you still need more time, would you have a problem with having another meeting if we can't? Because we don't want to burn up all our time here.
Mr. Mayor, could, could we not just call a meeting in October after October 1 anyway? Like we would an emergency meeting?
Yeah, I think the board can work with our director and call a meeting at any time.
With that, Mayor, maybe simpler to approve this as written. And as we near the end of this meeting, we can decide if we want to schedule one and maybe we could pick some dates then.
Yeah, I know that scheduling meetings with this council has been difficult in the past. I would love to say that it's been easy, but it hasn't. And so I think that Vice Chair Kellum is trying to get early buy-in. Now, I think if you do end up calling a meeting, it wouldn't be a surprise to this council or that board at that time, if you want to.
Well, I, can't we just schedule a meeting and then if we don't need it, cancel it? But I would like to see it on the schedule.
The issue is that we all have other commitments. And you, I know, just told us that you're going to Daytona for a conference on the CRAs. And the rest of us have different kinds of boards that we're on. And I know I have two or three meetings scheduled for the month of October.
I know I'm going to the West Coast for a course in October.
Okay, so it comes down to availability. Okay, well, if we can find availability that works, I think that that would be best. I fully support having a meeting in October. I'll meet every month if that's what we want to do.
Well, you know, in the, in the minutes of the last meeting, we talked about having a meeting, talking about the plan and how to tweak it or do whatever we need to do to better utilize the money. And then the $50,000 that's there, if we could use part of that for advertising and things like that. That's what I'm thinking about. And today is kind of rushed because there's a lot going on. So I just thought if we could, you know, early October sometime. And if it doesn't, if we don't, if we can't get it together, everybody's busy, then, you know, we can postpone it. But I just, it's so hard to get a meeting when we do a special meeting. Nobody ever agrees. So we put it in writing and then, you know, maybe by chance, we can resolve things tonight, but at least it's on the books.
What are we going to advertise? I'm just curious. What are we going to advertise?
Thank you, Dave.
Mr. Chairman, I, council, Board Member Kellum and I have spoken about a few possible things that the CRA could be doing that we're not doing now or in addition to. One of the things that we've talked about very tentatively is updating the CRA plan. Now, that is a discussion, that's a policy issue that the board will have to chew on and discuss and give CRA staff direction on whether that's something you would like to do or not. But I think that's what Board Member Kellum is trying to get to is let's have a discussion about that. And it could, it could be, and this is the board's decision, it could be at the regularly scheduled November meeting that's here on your calendar, proposed calendar. It can be in a special meeting in October as Board Member Kellum is requesting. So that's really just the decision. And so I think there's specific things that Board Member Kellum wants to speak about. That's one of them is updating the CRA plan. There are a few others about perhaps expanding the suite of available CRA loans and grants and programs that we've, we've tentatively started getting into, but we really haven't specifically discussed details with the CRA board yet. So those, those are the items that I believe that Board Member Kellum is talking about. She would just like to have the board discuss these items. And perhaps coming out of that would be some directions to staff so we could begin to implement some of these things.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
We already have to be here October 18th. Let's just schedule 5 o'clock, October 18th.
Is that our council meeting?
Yes.
I think the, okay, okay, so you?
I'll go for October 18th, but I think we need an earlier meeting than 5 because, you know, I don't want to rush through it. A discussion, maybe 4?
4, October 18th? Okay.
Sure.
So.
Let's get it well, well organized, well organized presentation. Thank you.
So your motion was to add an October date and everything else is written as fine?
Yes.
Vice Chair, is everyone else with, okay with the dates? All right. City Clerk, do you need a new, a revised motion? Okay, please clarify your motion with your date and time.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we meet at 4 o'clock on October 18th for a CRA meeting.
Okay. Second.
Is that 4 o'clock?
Yes. I'll second the motion.
Got a motion by Vice Chair Kellum and a second by Board Member Willis to add on a meeting for October 18th, starting at 4:00 PM. Any more discussion, council? Board? City Clerk, are you?
That's good.
If you're ready, you can call the roll.
Board Member Davis.
Four.
Vice Chair Kellum.
Four.
Chair Morrison.
Four.
Board Member Raymond.
Four.
Board Member Willis.
Four.
All right. The motion to approve the fiscal year 2020-23 CRA meeting schedule and financial reporting requirements passes with an addition of an October meeting. Moving on to new business resolution number?
Mayor, we still have to approve this item.
Yeah.
Oh, it's a double?
The October 18th was an add-on item. This is the regular schedule, still needs to be approved.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to adopt the remaining schedule as written.
I'll make a, second.
Motion by Board Member Raymond, second by Board Member Willis to approve the schedule as written. City Clerk?
Board Member Davis.
Four.
Vice Chair Kellum.
Four.
Chair Morrison.
Four.
Board Member Raymond.
Four.
Board Member Willis.
Four.
Motion passes 5:00. City Manager, are we good now?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number three, Resolution Number CRA 10, adopting a budget for the City of Cape Canaveral Community Redevelopment Agency for fiscal year 2022-23, providing the repeal of prior inconsistent resolutions, everability, and an effective date. City Manager, any comments here that we?
No, sir. I know that each board member's had an opportunity to speak with Financial Services Director here. He's here to answer any questions you might have as it comes to setting the CRA budget.
Okay. Council, any questions for city staff at this time? We'll have an opportunity to discuss amongst ourselves too, but just trying to use that order.
I talked to.
You're good? Any questions? Okay. All right. Anyone want to speak on it? The budget?
I would, I would like to.
Yes?
Please.
Okay. In our prior meetings, I thought we had discussed for the Civic Hub to take out the redevelopment and leave the $100,000 and leave the $150,000. As I was going through papers from previous meetings, I found, and I hope I got it here. Yep, here. Gotta pass these down. From you. Anyway, and this is the sources and statement of income, I mean, of sources and uses statement for the Promenade Civic Hub.
Just take one and pass it down?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And, you know, looking it over, I, I found that the total, you know, if you read it, the total price of the Promenade and redevelopment is $1,700 and it breaks it down to where this money's coming from. And there was a $285,000 grant in there, which brings it up to $1,700. And it says on the bottom that the $1,200 loan would solify the required dollars needed to successfully purchase Promenade and cover design. So do we need that money in there for the design? If we left $50,000 for the community input that we need before we get started on this and put the, that money back into the CRA?
You were on page, is it 118 of the capital improvement plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Everyone, just to get oriented, 118 she's referencing. That project is titled? The City Civic Hub. Sorry about that.
Is everybody on board? Okay, so I think if we, if we remove that except for the $50,000 for community input, you know, we would have that money back in the CRA and maybe that would help with the Presidential Streets at $273,000 that, that, you know, needs to be funded. So that was my thoughts on that because it says that it already included design for the cost. So that was my question and I wanted to bring it to council's attention. And then the $285,000 grant, which parted the funding of 1.7 million. I don't know if we've applied for that, if it's happened yet or?
Mayor, if you like, John can speak.
I can, let me, let me clarify. So what Vice Chairperson Kellum is basically saying is, is take out the development of the $100,000, but keep the $150,000 for design and community input. That's the first part of it. That, that's what she's saying.
Okay, one more time, just to make sure we're with you.
Okay. So what she's saying is on CR2, on page 118 of the budget?
Yes, sir.
Take the 100K out for redevelopment, keep the 150K in for design and community input. Now, we're not, so the council's not confused, where Vice Chairperson Kellum is saying that could save $100,000. No, that won't save $100,000. What it, it'll save $100,000 in the money spent because in terms of, if you look on page 53 where it says transfer from the general fund, that's $250,000 there, okay? So what the Vice Chair basically is saying is, because that money is sitting in an investment account, that's the remainder of the loan, she's saying let's just spend 150K this year and not spend 100K. So what happens is then we would change this based on council, council approval. That would become a CR, CR2 on 118 would become 150K and the 100K, we would leave in the investment account for the city for another, for another year. And that's what the Vice Chair is alluding to. It's not gonna save you any money in the CRA because it's basically, it's, it's a, it's a wash. If you have the 250K investment money you're using for CR2. So the investment is the 250, the expense is the CR2. If you pulled the whole thing out, nothing happens because you're just eliminating the expense by pulling out the 250 for the revenue. Does everybody understand that? Okay, so what the Vice Chair is saying, just take out the 100K, leave it in the investment account. Okay? And now you have 150K for CR2, okay? Which you'll use for your design and whatever else you want to do with it, community input in that year. So that's, that's all she's saying is just change CR2 to 150K and we won't spend 100K until the following year. That's all she's saying. Does everybody understand? Okay.
Thank you. You can. Myself. Yes.
I think that we need to move forward on this because we need to look at the different possibilities for the stormwater wastewater projects that we thought could go under that piece of property. I think that, and most realtors will tell you this, that if you have property, you buy property, you, it's really not a good idea to just leave it vacant land. It's better to develop that property. And I have talked to several realtors about this. And I think that it's time to move forward. And we have a plan and we've talked about this in the past. And I think that this money should be spent here to move forward. Since we bought the property, I don't like the idea of vacant property, especially on A1A. I think it's a negative impact for the city. I just don't like it. Thank you.
Board Member Davis?
Yeah, I am in agreement to move forward with this project. As we saw last week with the flooding, you know, that there was a major issue. We've listed flooding as a priority for our city. So that's something that we need to consider to do anything we can to help with flooding. And this promenade will, you know, I know at the last meeting it was discussed, well, it may help some, it may this. Any help is, is help. So I say move forward. We can't sit there and say flooding is a priority to us and then disregard this property or developing this property that may help us with flooding. You know, so we're, we just can't have it both ways. So I think with our flooding issue, we need to move forward with this and look at the flooding.
Thank you.
I have one more comment today. In the last 10 years, and if anybody would like to look at this, our Public Works is fantastic and they've done an amazing job in a very systematic approach to taking care of the wastewater and stormwater projects in the last 10 years. And I have a printed copy, if anyone would like to produce this, you can come and I will show it to you. All right, so I think that we have to give credit and kudos to our Public Works people. During the recent rains, I saw them in the manholes. I saw them out in the rain, past 10 o'clock at night and soaking wet. So kudos to our Public Works. and soaking wet. So kudos to our Public Works because I know that you do everything possible to alleviate this stormwater problem. Thank you.
Board Member Willis, any comments at this time?
Well, I just have one question for, uh, the City Manager. Timeline wise, would we ever get to that point in the next year? For development?
Theoretically, the design public meetings could be completed in the next year. Can we begin the actual process of putting out bids and start construction of a stormwater improvement in the next year? That's, that's gonna be tough to actually get that done that quickly. I think we're probably looking at about seven to nine months just on the design and public engagement phase.
So the redevelopment could?
Could easily push to the next.
Push to the next year.
With the stormwater redevelopment.
Right, right.
But, um, that's going, gone home as fast as we can. These things take time.
Thank you.
That's my question.
So, yeah, and I mean, the timeline's a timeline. The sooner you start, the sooner it's done, but that's an excellent point. And I agree that storm, anything helps with stormwater. If I put a rain barrel out in my yard, that helps. But that doesn't mean it's going to be the best way to invest this money. This is morphed into now, we're talking about it as a stormwater project, which is interesting because we've never had community engagement or stormwater projects. And the reason we have community engagement for this project, I think, is because it's, it's really not entirely a stormwater project. It was a green space transforming blighted and unfinished buildings into attractive structures, offer citywide green spaces, provides, it's another park, ample shade. And so the design of that, I love that we're engaging the citizens, but I mean, nowhere really even in this description does it say anything about stormwater. And it's because we bought this property, that was never the intent. The intent was to finish the city campus. The, we spent, how much money did we spend on the stormwater engineers, Todd, or John roughly? Was it fifty?
The Center Street basin?
For the, yeah, for where the flooding, the south side of the city, Center Street basin, yeah.
Center Street basin study, Jeff, how much was that? If you could come up, if you remember. No, no, the study with Mead and Hunt.
Yeah, so Mead. Remember, I think it was about this time last year, we
I think it was forty thousand.
That sounds close. It was less than a hundred. I remember that, but
Forty or fifty. I don't recall it.
Thank you. So, and thank you, the, the amount of money we invested, the whole reason we, studies don't do it. Studies do not fix stormwater. It's construction projects are some of the things that can. The studies tell us where to focus our efforts. And those engineers, until they tell us because we can't do with the funds we have, their top five projects, or however it was, their top recommendations, we don't have the funds today to do those. And so the fact that we're gonna go spend money on this before prioritizing, follow the logic with that, it makes no sense to me. We need to be putting our money in what those engineers, what we invested in those engineers telling us to do, which today we have a temporary pump. We are moving towards a permanent pump. And there is, um, exfiltration systems, there's stormwater pond recommendations. And so that's where I'm wrestling with. If, if we give this to the engineers and they come back and they say this is the top project to provide the biggest impact for the residents on stormwater, I would, I would get behind it, but we don't have that recommendation from them. But, yes, please.
Excuse me. Uh, you're talking about the Center Street project with the pump, and that pump is gonna go into the lift station. I understand.
The pump goes in.
So that's one thing. This would be another thing, another thing that could control flooding. So so the Center Street issue, that's already taken care of with the engineering. So this is just another thing that will help alleviate flooding, hopefully. And, but, okay, but wait a minute. As far as the civic and the resident engagement, that is for the Civic Hub, yes. And people said at the, um, meeting that we had, the strategic planning, and when we did the visioning, they liked the idea of it. They liked the idea of possibly having some trees and some possibly waterfall, maybe an amphitheater. All right, so that was very positive. And that was talked about. So I think we just need to move forward on this. And, but, but we do, we're very much interested in the stormwater also. Thank you.
Yeah. Realtors tell you to don't have vacant land. Realtors, that's a private sector strategy, I get it. Our four, first responsibility is to make sure that the basic infrastructure is working. So I support stormwater. If this was truly just a stormwater project, we would not be funding it this way. And that's it. I think I won't support this. I think I made that clear because it's getting reframed as a storm. The justification in here doesn't even say that it's a stormwater project. And so if we stripped it down to just a stormwater project, figured out those costs backed with the, the recommendation that we spent fifty thousand dollars in, and to get them to say we're not doing all the projects that they recommended, if I recall. If we were doing all the projects, I would agree this is an extra one. There's more that are higher priority than this one that are gonna provide a bigger impact.
When did we spend fifty thousand dollars on this? On this? When did we spend?
Fifty thousand dollars to fix the flooding, to, to figure out where to focus our investments to fix flooding on the south side of the city, uh, AKA the Center Street basin. And we had spent money prior to that with the same organization on a facilities plan that made some similar recommendations, and we just had so much pressure. We said, we gotta do something right now. And this this is being communicated that it will help with flooding, I'm assuming, on where the problems actually exist on the south side of the city. And so that's it. Yes, Board Member Davis.
Okay, talking about prioritizing, and when I say that I want you to understand, I am all for the kids with the concession and the announcer booth and everything else. But if we're gonna prioritize, flooding is a priority. We need to find any way to help. You know, I'm for the kids, I'm for that. If we want to prioritize, we've said flooding is a main issue. So if we look at taking the concession, that's two hundred thousand dollars right there. So I, I mean, I want the concession stand for the kids. I'd love to have it, but if we have to prioritize flooding over concession stand. So I still think, uh, the, the possibility of helping with flooding would be, would be the one.
Deal. I'm with you. If you want, if, if, if we spend every dollar and prioritize public safety, police, fire, and I think, you know, flooding is gonna rank up, there's a top, I'm ready to, to make that step. Because I would rather go to bed at night knowing flooding isn't a problem and, and wait a year on a concession stand.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love it for the kids, but if we look at the, what's the priority?
Yep. No, that, that doesn't spook me. I think that's something we should be very proud of if we did that.
Is it? Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Is this, um, or this Civic Hub, it's less than a half an acre. Is that the part of the stormwater we're gonna rip that up?
No. It's more than half an acre.
No.
Mr. Mayor.
It's less than a half.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm gonna let her finish. Yes.
The idea, it was not included in that study because nobody thought of it.
Right.
Now, when we purchased this property, I approached the City Manager about why can't we include all of the properties that we now have as part of the stormwater issue? Now, to the point that we wouldn't be able to do any kind of redevelopment on that for a year meets the criteria about not spending the hundred thousand in the next year. But we're still going to have to spend it, but part of the design process would be, how would you utilize that? How would you utilize the exfiltration? What can you do? What can't you do? And then we go from there. So we're probably arguing over something that doesn't really need to be argued over at this point, because it's not gonna happen within a year.
Yeah, the, the design, Mayor, will tell us what we can do with exfiltration in the Civic Hub. And the Civic Hub property is not just seventy-four oh four North Atlantic. Um, that, that property was purchased so that we could begin the Civic Hub, which is much larger, which includes everything to uh, closing off Taylor Avenue and going to this next street the space there and the underutilized spaces. This is where the citizen engagement is so necessary. Do we want to turn the shuffleboard courts into something else? And if we're doing that, do we want to include that area where we do exfiltration as well? So it could be a few acres of exfiltration, and that, that's the whole scope of the Civic Hub.
And I love it. I love the, every city on property having exfiltration is brilliant. I think that's being leaders for sure.
But, but the point is that we're, we're probably arguing over something we don't need to be arguing over at this point.
Well, unless we're opposed to spending the money on the design this year, which I, I think I would rather that money go into. You know, that's a tough one. If the, if Mead and Hunt looked at this and said, no, you guys should, you should do this, um.
I think that we, when they were here and made their presentation, we asked them if that would help with the flooding situation. And they said, no. I mean, yes, it will, uh, but down by Center Street is much more important than the other things that they, uh, you, you know, told us about have to go first. So, you know, I'm not a, I don't, I want stormwater. I want flooding to stop too, but, you know, part of the underwater baffles is not just that little square. It's including, like Todd said, the whole other area, which is a lot more money. And, you know, I think we should wait until we get the, uh, impact from, you know, what those citizens say, what they want to see done. And I'm just saying not, you know, just not this year. Just do the design. And, you know, like I showed you on that piece of paper, it says that the one point two million, um, includes the purchase and design. So why are we spending another fifty thousand on design? Or is that the money from the leftover?
So, and I'm gonna get to you. It is five forty-three. And we have, what, two more, uh, Brevard County Commissioner, a, a letter addressing the Chair of the county, and then we also have the, um, the idea of two additional members. And so if we can try to wrap this up in the next five minutes.
Okay, I just think that we do need to go ahead because you have to start someplace. And starting underground, obviously, is the first thing to do. Look what we did at the community center with the amplifiers and everything that we did there. The starting point was under the ground to get that, and that is working successfully at the community center and the community park. So I just think that we need to move forward on it and go ahead, and that's what you do. You start. We need to start. We need to get the proper, you know, engineering, the design to move forward on it. So do you want me to make motion on that?
You, you're free to. I would just like to say if you're at a house keeping the rain barrel and the front of the house catches eighty percent of the water and the back, both rain barrels catches, you know, the other twenty percent, both rain barrels help. One is better than the other. We saw from the city report where some awful flooding is down by Anchorage Avenue. It was bad back there. And we're still getting that central ditch study and those things done. We're gonna see a, a bill or some proposals to go fix that. That, that, that was what is breached there. And we put our money into this. And now we could have put it over there. That's my, my point is, I want to put this funds to the next highest priority, not just do everything because it all helps. Because we have limited resources. So if you want to make a motion, please, Board Member Davis.
I was gonna say, we, we're sitting here saying it may help, it may not help. Oh, it's not gonna, you know, we don't know how much it will or it will not help until we find out. It may be fabulous. I mean, it may solve a lot of problems. I don't know that how it works technically with all the piping and whatever. We don't know until we get, we proceed. So that's my only thing. We can discuss how much, but we, honestly, we don't know.
Right.
So I think we need to proceed and find out and if, and how much it can help with flooding.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, and I, I agree with what Board Member Davis just indicated. My training tells me research, study, determine how to move forward. That's generally what planners do. Figure, we gather our evidence, we figure out what options are, and we make decisions. We may be getting a little bit ahead of ourselves if we're deciding, well, this is we need to do something on this piece of property because we, it hasn't been part of the overall study that Mead and Hunt has done. I think that's the point that you've been making. So, and if we're not even gonna get to that this year, then there may be some merit in and, um, let's do it, let's do a study. Let's look, it's make an educated decision on spending taxpayer dollars. And, um, see, see where the information and the data takes us.
If this study includes in the scope of work from stormwater experts, a stormwater study on that property, they did a, a whole basin for fifty thousand roughly. I gotta think they could do this uh, study for minimal. And so that's why I'm looking at the number, because the scope of work in this is, it doesn't say, it's not stormwater focused. I know how you can integrate it, but I, I mean, that's gonna increase the cost, I think, if you have to bring in Mead and Hunt. And I want Mead and Hunt to study this because they've got institutional knowledge, they've already been studying. Assuming staff recommends them, and it's a good relationship. Yes, Board Member Willis.
Well, it was originally my idea, and I'm all for the study. Let's, let's see what we can do with it. Uh, I know, uh, Mr. Moore and I had a discussion about, uh, what all would feed into it, and he was able to show me all of the stormwater areas that would feed right into it. Um, but, you know, I think we've got to, we've got to understand what can be accomplished with it before we decide what can go on top of it. So we, in my opinion, we need to move forward with at least an understanding of what it can alleviate. And then what the restrictions would be going over top of it. And then we get the input from
the city. You want that study to start this year?
If possible, yeah. Yeah.
I don't think we know how much that study costs. But I'm, I'm with you, and, and I think
If we leave the hundred and fifty thousand in there and just take the hundred thousand out and wait for the design later, I mean, the construction later, a hundred and fifty thousand should cover a study, I'm thinking.
More than enough.
And then the community input, let's see, but, I mean, how can we make a decision on that before we know what the citizens want? And we have a study on if that's really feasible for stormwater.
Yeah, I think citizen, I would lean on our experts and staff on stormwater. The citizen input is excellent on, you know, the use of the park, the design of the park. So, okay.
That's different because the redevelopment can also mean it's possible. If we get the study and construction could start underground, that could also be redevelopment, okay? So I say keep it in there. I mean, if we don't use it, it's no big deal. But however, if we go ahead and say, all right, let's go ahead and approve this because this way we will be done. It's possible that it could even start. Construction might be able to start in nine or ten months. So we're looking ahead at twenty-two, twenty-two, um, twenty-two and also twenty-twenty-three going into the year. So I've always voted for safety and security, and this is safety and security issue for stormwater and wastewater, whatever. So I say just leave it alone. Leave this alone.
Mayor?
Yes.
A, a point of order, um, I just want to remind that we are looking at a resolution here for the budget, the overall CRA budget, and we do need to have the title read into the record by the City Attorney.
Okay, would you like to do that now?
Sure.
Please.
Resolution number CRA dash ten, a resolution of the City of Cape Canaveral Community Redevelopment Agency, adopting a budget for the Cape Canaveral Community Redevelopment Agency for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-three, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent resolutions, severability, and an effective date.
Thank you.
Are you ready for a motion?
Uh, yes, with, with one comment, to be clear, on, I, I would support this if we changed the scope of work and got an accurate quote. The scope of work for Project CR two is not priced or written in a way to, to support funding. And if a citizen was to bring me this sheet of paper and say, why did you support this? And I say, oh, it was because of the flooding, they're gonna say, where does it say that? They're going to say, where does it say that? And it doesn't say that.
Redevelopment could include that.
I I know, but I I want it. If it's exclusively for stormwater, those are my comments. I would I would support that, but that's not the way it's written. That's okay. We don't need to get bogged down. And there's a few others. Overall, my comments on this budget, because this is one project that I think Vice Chair brought up. If your motion is going to improve the approve the entire budget, it's a little weird taking this or the resolution, yeah, adopting the budget. It's weird doing this before the regular budget because, you know, the the general fund kind of feeds this. And so if there is a way for us to do this after our general fund, that would be, I don't know.
Todd, could I end your check, Mayor? That's okay, you can address that.
Yes.
Let let me let me address it. You're you're absolutely right about the format and how this takes place. So basically, here's what what will happen tonight irregardless. The CRA board is always met here at the city before the council, okay? And you're voting on a CRA budget. Here's my recommendation to council, and then it will be justified in the next meeting. Approve the resolution and approve this budget. Because in the council meeting in ten minutes, when you vote on the final millage, which council, I believe, is a desire to change the millage, that millage, when you approve that, is going to dictate how the budget changes. And the CRA fund is in the budget. So it's really just a formality with the way we do business here at the city. Approve this now because the discussion is going to ensue after the final millage is done, which will affect the way council will want the CRA fund. So, good point, Mayor, that's exactly how it's going to go. There's no reason to deliberate this budget here because this is the first time in a long time that the final millage is is undecided at this point. Okay, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Good, okay. We ready? Okay, thank you.
I'll move that we approve resolution number CRA dash ten.
Hold second.
Got a motion to approve resolution CRA dash ten by Board Member Raymond, second by Board Member Davis. It's time discussion, just for the sake of clarity. I am not going to, I understand that, but I'm not going to support this budget in our discussion. But the good news is we got some of the things that I think we're going to talk about in the general fund out of the way now. So if there's not any more comments or discussion, we can hold the roll. Thank you.
Board Member Davis.
For.
Vice Chair Kellum.
Against.
Chair Morrison.
Against.
Board Member Raymond.
For.
Board Member Willis.
For.
Okay, motion passes three-two, moves on with six minutes left before the six P M deadline. We're on item number four, new business. And I want to pause here. Deputy City Clerk, did anyone's hands raise or anything during that time? Thank you. Item number four is a discussion. Reminder, this is just a discussion, no votes. Brevard County Board of County Commissioners ratified letter from Chair Christine Zonka. I received this letter, and I think a good time to talk with our city manager about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The 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 board, as the letter indicates, the the Board of County Commissioners talked about affordable housing issues and what CRAs are doing or what CRAs are not doing. And essentially, what this letter is asking is what is the City of Cape Canaveral doing as far as affordable housing initiatives? To that extent, to that end, we have drafted a draft letter in response, which is on the next page there, Daniel, if you want to forward, which talks about how affordable housing is talked about in our CRA plan currently. As as this board knows, there was a webinar that the Florida Redevelopment Association put on la- middle of last week about affordable housing and several initiatives were discussed. And I I think that most of you, if not all of you, watched or attended that webinar and staffed it as well. And there was a couple other ideas that came up in there too, such as the possibility of reducing permit fees for projects which result in affordable housing or possibly reducing impact fees for projects which result in affordable housing and so on. So what I would like to ask this board to do is to comment on the letter that we have here. And maybe we could add those two things to it that we're we're willing to look into and study as a CRA CRA board in the next year. And importantly, this is also asking the county for input and guidance on what they feel CRAs should be doing there.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for for getting this letter drafted. I received it. And so your support is much, I think you received one too.
Yes, sir.
Did any other council? I think they might have just sent it to the chair. But we want to work together on this. I I love this process. Council, any questions about, do y'all see the letter he's referencing attachment to? Thank you, okay.
And what is the county doing exactly? That was my question. Because, I mean, I thought that the American Rescue Plan gave twenty-five million. And that, from what I read in the newspaper, that that was divvied each person on the county commission received five million and they could do whatever they wanted with it. And I can't remember what Zonka gave hers to. But I know Pritchett gave hers to Parish Health Center. And people gave it to different things. And that's when Brian Lober, our district two commissioner, got into big trouble. But anyway, I just wonder what the county's doing because I don't see the county moving forward a little bit in the city of Cocoa. This new Orchid Lake, it's the workforce housing. And I went to, and I talked about this last week when we went to, I went to Transportation and Near Governmental Affairs, and I told you that affordable housing is a big issue. And so we have discussed this, and I discussed this. The director of Florida Housing talked to us about this. So I just want to know what the county is doing exactly because she doesn't make that clear in her letter.
Okay, so why don't we, between now and the next meeting, do some research? And if I have an opportunity to meet their city manager and Chair Zonka or any of them, I can ask that and report back to this council on what we learned.
Okay, and Mayor, there is a time on this. I believe it was a sixty-day response requested. So we've got about two or three weeks left on that, I think. Or is it more than that, Dave?
Well, if you look at the date on her letter,
Yeah.
Which is August eighteen.
Yeah. I marked my calendar.
Approximately October.
October eighteen, so we've got three, three and a half weeks perhaps to respond.
And I'm not sure when the October council meeting, what's the date on that October council meeting?
I I think the question is, are we okay?
Eight, it's the eighteen. That was where we just added the CRA.
And I think I think the letter's written well enough that it shows our intentions, and we're going to be exploring this, and we'd like your help counting with information. If you could just bless the letter, we can at least get that.
I support this letter. Are y'all okay with that? Okay, do you need a, I consensus is unanimous, it looks like. You good with that? Okay, great, awesome. Now we can move on to the final item. Discussion of the draft procedures for adding two additional Community Redevelopment Agency CRA board members. We have one minute. And I think this is a.
Yes, I I brought it up originally. And I, you know, going through the CRA meetings and being talking to other people from other cities, they add local businessmen to the CRA board, businessmen or women. And I think it helps give a well-rounded view of what's happening in the city and what we can do to make it better and utilize the CRA better than, you know, for the citizens more. I think it's a great idea. I know it's, you know, the argument is, but they're not elected. That has good consequences and bad consequences. But I think good consequences outweigh, you know, the fact that they're not elected. More citizen input is is awesome. And they do it, as staff pointed out in other cities. So I think it's something we could try. And I would be really interested in doing that.
Thank you. I I I am open to it. I think it's a good idea. Counsel, any general comments on this?
Mr. Mayor, wouldn't, would we be better served to bring this back in October for additional discussion?
If that's what the majority of this council wants to do.
Because we're we are at six oh one.
Yeah, I'd support it. Okay, well, how about we just adjourn?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, taking no action, is that okay? All right, meeting adjourned. Okay, I would like to, can I be real with my citizens? You know why I was late today? I ran out of gas.
Oh, dear.
I was on the side of five twenty-eight, filling my gas can up. So if you smell eighty-seven octane, that's me.
I did.
If y'all don't mind, I would like at least five minutes to to come back and start at six oh six. I'm going to go to the restroom and come right back. Is that okay? Thank you. Is there something?
Yeah, I was going to say something. My mother used to do that.
We'll get started here in just a couple minutes. Make sure, I don't think it was on the recording. If you have comment cards, please turn them in. And we'll make sure that we get to you. Okay. All right. Okay, I got quite a few comment cards. Just let me go ahead and ready? We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is September twenty-first, Wednesday. It is six oh seven P M. We're at one hundred Polk Avenue for the regular city council meeting at the council chambers. Call this meeting to order. Councilmember Willis, would you please leave this in the pledge?
To the Father, in the name of the States of America, and to the Republic, stands one nation, one God, indivisible, ever and ever.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum.
Here.
Mayor Morrison.
Here.
Councilmember Raymond.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
All right, everyone's here. Thank you, council, city staff, and all the citizens who joined us today. We are now going to do something a little bit differently at one of the changes in our process to help with our meeting efficiency. And we are at a section called Approval of Agenda as Written or with Amendment Amendments. All agenda section times are estimates and subject to change. Let our city manager elaborate maybe on anything I might have missed. But the, in general, what we're doing now is looking at the numbered agenda items. We have the ability to move them around. And we also need to pay attention to the times to see if you think one's going to go longer to extend the time, shorten the time, and adjust as we go. So, city manager, does that cover it?
Mayor, I don't think you need to adjust the times. It's just a reminder, this is really just, do you want to approve it as written or do you want to reorder it?
Okay. Counsel, while seeing the agenda, are there any items of order that need to change? I do think the public hearings up front was another change, which I really like. I think that's good.
I'm happy with what's there.
Everyone's happy? Okay, do you need consensus or how do we want to do it? Any opposed to the meeting agenda order? See shaking heads now? Okay, got consensus. So this time, we're going to go ahead and move into the presentations and interviews portion of the meeting. We have a presentation by Dr. Jeff Ebel of the Florida Institute of Technology on the Indian River Lagoon Inflow Research Project. Thank you so much, Dr. Ebel. I see Zach coming up as well from our city. Welcome. Good evening.
Tonight, we have a presentation from Dr. Jeff Ebel, and he is a professor from the Florida Institute of Technology, as you just said. His project is very interesting and could have a lot of long-lasting positive impacts for our lagoon ecosystem right at the city's border, which is fantastic. I saw his presentation at a lagoon event a few months ago, and I thought, wow, I think the city councilors should see this because this has a lot of potential to do a lot of good. And, you know, there's no silver bullet in the restoration of the lagoon, but this is a, this is pretty impactful if it if it can work out. So with that, I'll hand it over to Dr. Ebel.
Thank you. Evil. Evil, excuse me for the pronunciation.
Actually, Ebel.
Oh, Ebel. Got it right. Thanks.
No, thank you. Thank you all so much. We really appreciate the opportunity. In fact, thank you for the great introduction. And council members, thank you for giving us the opportunity to introduce this project. You know, so before I launch into describing the goals of the project and how we've structured it. I really do want to recognize that this project has been funded by the state's taxpayers. Under with the support from Representative Thad Altman and Representative Randy Fine. And Senators Tom Wrights and Debbie Mayfield. And it's without their supports, we wouldn't be able to do this work and improve understanding and ideally restoration of the lagoon. And so I don't have access to an answer here, so someone is, I think, yeah.
Daniel's in the back room. He's waiting.
So how about I'll just, you know, give you an indication. There are a few animations built in, so we'll click through them. But if you could go on to the next slide, I appreciate it. Yeah, and you all are acutely aware of the challenges that the lagoon has faced. And so I won't really belabor those points. The water quality has been declining for many decades now. And particularly over the last ten years, there's been pronounced effects. But I really do wanna highlight. Some data from right in your own backyard here. This is data that Kennedy Space Center has acquired over thirty years of monitoring of seagrasses. Here in the Banana River and then elsewhere around their lands. You can see precipitous declines in seagrass coverage there around two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. Ninety-eight percent loss of seagrasses here in the Banana River, you know, since the historic highs. That's, that's a significant impact on the lagoon's ability to manage nutrients. The lagoon's ability to actually reduce these harmful algal blooms that are causing so many problems. It's a significant impact on spore fisheries as well. And so with that, if you could dance a slide, please. We recognize that there's a number of really good initiatives that are ongoing right now to address water quality. Within the Banana River, but then also elsewhere throughout the lagoon. These are projects that are well-developed and in many cases well-funded. That will remove nutrients, nutrients being the primary problem that the lagoon is facing, excess nutrients. Fifty years' worth of excess nutrients. And so we have infrastructure improvements that you all are well aware of. Muck dredging that's in, is being supported by the state and Brevard County. Habitat Restoration that has, you know, been intermittently successful depending on, you know, where they're citing those restorations. We value these improvements to the lagoon. We recognize the importance of these. Is it enough? It's a question that, given the declines in the lagoon, given the status of the water quality right now, given the recent mass mortalities of manatees and other species. The state has asked us to look into whether there are other complementary strategies that may be able to help with this effort. And so with that, if you could advance the slide, please. With that, we have been asked to explore whether enhanced ocean exchange can be used to improve water quality. Specifically as a complement to these other initiatives that are ongoing, well-developed, and their benefits are well-understood. This idea of moving large volumes of water from the ocean, from relatively clean water from the ocean into the lagoon, into areas where there's been restricted circulation. For quite some time, in some parts due to developments. It's been supported by work that's been done elsewhere in Florida, across the country and other locations, and internationally as well. There are a variety of projects that's either purposely through engineering interventions, or accidentally through, or just opportunistically through storm breaches of barrier islands. Have shown that improved circulation and the benefits to water quality that come from that. Can help restore a system that's been impacted by decades' worth of excess nutrients, which is what we're dealing with here in the lagoon. So this project is based on the principles that have been developed elsewhere in other projects. It's also based on support in the Indian River Lagoon National Estuaries Program. Which has indicated that this is one important part of exploring new tools to improve water quality. And then also, we're basing our work on a feasibility study that St. John's River Water Management District initiated in two thousand seventeen. Which looked at candidate sites and a few candidate designs for an inflow system. A system that moved large volumes of water into the Banana River. If you could go forward, please. So with that, the state has funded us to pull together a team of researchers exploring the hydrology of the lagoon. Through modeling efforts and through deployment of additional equipments and sensors into the lagoon. Looking at the geochemistry of the lagoon, how nutrients are cycling in the water column and also in the sediments. And looking at the biological response as well. What happens when you do introduce large volumes of ocean water? To the Banana River in particular, which has been relatively restricted through its interactions with the ocean, except for the transient interactions there at Port Canaveral through the locks. So we also have engineers on our team that are exploring the designs for a pilot project, as well as alternative designs for a potential future full system. And then we're, right now, that's where we're at, is the permitting and designing of a pilot study, which is a small-scale inflow project. Could change the slide, please? We have two years of funding from the state so far, which got us to where we are, allowed us to develop some preliminary predictions. For how the Banana River would respond to large volumes of ocean inflow. We have just recently been funded for Phase Three, which we're in the middle of right now. We're just kind of just kicking off right now. And Phase Three of the project is focused on permitting of the pilot project. Which would be constructed here, right, is proposed to be constructed here at Port Canaveral. And taking advantage of the easy access the locks provide to clean, relatively clean water. And then with that permitting and assuming that funding, we can secure funding for future phases. We'll construct a demonstration project, a pilot project, and we'll be able to test these predictions that we've developed over the last two years about how the lagoon's gonna respond to inflow. And so with that, I want to get into some of the, some of the really interesting findings that we've had. And these are just a few key findings from the last couple of years. What we found is, when we started increasing the sampling within the lagoon, increasing the data available from the lagoon. We quickly realized that the lagoon is actually in worse shape than it's, than it appears. We were seeing in particular low dissolved oxygen regularly in the lagoon. And so y'all are familiar with what happens when you have these low dissolved oxygen events due to, in direct response to harmful algal blooms. Where you have fish kills. And they've historically happened throughout the lagoon. They've increased in prevalence since two thousand ten with the really bad series of harmful algal blooms. What we're seeing now, that even when the water quality is in relatively good condition compared to what we've seen historically, or at least over the last ten years. Right down there at the interface where the water interacts with the sediment of the lagoon. We're seeing dissolved oxygen drop to lethal levels regularly. And there's some sites where we're actually seeing that happen weekly, if not daily. And that's a problem. Obviously, it's a problem for the species that live within those sediments. But it's also a problem for how the sediments can process those nutrients. It's a problem for the health of the sediments. The sediments have a really important role in actually digesting and removing these excess nutrients. That we are inevitably adding to the lagoon through our development, through our just day-to-day use of the land surrounding the lagoon. What we have here is, just, you can see in these slides, just some, really just kind of snapshots of the general processes. And the role of sediments in actually removing nutrients from this water. And so we see frequent low dissolved oxygen events. We also see that when dissolved oxygen goes low in the sediments, particularly in the sediments themselves. Processes change in the sediments that actually make it so that sediments are adding nutrients, releasing nutrients to the overlying water. So they're making the problem worse. If we can figure out a way to actually ensure or increase the availability of the oxygen down in the sediments. We actually can leverage the power of the sediments and microbial communities that live in the sediments and chemical processes as well. To help pull those nutrients out of the water and ultimately remove them from the lagoon. And this, this is the case for both nitrogen and phosphorus. The actual mechanisms are quite complex. I won't go into the details. But just picture that, it's almost as if a switch is thrown. When the sediments go into this low dissolved oxygen states, they're actually releasing nutrients to the, to the overlying water. When the sediments are healthy and oxygen is sufficient in the sediments, then the sediments do their job. They extract nutrients from the water. They digest those nutrients, they process them, they remove them from the lagoon. And right now, we're, that feature, that service that the lagoon provides is impaired. Because regularly, we're seeing low oxygen in the lagoon water, particularly right down there at the sediment interface. Forward the slide. Here's just one snapshot of that dramatic difference that we see in the oxygen down there at the sediment interface. You can see in blue there, those are, that's dissolved oxygen levels in the lagoon that vary day-to-day. That's a natural process. You know, as plankton generates oxygen and adds it to the water and then consumed at nights when the sun's out and plankton's not generating oxygen, or seagrasses for that matter. The pink line is the dissolved oxygen at a co-located sensor that was right there at the sediment interface. Just like two centimeters above the sediment interface. This is work by, from Dr. Austin Fox, who's a Florida Tech researcher and is part of this team. And he is deploying oxygen sensors here in partnership with, with members, with organizations in this area, as well as elsewhere in the lagoon. And he deploys them right down there at the sediment interface to better understand how the water quality is impacting the job that the sediments. The services that sediments provide to the lagoon itself. I mean, you can see every time, and I guess the line isn't really showing up in this image. But when we get below four milligrams per liter, if you look on the Y-axis there, four milligrams per liter. Is when the sediments are unable to support life. When what lives in those sediments is unable to actually sustain at those oxygen levels. And also, it's when we start seeing a switch between the sediments removing nutrients versus adding nutrients. And so this was a really important finding for our project. Advance the slide, please? So we found that using a variety of approaches, experimental approaches, and then also modeling of the lagoon itself. We found that a variety of different inflow scenarios, different configurations of a pumping system that moved large volumes of water from the oceans to the Banana River. That that would result in a net reduction of bioavailable nutrients. So that means that we would be reducing the amount of food available to power these algal blooms, which are such a problem. Importantly, it's not just by the flushing of those nutrients to adjacent compartments and then out Sebastian River. We see in the modeling right now, and this is all preliminary so far, but our, the modeling right now is showing that. Under different inflow scenarios, you don't see an increase in nutrients in adjacent compartments. You don't see an increase in nutrient loads down there Sebastian inlet. We're not simply flushing these nutrients, we wouldn't be simply flushing these nutrients from one area to another and just moving the problem to another area. What happens is that these nutrients, the modeling and the experiments so far are suggesting is that these nutrients would be processed on-site in the Banana River. By, because of the improved health of the sediments. And that's really important to imagine, to keep in mind is that. Projects like this, and this is not just a feature of just this project that we're proposing. But it's also a feature of any project that helps improve circulation of the lagoon, reduces the residency time of water, which right now for the Banana River is over two years. Any parcel of water that moves into the Banana River right now, it's at least a minimum of two years before it'll move out and down Sebastian Inlet. So that water's just sitting there accumulating nutrients and accumulating nutrients. If we can help restore sediment health, we can actually start to actually process these nutrients on-site. If you could go forward, please? And so with that, we have proposed designing a pilot system, a demonstration system. This is a relatively small-scale temporary pumping system that would move water from Port Canaveral, specifically from the locks. Into a little cove that's just south of the locks there, into the left of Avicet, Avicet Lagoon. And you can see, it's not fully shown in the picture there, but I, probably, most of you or many of you are familiar with that cove. Right now, it seems like the place where boats go to die. We, what, what we've proposed, and we'll be submitting permits soon to U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for this proposal. Is to set up this system to allow us, to give us the opportunity to test these predictions that we've had. On how the sediment, how the water quality itself would respond to inflow without inherently impacting the whole Banana River. So we kind of, we have this cove that confines the water and allows us to see what happens in the sediments. See what happens to the water quality. What happens to the plankton as well in the, in the water itself. We'll be monitoring all these features as part of this pilot project to validate the predictions that we've so far developed over the first two years of the project. And I don't want to emphasize that, you know, this, we got to this, this design. Based on the trials and tribulations that St. John's River Water Management District had with trying to get funding for their initial pilot project. Or their suggestion, their idea of a pilot project, which was an order of magnitude bigger than what we're proposing here. And potentially had an effect to, had, would have an impact on salinity and temperature over a fairly broad area. And then also based on the modeling that we've done that shows that by confining this outflow into this cove. We can limit the volume and then therefore limit potential negative impacts. And then still give us a chance to validate the findings from our first two years. And as far as timing, we're, we're in the submitting of permits within the next week to Army Corps of Engineers for construction of the pilot project. The pilot project, if permitting goes well, we expect to be operational with the pilot project by two thousand twenty-four, in winter of two thousand twenty-four. And then we would have one year operation of this pilot project that then we would decommission the pumping system, this temporary pumping system. Summarize our results and then present them to everybody. As far as, to give everybody a chance to evaluate the feasibility of this approach. The, basically a cost-benefit analysis. Are the impacts or the potential impacts gonna be comparable to the potential gains that we would have by restoring the sediment health? And by improving water quality, which in turn then provides an opportunity for seagrasses and oysters and plants to recover. Which then will have a compounding benefit for the lagoon. Because they, each of those in their own way helps to manage harmful algal blooms. And so what our goal here is a potential engineering solution that leverages the power of the lagoon itself to help improve water quality. And, but we still have a lot to learn about this approach. We have to still validate our initial findings, and we really look forward to the opportunity to do that. I think that might be my last slide. Yeah, and so, and with that, I really do want to thank everybody that's helped out with this project. It's a really big effort. And not just the funding, but there's, we have a lot of people helping out, making sure that we're addressing the right questions. We have all the questions that are reasonable to address. And that we're able to also disseminate our work at opportunities like this, so that everybody is aware of what's going on. And then at some point down the road, we really look forward to coming back with the findings from the study. And then initiating a discussion about what that means as far as strategies to improve water quality in the lagoon. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have if there's time.
Council, I have a question, but anybody? Please, Councilmember Willis.
Doctor, when do you expect to have data to present to?
Well, so if we're operational in winter of two thousand twenty-four, the pump will run for a year. We'll be summarizing our results, and then I think so, fall of two thousand twenty-five seems, assuming that we meet, you know, across several hurdles along the way. Fall of two thousand twenty-five would be when we'd be sharing results about whether this would be a reasonable approach to, and a complement to other management strategies.
Mayor Pro Tim?
I just have a question. The free flow of ocean water in Sebastian makes the river down there beautiful. Why don't they just open the locks?
There are a lot of considerations. I mean, that idea comes up a lot, and it's intuitively appealing, because the infrastructure's there. Army Corps of Engineers has had a problem in, and the port as well has had a problem when they've left the locks open for extended periods of time. With sediment clogging the locks and sediments filling the ports. And so they are disinclined to support that sort of approach. Simply because of the impacts on their infrastructure and the cost for then mitigating those impacts. But it doesn't mean that it's not a potential consideration down the road. Right now, our focus isn't on trying to determine exactly what some future system might look like. And that is one alternative design. It's really to see whether it's any system of this sort that enhances ocean exchange. In an engineered approach like this is really worthwhile.
And how, and when is the flow of the water that you're gonna start this pilot program, how much water will be?
It's, the, right now, it's point five cubic meters per second is the proposed rate of this flow, which is equivalent to about six thousand gallons per second. Wait, no, six thousand gallons per hour, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yes.
But this is, stop, you know, putting nutrients. But this is, stop, you know, putting nutrients in it is another thing we're trying to tackle and educate and policy drives that. But even if we did that right in a perfect scenario where no one put nutrients in, what you, what you're after is to say, we still have a, I don't know the scientific terminology, but a processing problem with the existing nutrients, right? I mean, it's expedited.
You're very right. I liken it to, you know, a smoker on the way to the hospital. Well, yeah, they can quit smoking on the way to the hospital, but that isn't going to keep them alive. You know, there are legacy problems that have to be addressed. And so if we reduced all nutrients input into the, into the lagoon right now, there is still legacy nutrients that are in the lagoon and then the health of the sediments themselves that would take, it's hard to say how long. It would take quite a long time for the lagoon to restore itself, even if we could roll back the clock and stop all nutrients. And so that's what we see this as a strategy to help speed up that recovery.
And the residency, reduce the residency water, you said it roughly two years before it finally gets back out. If this works, the goal would be to shorten that?
It does, it doesn't decrease the residency time of that water. But the biggest effect that we're seeing based on the modeling is that's the biggest effect, the benefits of nutrients themselves is actually the improved sediment oxygen, improved sediment health, and then improved removal of nutrients from the water.
Thank you so much, staff. Any questions?
Just a couple of comments if I may, Mayor. Is it good, is it fair to think of this as a small scale lagoon dialysis project?
I like that. Yeah, I like that metaphor. I'm going to incorporate that.
So if that's true, there might be hope, if it's successful for a larger scale, scale up of the same thing perhaps in the future.
Well, that's the idea. This will provide the data for them to inform whether there's support for going with a larger system. And then the discussion moves on to what would that look like? Where would it be sited?
Thank you, Doctor. And Mayor, I just want to point out that if you have any need of volunteers, this community loves volunteering on lagoon projects. Just work with SAC, please.
Good, good. Great to hear that.
Thank you. Counsel, any more questions?
Thank you all for the time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Looking forward to sharing our results.
Thank you. Okay, typically, we go to public participation at this point in the meeting, but today, we're actually going to get the public hearing items out of the way to be respectful of anyone's time who's here. I do have some cards on these items. Typically, what we do is we will read, have this resolution read with our city attorney and then make sure there's any questions with staff that needs to be answered. Then we'll go out to public comment. It'll come back to council and then we'll vote on it. And so the first item here is 1A, Resolution Number 202222. And I would ask our city attorney, please.
Resolution Number 2022-22, a resolution of the City of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, adopting a final millage rate for the levy of ad valorem taxes for fiscal year 2022 to 2023 on all taxable property located within the City of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for staff on this at this time before we go to public hearing? Okay, so this is the approval of the millage rate. So every year, we got to set a millage rate and the proposal as of now, let me just get to it, is we have two millage rates combined, but our general millage rate is 3.5164 proposed and our library dependent special district is 0.0432 combined. That's a 3.5596 millage rate. This is, I know it's moved around. My question is, this is above the rollback rate, right, still? And that was it. I just want to confirm. This doesn't look like it's changed from the last one, right? City manager?
Yes, Mayor.
Same one.
The rate for last year is 3.5755. Of course, property values increase, so rollback means that millage rate would come down and rollback rate would be 3.2 approximately. City Council approved it at the proposed 3.5596 at the beginning because as you know, you can't, you can't ever go up. So you think of it coming down, you might start higher and then work it down. And that's what this council has historically done. I hope that answers the question.
It does. Thank you. That exact rollback rate is 3.2, and there are more?
John, do you have?
Or is it just a flat 3.2?
It's on the resolution.
262?
Yeah.
Hold the resolution.
I see it there. About five rows from page one. Okay.
3.2632.
Awesome. Thank you.
For the general fund.
So yes, proposed millage rate of 3.5596. If we met the rollback rate, which is pretty close to achieve the same amount of revenue as last year, it'd be 3.2632. And at this time, we're going to go to public comment, come back to the council. For those of you that filled out a card, thank you so much. For those of you that might want to speak on this that didn't, because this is a public hearing item, I don't think we necessarily need a card. So if you want to speak on this, you can. But I'll just go in order, or an easier way to do this, because I don't have to call your name, is if you, if you want to come up in the order you'd like and you filled out a card, kind of do first come, first served. So not, I'm happy to go down the list. Okay, let's go down the list. Ms. Cindy Knight, I have for agenda item number one. But you know what? We have 1A and 1B and I can't differentiate. It looks like it's, this is, you did put B on there. So if anyone filled out a card, these are all for B, which is for our budget. I may not have any on the millage rate. If anyone would like to speak on this, please come forward now. Thank you, Mr. Hodges.
Joe Hodge.
Yes, I caught myself. Thank you. Thank you.
369 Coral. It's part of the budget because the millage rate to me is associated with the budget. We believe there should be a volunteer citizen budget advisory committee with monthly meetings to review what is planned in the budget before it goes to the council for approval. Realize it's too late this year. They could be given guidelines much the same as any of the other advisory committees. At the end of Long Point Road, there's an item in the budget to build a passive park on the river. It would not be a developed park and no parking for cars, just a dock to launch kayaks or canoes. Everyone on Long Point Road is opposed to this park. Since there would be no place to park a car or for the park, how would people carry their boats to the river without illegally parking? This land was used for construction dump several years ago. It needs to be checked for other things that could be buried in. The city allowed this to happen if anything harmful is found there. The city would be required to clean it up. The budget shows 33,000 for mitigation credits for this estuary park this year. Next year, we show 300,000 for stormwater for this park and 183,000 for construction and support. The city is trying to cut things out of the increased budget to not increase the taxes as much as they propose. This absolutely should be one of the first items to cut and that would lower the millage rate. The real estate taxes and fees are going up, so the taxpayers should be able to decide what projects are not necessary. There should be justification for each expense over a certain amount that is not necessary and required for the safety and welfare of the city. Now, according to Brevard County property, this land was purchased for $50,000 in 1973. So 50 years later, we're trying to rush into something that appears. Anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, the rest of these cards are for one. There's anybody else who'd like to speak? Mr. Abreu, please.
I'd like to thank Mr. Hodge for his speech. It was very good. I think he's speaking a lot for the people of Long Point Road. A lot of you have seen pictures that I emailed. The people of Long Point Road are very much against this, but more so, we don't want our taxes to go up. If you, I'm sure everyone that owns property here have seen, my property values according to market values went up 33%. That tells me that next year, we're going to get hit. That's what I believe is going to happen. We've had, I'm going to say for about five years, rollbacks. Rollback, rollback, and we've been touting it. We have gone so much into debt that it's time to pay the fiddler and that's why we're wanting to go up with the taxes now. I think cut back on what we can. And as he said, this is one of the projects that nobody really wants. One of the council members has said that, excuse me, it's something to do with a kayak trail coming from the Brevard Zoo Aquarium. Have they offered any money to this? If they really want it. And another one, the presentation that we just had, we're going to be putting six, did he say 600,000 gallons of water a day? Where's that going to go? It's not going to get out Sebastian inlet that quick. We're going to see a rise in Brevard Lagoon or in Banana River Lagoon. So many things to consider, but please do roll the taxes back and eliminate this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on, we got two items. We got the tax rate and then we will go on to the budget next and the majority of these are budget. But anyone on the tax rate that would like to speak? Okay. Okay, thank you. Were you Miss Knight? Thank you. Okay, how about we do this? It looks like, show a hand who support the comments from Mr. Abreu and Mr. Hodge. Okay, and to be clear, it's oppose the tax increase. Okay, thank you all very much. Anyone else? All right. With that, we're going to close the, this portion of the public hearing, bring it back to this council. Counsel? I'd like to see us go below the rollback rate. I said we'd need to cut roughly 500,000 or whatever number that we need to get there. 3.2 flat would be great. 3.25 would be great. Those are my comments. So thank you.
I think we have to be careful not to go too low since we want to look at some of these stormwater projects. So my idea is to go halfway. Maybe 3.4322 would be good. Go halfway between the rollback and this proposal.
So I have a question, just to clarify, because I've heard the percentage increase at the, where it is today, do we have that in the resolution? Do we need to communicate that? I remember one year, we needed to advertise the increase. The percentage increase, so the residents knew.
The, last year was 3.5755.
The one we're under now?
That was last year for 21, 2122. And this, the proposal here was 3.5164, which is lower than last year's was 3.5755. Is that correct?
With the mayor, yeah, what the mayor is asking, really, really what the mayor is asking, and that's correct what you're saying. But what the mayor is asking, it's in the resolution in front of you. What's required by the state is just what you see. They go from the rollback and then whatever is being proposed, as you can see, the 3.5596 that you did on September 7th. And the actual rollback with the combined for this city library in general fund is 3.3048. Well, we're required to show what the increase is from the rollback. So as you can see, that's 0.2548 mils, section one, as you look at it. And if you go down to section two, we have to do the same thing. So for general government, the increase in mils is 0.2532. That's what, that's what I think the mayor is alluding to. That's the requirement from the state.
And the percentage increase in the rate, so last year's rate to this year's rate is what I thought we had?
When we went to the 3.5596, when council required, asked staff to reduce the budget to take $500,000, $545,000 out of the budget going back two months ago, we did that. That was what the mayor is alluding to now is when we were thinking, based on what we need, it was a 3.88, which would have gotten into what's called the maximum millage rate. But we, when council had us cut $545,000 off earlier and we got to the 3.5596, those things you're talking about as far as increases and might have warranted a unanimous vote or whatever, that went away. So this 3.5596 is basically only requires a majority vote by this council, three to two. And but, and then the increase again, we're only required to show what the increase is from where you're at. Don't worry about anything previously. We're at 3.5596. Rollback is 3.3048 and it's a two point, that's 0.2548 increase above that rollback. That's where we're at.
Do we know, and I know that the, you can, we can decrease the rate based on how rollback's important because your rate can go down, but the taxes actually go up. Do we know the percentage increase in taxes that this is going to be? Isn't that?
I, yeah, that's individual property.
In ad valorem revenue, last year, we achieved an X amount. What is the increase? Isn't that?
Yes, it's in, it's in the budget book. It's in the budget book on page.
My question is, do we have to communicate that increase?
The city attorney would like to speak on that.
Please.
The percentage increase over the rollback rate. So we do need to announce the percentage increase.
I remember this, thank you, happening a few years ago in 2016 or 17. The taxes went up and they didn't say how much and it was like close to, it was 20% or 14%. You can measure it a couple of different ways, but when I go to page 74, change in revenue is what we have to communicate, not the change from the rollback rate to the new rate.
Right. You're supposed to announce what the rollback rate is and then the percentage increase over the rollback rate.
And that information is on the DR, our DR 420 that's been given to the state and it's seven point, and answer your question, 7.37%.
Seven point, so the increase, the proposed ad valorem millage rate is 7.37% higher than the rollback rate.
Right. The 3.5596 is 7.37%, yeah.
Okay, so that's the, the rate increase.
Right.
Do we know the increase and what that, is that the same for the revenue that that will achieve?
The revenue that'll achieve, you go into the budget book on page.
74?
Well, you could go to, you can go to page 20, but it would be easier, yeah, you could go to page 20 where previous, the previous year, you had an ad valorem of achieved 5.132 million. And this year, it's, would, this would achieve where we're at right now, 5.713 million. Okay, that's on page 20 at the top.
Third line down?
Yeah.
So last year, 5.13 million is what we actually brought in?
Right.
And?
Well, that, that's, that's the budget.
But, okay.
That's the budget. What we actually brought in, we were not.
95%?
Yeah.
Yeah. But, but from the budget last year, the 5.132 million that we that we, we budgeted for it, a 95% collection rate. This year, millage rate would bring in 5.6?
Yeah, well, 5.5.713 based on where we're at right now, based on what council approved on September 7th, at the 3.55.
Okay, I, oh, I've got, because I'm looking, we updated these sheets, I'm one sheet over, okay? So I see it there, thank you. Deputy City Clerk, so that is an 11% increase in revenue. My question to our city attorney, you've made it clear that the rate, we have to say into the record, but do we have to communicate this percentage increase as well, and the revenue?
I don't believe so.
No.
Okay.
Don't have to.
Does the resolution need to say the percentage increase that we're passing?
Let me, I, let me check, but I, I don't believe so, I believe it's what has to be announced at the hearing, so let me check for you.
And, and I guess the last question is, does it have to be advertised? With the percentage increase, I, that's what I thought.
Mayor, since September 16th, the city did follow the state guidelines, and it's in the paper. And before we put it in the paper, if we get it approved by the state, we don't put it in and say, oh, I hope it's right. The state approved it, sent it back to us, said you're good to go, and we put it in the paper. And something that might be more help, even more helpful too, to put things in the context based on how you're asking the question, if you were to go to page budget book at, at the top, you could read where the gross taxable value for the city went up to 1.7 billion, compared to last year at 1.5 billion, which was an 11.72% increase. So it's stated in the budget where it has to be, to show how the gross taxable value went up. It's stated in the resolution like it has to be, to show that the increase is above rollback. Okay? And what went in the paper was approved by the state, not by my finance department, but by the state, and then we put it in the paper.
Yes, and I was able to confirm, actually, the, the resolution does have to state the percent by which the millage rate to be levied exceeds the rollback rate. So we would need to put that in the resolution.
And, okay, and the advertisement? Would that need to be that specific? I understand he's saying that the state approved it, but I've seen this, the state make mistakes, and I make mistakes too, we all do, I'm just, I do not want to pass something that's gonna come back.
In the resolution, what the attorney is alluding to, Daniel, if you'll light up, please, right there. The, the increase of .2532 above the rollback, which you're alluding to, mayor, is just one year, we had to put in, but what is that percentage above the rollback? So whatever that .2532 is, we could, we could insert that in there if that is, you know, point, let's just say for discussion purposes, .0652 or something. You know, we could put, that's what you're alluding to, and that's what the attorney's stating too, is that we, we so, with the .2532 mils is above the rollback, that's the percentage that we need. And we can do that while we're going through the, this, and then we could just insert it once council approves whatever the millage rate is.
Yeah, and it's not my idea, it's required by state, the way this resolution is written, it does not comply. And so we need to amend this resolution. If I understand, we need to say the percentage increase.
Well, we need to do that after we decide what the millage rate is going to be, we haven't decided what the millage rate is going to be. That's what we're doing right now.
Were you ready?
Yes.
I understand.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, and then the resolution will show, when council decides what they want the millage rate to be, staff will just insert next to see where you'd see the .2532 mils. Wherever you end up, however much higher that is, to the rollback rate, we'll put it in there. If it's exactly the same as the rollback rate, there won't need to be put in there, because then there wasn't any increase.
But we, but we would, no, we would, the way I understand it, we would have to say it's a 0%.
Well, no, you don't have to say 0% if it's 0. If, if the rollback rate was equal to, you could go back to other, to other years, and if, if it's, if you went to rollback, right to rollback, then all you would say is we went to rollback, you wouldn't have to show how much rollback is above rollback, it, there's no.
To you that, but I think the intent of the state law is that the average citizen who's saying .05 minus 3.2, what does that mean? State law says you need to say it in something that's comprehensive, understandable, a percentage we all get. Because I've seen here where it says, hey, we lowered the rollback rate, we did this two years ago, and I go, this is a tax increase. And that's why the state's clear that cities have to communicate, as I understand it, the percentage increase in the resolution. I thought it was in the advertisement, we actually had to say in the ad, the proposed rate is a 7, 11, or 7%, whatever it is, increase at a rollback, above the rollback rate, and then you still do what you said, but I just want to make sure we're, this is done right.
So tonight, when we do this, we could just, once council decides what this is, staff could simply put in what the increase is, and we'll let the public know what that is before, before the night's out. We're just gonna do the, we'll just do the math.
Yes, I, I mean, I think you could just amend the resolution to, in, in your motion to include the percentage.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. I, I don't think you would need to do that if it was a zero, because the statute says it's for percent increase, but.
There's no increase.
That's great. I just want to verify. Counsel?
Are you ready for a motion? Because I already give you a motion.
To, you want to make a motion with the proposed rate?
I want to make a motion for the millage rate to be a certain 3.4322, coming in the middle between rollback and what was proposed. So I'd like to make a motion.
Sure, absolutely.
So, I'd like to make a motion to have the final millage rate be 3.4322, which is in the middle between what was proposed and the rollback level.
I got a motion by Councilmember Raymond, a second by Councilmember Davis, to amend the resolution for a total millage rate of 3.43322. Is that correct?
3.4322, yes, correct.
Do you want to keep the library-dependent district the same and only lower the general mill? Because I think, or do you want to lower them proportionally? City, please.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, that, that's already been figured, when the coun, council member says 3.432, that constitutes a general fund rate, the general fund rate would be 3.3890, and the library would be .0432. So it would stay, the library would stay the same.
Okay.
But, but the general fund would come down to 3.3890.
Do, do we need the motion to say that, or is the total the way it is? Okay.
It's the final.
It's, it's, it's a combined, you could, you could do it as the total millage for the city, and then in, in the resolution, it'll state that the library's .0432, and that the general fund is 3.3890, so you just have to vote on the top millage.
Okay, got it. Counsel, so the motion on the floor is to propose a total millage rate, currently we are at 3.5596 proposed. To lower that rate to 3.43322, which, it sounds like you have to math, what would the increase in this be?
Excuse me?
Because we're gonna have to incorporate.
Excuse me, it's 3.4322.
3.4322. 3.4?
Yes, that's the combined for the library and the general fund.
That, that increase from the rollback rate is?
I will go ahead and figure that out.
Because we have to add that in the resolution, right?
Yes, that will be put in the resolution.
The proposed rate is a 7.37% increase, this new one, I would assume is gonna be lower than that. Counsel, as he's looking that up, it's gonna be essential to put in the resolution.
Oh, yes, Mayor, thank you. When we originally set the tentative, tentative millage rate, it was 3.5596. So if we go to the middle of the road, which we talked about at the last meeting, you know, where we were, the middle of the road and rollback, we're lowering it to 3.389. To get to rollback, and this is why I don't understand why we don't go over the budget first and then set the millage rate, whatever. We'd have to make a lot of cuts to get to the rollback, which the cuts would be manatee boardwalk repairs, crossovers, manatee trail repairs. You know, I'm just wondering if, I mean, we are, we already have lowered the paving fund, the mobility fund. I mean, if we cut out other things, I'm just saying, I'm concerned on how we are gonna get to below rollback.
Okay.
I think I.
Let's do this, if you don't mind, the dollars that we have to cut to do the, the proposed, the motion that we have is?
The dollars needed to cut to have the motion at the mid.
Yep.
For the general fund is $207,000.
$207,000 off the budget allows for this 3.4322.
Uh, that's correct, yeah, that'll do it.
Okay. And, and Mayor Protim, you're saying that to, to go down to below, just say 3.25, which would be just below, which would be a tax decrease. My issue is this is a tax increase, and we have to scrutinize, we have to figure out a way to make this work. We can't just, that, that, they expect us to be prudent here, and to say, are you prioritizing, is there any spending? So, to find another, I think, 200,000? Well, if it's halfway, we'd need another 207,000, right? Okay.
Now, remember, we are the fourth, fourth lowest in Brevard County, as far as our millage rate. I think that we have to make certain that we have enough padding there, just in case, I mean, we could have another pandemic. And I think that it's a good idea to have a little bit more than what we, what the rollback would be at this point. I think it's a good idea, I think this is a good compromise.
Thank you. Want to make sure, everyone? Yeah, I'm concerned about some of our contingency funds and reserves, especially in, in light of some things we've kind of pushed further down the road, particularly our clarifiers and what the potential of that would be. But I think we can certainly cut out the things necessary to get to the mid-level point that Councilmember Raymond has recommended, but and there's probably other things that we could cut out as well, that might ultimately help with our reserves and our contingency funds.
Also know that things, supplies and things to build and construct cost a lot more money. During the year 2021 and 2023, we had a supply problem. So, things do cost more than what I understand lumber, for example, is ridiculous. So we just have to make sure that there is enough for the projects that we want to do.
And that's my point.
And also in case of an emergency hurricane, we have problems.
By ordinance, we, we keep a reserve for the emergencies, if COVID strikes, ARPA funds, we got an injection of $5 million into this city? That's a year's worth of taxes. We've got grants. We have FEMA money for disasters, the feds get involved quickly, there's no shyness in printing money up there, and we receive it. So these kind of red herring scenarios have not existed on real data. When pandemics strike, when hurricanes strike, and the city has a reserve over the 70%, I think we're close to 20%. When things cost more, in my house, you buy less or you make more, and try to buy the same. Our budget this year is more than last year, and every year, it continues to grow. The citizens I talk to want limited government. Focus on the core and be excellent at the core. We have spent millions, and if you looked at a pie chart, and you said essential police, fire, permitting, essential services, and you look at the percentage of the pie chart that went to recreation, nice-to-have projects, it has, makes up well over half of the 20 million in debt. So we were willing to go into debt for recreation, and I'm not against debt, especially if it's for emergencies and essential things. But what we're feeling right now is what I tried to warn about in 2018. We had the money, we're doing good, we're not gonna increase your taxes, these projects are funded, now we have extended ourselves, I'll get to you, we've extended ourselves, and now we have to, it is difficult to find things to cut. But this is, this is the problem, is I'm for keeping the salaries the same, I'm for funding police and fire, but if there's line item reductions, whatever it takes, we, we gotta figure that out, because the citizens went through a pandemic. And I think this is one of the worst things that we can do, coming off that year, is to, to turn around and increase our taxes, when the feds came in heavy with a lot of money to help us already. Wrong direction, I don't know anyone. It, it, it's always the question of, when is it okay to increase taxes? And I don't have a perfect answer to that, because I don't like saying yes to it, but I can tell you, when you look at our budget, this isn't even close to, to someone who says it's tight. The estuary project is not essential, the civic hub, 250,000 is now being framed as a stormwater project, nowhere does it say it's a stormwater, that is not essential. And I agree, concession stands, those should not come before the essentials. And so maybe we downsize some projects, but this is, this is a 200,000, we're, we're, we're 207 of 400,000, we're halfway there. We can cut another 200,000 out of this budget, I believe that. I, I, I know how to run the meeting, I can see hands raised, I don't need, you would just respectfully, and I don't want your arm to wear out. Talk to the Councilmember Raymond, thank you.
Concerns, and I get the concerns that everyone is saying here, but one of the things that I think I'm concerned about is the public's perception. My understanding, and you can correct me, it's making it, or what I've seen on, on social media and that, that the city is broke. This city, I, I do not believe is broke, I, my understanding, what I've talked to people, we are financially sound, and you may correct me if I'm wrong. So, I, I get what you're saying in, in doing projects, but we're not broke, I mean, just, I want to say that one thing. One of the suggestions I would have, I still want the 3.4, and I would suggest taking away the estuary.
Okay. So of the 207,000, you're saying you would like to identify the estuary project as, which is 100?
Back to the general fund.
Okay. So 130,000, and this is a very good segue, let's talk about the 207 with the motion on the floor. What projects do you want to cut to get the 207? She says, can we get agreement on the estuary?
I'm not looking at it that way, but I do have to make a comment about good debt and bad debt. There will never be another time when we can get interest rates 1 or 2%. I think that we were very smart to move forward on the projects that we did, because this isn't going to happen, we already know that things are already up. So I think there's a difference between good debt, bad debt, and I think we made some darn good decisions in the past, thank you.
There is no debate that the financing terms we got for the loan was excellent, there's a high debate on how we spent that money. We should have been fixing stormwater projects four years ago, instead of building massive community centers, we could have built a million. massive community centers. We could have built a million dollar community center and it would have been gorgeous. We're at four, five, six, the total project I've seen, ten million. Meanwhile, streets still flood, lights are still broken, problems still exist. So that's its priorities and I don't have a lot of citizen pushback. Whoever's saying the city's broke, I would argue I'm pretty active on social media. I'm not seeing comments that anyone's saying the city's broke. But if they did say that, if their point is, is you're in debt, I would say, well, look at our assets and liabilities. I think that there's a debate on how we're spending the money is, is, is the issue. So two hundred and seven thousand dollars, Councilmember Davis has identified a hundred thirty thousand. Can we get some discussion around whether or not we agree that the estuary project should be a part of the two hundred and seven thousand dollars that is removed from this year?
I think it needs to be removed and removed permanently until such time as the the Brevard Library constructs the aquarium and then.
Brevard Zoo.
Brevard Zoo, excuse me. And then see where we're at. But to just push it off a year just merely means that we're going to have the same audience here complaining about it again, so it just needs to go away.
Thank you. Amen. Just want to focus on that one. Or Mayor Pro Tem Raymond, or Kellam, sorry. And I'm coming back to you, Ray. Thank you.
I, I agree. I think the long point, estuary needs to be pushed out until time when the zoo gears up to get ready. I, I also think, I talked to John and, and Todd about if we took Veterans Park out of the general fund and funded that with ARPA money. Veterans Park has been on the books for a while. We were ninety thousand dollars into it, or actually two hundred and ninety thousand dollars because we budgeted two hundred thousand dollars last year. The money's there. It's been workshopped three times, three or four times. It's ready to go out for bid. So if we could fund that, that would take two hundred and ten thousand out of the general fund for funding for that, if we could agree to fund it with ARPA money.
The project is on what page, just so we can?
Oh.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat what you just said? Are you asking to remove or just to postpone it or?
Asking, I'm sorry. No, I'm, I'm asking to, to keep it in the budget, but to fund it a different way. Okay.
Thank you.
So Veterans Park, you're saying the source of funds is currently general fund and CRA and you want to amend that to be?
Right.
ARPA?
Yes, and I, and I'm saying that it's, it's two hundred thousand this year. Like I said, we're two hundred and ninety thousand into this park already. The designs have been made, it's been workshop, it's ready to go.
Mayor, that's on page one oh four, in the answer to your question.
Thank you.
Of the budget.
I've talked with Jeff and, and John and Todd about bringing down the costs, doing away with the solar lights, doing away with the playground to bring that two hundred and ten down, and if we could fund it through ARPA or another fund. I talked to John about it and he said we could fund it with ARPA money. And it wouldn't be the two hundred and ten, we'll bring that cost down as much as we could. But that would take it out of the general fund.
Mayor?
Yes?
I have a quick question and maybe I'm misinformed or whatever. My understanding, there is an issue with one of the poles and the power and stuff in the park. Originally, they thought they were going to have to remove it. Now we're keeping it, but we're going to have to do some work for the power lines where we could possibly just push this back a year while that's done. Is that correct?
Mayor, I can address that if you like.
Yeah.
Please. We were hoping to get rid of the pole that's in the middle of Veterans Park. We went through extensive talks with FPL and they're incredibly opposed to removing that pole because it provides a guy wire anchor for that entire line serving all the way down to Ridgewood Avenue. The engineering that would be required would be cost prohibitive in my opinion. So instead of removing that pole, what I'd rather do is make lemonade. We're going to have to deal with a pole there. And this is where Mayor Pro Tem Kellam was talking about getting rid of the solar lights. We talked about instead bringing in a power pedestal there, we have to live with the pole. And distributing some degree of electricity through that park because we saw at the last memorial dedication, they were using a battery powered PA and Joe Titchett asked me, can we please get power out here? So we thought, why don't we just make some lemonade out of this? Take the money away from the solar because solar doesn't do well under a huge canopy of trees anyways. Then distribute perhaps some festoon lighting throughout that park, much lower cost. And we, we kill two or three birds with that stone.
So are we better delaying the project or are we better transferring funds?
There's, there's no reason to delay it.
Okay.
It's just the power pole is not a reason to delay it.
Okay.
Okay. Yep.
All right, we've made a decision on Long Point Park, Estuary Park. However, I am still concerned about the safety and security. We found out that there are still things buried, supposedly buried. Being that it's city property and it could become a liability for the city, I still would like to see that clean. That what, whatever may be there, if it's concrete blocks, if it's railroad ties, whatever, I still think it should be cleaned up since it's city property. That's my opinion. I just worry about the safety and security of all of us about this. So that's, that's my question, you know? And that's what I would like to see it clean. If there is really, if there really are things buried there, I'd like to, you know, have that cleaned up so that the city doesn't have the liability of that. Thank you.
Also, Mayor, the concession stand is really important to our city, to our kids. And I, you know, I don't want to put it above flooding, but there was a concession stand there and we redid our park and we took the concession stand away. So maybe we could fund it, and I talked to John about this and they kind of looked at it. R and R expenses, if we could use that to fund the concession stand. According to this memo from twenty twenty one in August, there was an expense in the general fund decreased to help, out of the R and R fund to help furnishing for the multi-generation center. So I, I don't see why we couldn't use the that fund to build a concession stand as well, because there was a concession stand, now there's none.
As far as, I don't, I don't, I don't believe the kids, you might, we'd probably want to go down a different road there. The concession stand would not fall under a renewal and replace, nor are the funds available for that based on the balances we have. And as far as the MGF using R and R funds, I don't recall the MGF using R and R funds because they're not renewal and replaced because it's a new project. Unless there's something else that was done in that area, you know, that, you know, had to be replaced. But as far as the MGF itself, no, that's a new project. That's, that would not be renewed or placed.
Because the concession stand also has a storage room component. There's an existing storage room that could possibly qualify for R and R, some.
In a sense, if you are removing an old, in that, in that, in that context, part of it could be R and R then.
We already cut the playground, new playground equipment for the city park. Is that reflected?
Yeah, we already.
All right, is that reflected in the new materials that we received?
It's not.
The, the playground.
You did that last, you did that two weeks ago. That's not even in this budget. Staff, staff removed it based on council's request. There is no playground this year in this upcoming budget. Council, council nixed that.
You're, you're speaking of the twenty three thousand retrofit?
The playground equipment?
Yeah.
The city park.
We're talking about the playground that was in the CRA for like two hundred and some thousand.
The one at City Park.
Yes, at City Park, yeah. Council told us to get rid of that and we did last meeting. So it's not in this budget as you look at it now.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so yes, I think we've got, we've got a motion on the floor with a rollback rate, proposed rollback rate of four point.
Excuse me.
Excuse me, three point four three two two. We've identified that that's about two hundred and seven thousand dollar reduction in the budget. The good news is when we get in the budget, we're having that conversation now. And so the next vote, I think, is going to move a lot smoother. And I agree, if we can do the budget first and then the millage rate, that would be helpful. But the the other two hundred, or a hundred and thirty of that has been identified. And I think the proposed projects that we got in an email from city staff, thank you very much for working on it. My comments are these, these line items, manatee boardwalk repairs, manatee trail repairs, educational video series, city hall maintenance, crossover, EV charging stations, perca vehicle replacement, mobility, paving, Veterans Park, all that totaled up to be four hundred eleven thousand. I would pull out Veterans Park. I think that that is, project is way too far down the road to do. I would replace that with Estuary Park and also add in the civic hub. I don't know why the civic hub wasn't a proposed project on here and.
Sir, it's in the.
CRA?
CRA.
Okay, thank you. So those are my, those are my comments on this, is if we can get to the four hundred thousand, I'll support that rate, but.
We have a motion on the table. Shouldn't we vote, I mean, shouldn't we do the motion and then continue to the budget?
So we have a motion, we have a second, we're discussing that motion on the table. It's a three point four three two two.
But I think knowing the millage rate will affect the conversation for the budget, so.
We do, three point four three two two. What, what we're trying to say is we're doing the math on whether or not we want to go that low. I'm saying we can go lower than that. It's all about the millage rate right now.
I know, but, and city attorney, am I, do we need to have a, a vote for the motion on the table?
I, I believe you're having discussion on that motion.
Right. Yeah, we discussed once discussion ends and if we're done now, we can, we can move forward. I'm expressing my opposition to this rate because it is a tax increase.
I understand.
Okay. It might have lowered the rate, but I do not want to increase taxes. And I think we find another two hundred and seven thousand out of the projects that staff put and we move forward. That's all I have to say.
If we remove that two hundred and ten of Veterans Park, is that, that gets us lower on the rollback rate, right?
If you remove Veterans Park?
Yeah, funded it a different way, out of general.
That's a question for John. I, that does.
The way that she's answering it, as she's asking it, Mayor, is that if you remove Veterans Park and say you used ARPA funding, you would reduce the expense to the general fund, which would get you right at three point four, where's it at? Three, three point four three eight eight on what the other council members are getting to. So what Mayor Pro Tem is saying is if you funded the Veterans Park with ARPA, that achieves what the other council people just asked for the middle of the road.
John, is there a restriction on using ARPA fund for lowering taxes?
Not for this, not for the project.
Lowering taxes.
That's not the lower tax, that's not the purpose of lowering taxes. This, this is, this is the purpose of funding a project. We're not, we're not, we're not lowering, we're not lowering taxes. We're, we, we could fund a project with ARPA money. The only thing you can't do is you can't use it for debt or taxes, but in the manner of which we're doing it here, council's saying if they, if they want to, they've got a project here and they want to go ahead and fund it with ARPA instead of general fund money, you can do that.
Call the question, please.
I want to make sure she.
So if we, if we take out Veterans Park and we take out the Estuary Park, that brings us to three hundred and forty three thousand and we need to get to four hundred, four, hundred and eleven thousand to bring it down to rollback? Is that, am I?
I think you're in the, maybe not to the exact dollar, but you're.
And the one, and the one hundred and sixty five thousand effect on the CRA, if we took the money out of the the CRA, I mean, if we lowered.
No, there's no effect on the CRA. We, we discussed that before about the civic hub. That money, that particular thing's being funded by the loan, so it's, that's just a wash.
Gotcha, okay. I just want to understand, okay.
Yeah, I would be comfortable passing if this passes, there's nothing to talk about. If this does not pass, I would be comfortable lowering it below the rollback rate. Then we go into the budget and let's start doing the work there. Or just give a general direction, but. Any more comments out of you, Mayor Pro Tem?
No.
Okay, Councilmember Raymond, Councilmember Willis? Discussion is over now, so we can go ahead. Y'all ready?
Mr. Mayor, you answered your question. You asked what the percentage was. If we went to the three point four three two two and that would be three point five seven nine percent, point zero three five seven nine. Which in essence is half of what Jenny had told us earlier about the seven because we're three point five six six nine, you're going to the middle, so it takes you to the middle, so.
Will you say it one more time because we're going to need to put this in?
Point zero three five seven nine, which would be three point five percent. And then based on what the attorney said, whatever passes here, staff will simply insert that next to the number of mills that it increased. And that would be three point five seven nine. And then that would cover, that would satisfy the state's requirement on a, on a resolution.
Okay.
That's easy.
So the percentage that needs to be written in there is, does it specify the decimal?
We always, we.
Let's do.
Three point five seven nine.
Let's do three point, three point.
We'll do three point five eight because the state under tax forms those two, two, two places.
I like it.
Okay.
Three point five eight percent. The resolution needs to say that. Got a motion on the floor. And it is the understanding of this council that they will add in language to this resolution to specify the increase. We're good? Good? City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
For.
Mayor Pro Tem Kellam?
Against.
Mayor Morrison?
Against.
Councilmember Raymond?
For.
Councilmember Willis?
For.
Millage rate resolution number twenty twenty two, twenty two, to adopt a final millage rate has passed, three to two. Moving on to item number one B of public hearing, this is a public hearing item, city attorney. Ordinance number nineteen twenty twenty two.
Ordinance number nineteen dash twenty two, an ordinance of the city of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, adopting the annual general fund, wastewater enterprise fund, stormwater enterprise fund, enterprise capital fund, special revenue funds, capital project funds and agency fund budgets for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty two and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty three, providing for an effective date.
Thank you very much. Council, any questions for staff on ordinance number nineteen twenty twenty two? This is the budget. We've been in it since five o'clock pretty much. So before, we don't have any questions, I will go to public comment on this one. Okay. All right, we will go ahead. Now, I've got quite a few cards. If any of you would like to consolidate or have similar, as you did for the tax increase. This is the budget. I think you heard some conversations based on the cards I'm reading that the estuary project is something that is being considered to be voted on here and at this time now to, to make that millage rate that was just passed. So I've got. So I've got a stack of cards, um, starting with Joe Abreu. Joe, I know you spoke on the millage. Feel like it's captured? Okay, got it. And, um, yes, Ms. Michelle? Happy to. Absolutely, if you provide to our officer there, or Lisa, thank you so much. I will, and we're going to start the timer. Because it got to be fair, I'll do the best I can. All right. Michelle Church owns a home at two ten Long Point Road here in Cape Canaveral, Florida. I'm a taxpayer, I'm a very concerned about the growing debt of our city. The debt is out of balance for the size of our city and number of taxpayers. Any kind of grant received for the Long Point Road project will not repay one hundred percent of the cost of over four hundred thousand, six hundred thousand, or eight hundred thousand dollars. One, why did the city decide we need this project in particular at the end of a quiet twenty resident dead end street with unique distinction of being one of three areas in the city that is zoned R one? A street that is less than one eighth of a mile? How and when did the city acquire this property and for what purpose at that time? Two, the Long Point Road project is being developed in wetlands, who let this happen? Do they live in Cape Canaveral? These wetlands were a natural protection for our dead end street as well as a sanctuary to numerous different animals, birds, snakes, and plant life, as well as being a natural water retention pond, quote, pond. The animals and birds are gone, as well as a number of very old trees valuable for our ecosystem. Three, the city has already developed more public use acreage than is required for many cities larger than Cape Canaveral. How can we engage in another project that will not generate revenue to keep it maintained? We already have public areas that are being poorly maintained or not maintained at all. Four, with the completion of the Long Point Road project, there will be six to eight proposed parking spaces and an unmeasured amount of traffic generated. Where will they park when the parking spaces are full? Five, entry and egress to this new park will come directly off A one A, one block from the light at Cumberland Farms, the same area that is surprised, supposed to be a potentially high risk area for bikers and pedestrians. Six, in addition to these questions and concerns, we already have Patriot Park on our street, which was created as a playground for the residents on Columbia in nineteen ninety-seven and nineteen, through nineteen ninety-eight. There have not been any children on our street since nineteen ninety. Now we have homeless persons sleeping in the park, persons of all ages screaming and hollering at all hours of the night when the park is supposed to be closed, persons selling and using drugs, dog owners letting their dogs use the park for their business, and et cetera, to name a few of the problems. We have a great concern that these activities will spread to both ends of our otherwise quiet street. There are too many unanswered questions associated with this project in addition to the debt. I'm firmly opposed to the continuation of this project and the debt that will be added to our over budgeted city budget. Wouldn't we all be better served if we maintain that we already have and revisited this project at a later time when all our questions are answered? Thank you. Hopefully I met the intent of your letter, thank you. Okay, so with that, Mr. Abreu waving in opposition, I think, is it way, uh, Ms. Michelle Church? I've got yours in opposition. Ms. Peggy Green waving in opposition. Mary Gwinlock? I'm sorry. Hi, Ms. Gallenlock, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you.
This is my second board meeting. Interesting. So I'm a resident of Cape Canaveral, Florida. I own five properties here and two of them happen to be on Long Point Road. I, I basically have questions really, rather than making a statement. Obviously, I'm opposed to this estuary park, obviously. I was wondering, was there ever a notice that was sent out to homeowners advising us that this was a park that was going to go there? Aren't you supposed to send notices out? And was anything like that ever done to advise the homeowners? That was never done? No notices?
We're happy to answer that. If, I'm taking a note of that question. If you, if you have multiple questions, you can.
Okay.
Get through it all and we'll come back.
In some of the documents that I've read, you are talking about the developer. Who is the developer?
Okay.
We already have one dirty park at the end of the street on the, on the east end. Uh, who is going to keep this thing clean? Who is going to monitor it? I mean, we don't have any street lights, we have potholes, we have problems on that street that should be fixed. I mean, I just don't understand why we would want to not remove this thing from the budget. I just don't get it. Uh, another question I have is about board members who don't live in Cape Canaveral. It's come to my attention just recently, uh, that there are people, new people. Some of you don't live in Cape Canaveral and I wonder how versed some of you are on what the people of Cape Canaveral want, how they feel. Our group in that, we don't want this thing and it's, it should be removed from the budget, number one. And so that's my question, how many, how many of you people sitting there actually live in Cape Canaveral?
We all live in.
You all live in Cape Canaveral?
Yep. Just want to stay, don't want to go back and forth. I'll do my best to answer, but make sure you get all your time.
Right now. Okay, I think that's my only question. I wanted to know the hours that this park is going to be open if you decide to go ahead and do that. Do I have to put up a big fence and get guard dogs around my two properties? I mean.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Um, I think the good news is, I think this council opposes this project. Um, and those are all excellent questions that I don't think we need to answer. And we have a lot of cards up here, and so I don't want to set precedent of back and forth, if you don't mind. I'll make sure that city staff, um, if you want to leave your, your contact information or reach out to them, they can help you with those questions. But yes, all the council have to live here by charter, by ordinance. We all live in the city, different sides of A one A, but we're all Cape Canaveral, so. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Jason Pace, hail, pace? In opposition to the part, okay, thank you, Jason. Uh, Simone? Thank you. Mr. George Clark? Thank you, Mr. Clark. Okay. It's Kristy Hopkins. Thank you. Posed. Jason, I think this is you again because you had the budget and the tax increase. Okay, got it. Cindy Knight, I think we've got your comments. Thank y'all very much for doing this. This is one of the things we had hoped we could do when we have multiple comments. Simone? Yep, I see there was two cards for, for one A and one B, or, or two. Well, we're going to get into number two here in just a little bit, but again, that's probably not going to be an issue. So with that, that concludes those public hearing items for number one. Uh, actually, I've got one more, Mr. Carol Sanders. Mr. Sanders, how are you? Been good, thank you. Just come on up, introduce yourself and you have three minutes, sir, thank you. Yes, whenever you're ready, the green light's helpful.
All right, thank you. So as the, as the mayor stated, my name is Carol Sanders. And as some of you may know, I'm actually a candidate for one of the seats that are going to be open on the council in November in the general election. So I wanted to share a couple of brief general comments about the sort of the combined issues of the tax increase in the budget. I think, like many here tonight, um, I inherently disfavor tax increases. And, you know, having worked for the federal government and witnessed unbelievable waste and inefficiency, I am inherently dubious of government spending by nature. So at the same time, though, I do understand the realities and challenges of managing the affairs of a growing and changing city like Cape Canaveral, which may occasionally require us to revisit our finances, fair enough. But increasing the burden on the people should always be a last resort. And I believe that frankly, I believe we don't have a revenue problem here, we have a spending problem. Pet projects have been elevated and prioritized ahead of some of our most basic and urgent needs. And I believe that people deserve better than getting stuck with the bill for years of reckless fiscal policy. According to my respect, we submit that the proposed tax heights, which is a moot point at this point, I suppose, but the budget be reconsidered accordingly. And every effort should be made to find the money we need within the existing framework because it's there. And we can certainly find it by exercising fiscal restraint, living within our interests as everybody in this room tonight has to. Thank you.
Thank you. So the public hearing item, one B, if there's anyone who would like to speak on it, please come forward in order. Mr. Hodge? See, got it right that time.
Apparently, no one listened to me earlier, uh, because maybe I'm totally wrong on this, but in the budget, there's three hundred thousand dollars for estuary park as part of the stormwater. So why is that three hundred thousand part of your budget reduction? I, I don't understand that. So hey, man, it's on page one fifty-one.
Do you want to handle this, John?
Dollars in stormwater, uh, have no effect on taxes. The wastewater, stormwater enterprise fund is run like a business and it makes its revenues on user fees. We're talking about the general fund for the ad valorem taxes.
Right.
That's.
Thank you. Because the stormwater fund has its own enterprise revenues, hundred, half of it was coming from the general fund. The other half is coming from the stormwater fund.
Right, ad valorem taxes don't fund stormwater, wastewater.
Fee per service, so it has a hundred fifty thousand dollar impact. Now, it does relieve the stormwater fund revenues, though.
Absolutely.
And it does allow us to transfer those funds if we choose.
Within the enterprise fund, not to the general fund.
We can only spend stormwater revenue on stormwater projects?
Yes.
Stormwater enterprise funds.
And I'm just clarifying because we have transferred in the past.
Only within, the gen, the general fund has transfers within the general fund. And the enterprise fund, which contains the wastewater fund and stormwater fund, has transfers within those funds, but you can't transfer that over because now you're co-mingling user fees with tax dollars, you can't do that.
Thank you. Okay. Please come forward, Ms. Sedum.
Leave, Ms. Sedum, at point of information, as you know, it can be asked at any time. My concern is, what I just heard, we're collecting this money, but we can't use it. So why isn't that budgetary line in the other area that we can use the fees that's actually being paid for our stormwater? In addition to our water bill, if we can't use it to deflect our, lessening our taxes, what am I paying it for? You're charging me the X amount of dollars on my water bill for stormwater. You're saying it's in the general fund and yet we have another company, agency, that's handling the money that gets collected in my house. If I'm using water and I'm going to charge you a dollar for a glass of water, that dollar should pay for the water you're drinking. What I'm hearing is, no, 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 no. This is B, this is A, we're not an A, B corporation. That we make, we, the city, make the budgetary lines. I also work for the government. And I know you can't go from A to B in a budget. This should not be in general fund. This should be in that other fund that you're, it's not a tax, it's additional money. We have properties not in Cape Canaveral. Their water bill is substantially less. We're paying a lot of money for your stormwater. And if you don't know it, take a look at your water bill. We have lots of, not taxes, fees. So whatever we can do, put in our budget that we can actually move around, let's do it. We're one point nine square miles. Our budget is ten million dollars bigger than satellite beach, which is four points, say, seven, four. They have a supermarket.
Thank you. Any other public comments on the budget?
Wait.
We will close public hearing after this, I just want to make sure.
Yep. Could we get some clarification on that exactly from John Delio, maybe to explain?
Well, we can close public comment and then come back, but I at least want to do that. Okay, seeing no more? On the public hearing item? Thank you. Okay, with that, public hearing is closed. Back to this council, Councilmember Raymond, you had a question?
I just would like some clarification on what, what our resident explained. And could you explain that to me, John? I'm a little confused.
I, I can, I can address it generally, John, if you like.
Oh, Todd?
Sure, so the, the enterprise funds are required for stormwater and wastewater. And when you pay your user fees, you're using, you're using water, you're going to pay a certain amount for the wastewater for that. You're paying stormwater that goes into those funds. And the reason they're set up that way is because they're automatically restricted. You can only use them to improve that infrastructure. So when you're paying your water bill, for example, you're flushing a lot of water and that's going to be treated at the plant. So that's the wastewater fee. So those fees help to make sure the wastewater system is healthy. And we just did a wastewater rate analysis and they just looked at how healthy that whole system is. And they said, okay, we're going to look at not this year, but next, we're going to look at five years about how well funded that wastewater enterprise needs to be. They made recommendations about how those fees are going to be set up. Those fees go into that enterprise fund to be used just for wastewater and we cannot co-mingle those in the general fund. Now, sometimes we do use those enterprise funds for things that are appropriate. For instance, um, if we do a civic hub project here and if there's a stormwater component of it, yes, that's going to come out of the stormwater enterprise funds to pay that component of it. The rest of it may be general funded, but this part's going to be enterprise. Same thing for wastewater. If we're going to be doing a, a lift station, that is going to come right out of the wastewater enterprise fund and not the general fund dollars. It's to make sure those funds are there for those important utilities. And that's why it's so restricted. Councilmember Raymond, I hope that answers the question.
All right, let me ask one other question. When we do the engineering studies, does that come out of the enterprise fund? Like, we just did the engineering, for example, for Center Street, the Center Street project for, to reduce flooding.
John, you want to answer that one?
It, it depends, it depends on the program. If it's an infrastructure maintenance, uh, project, then there's, there might be a design component of that and engineering and a construction component. Let's take the, take the wastewater treatment plant, the biggest project going on, um, the clarifiers, the clarifiers. It's going to cost the city probably two point some million dollars, um, once we do those next year. That has an engineering component and that has a construction component, but that's a wastewater, exclusively wastewater project. So the money will all come, come from there. And Mr. Hodge, uh, in, in reference to what he said, yeah, if you were to say, hey, we got three hundred thousand dollars in the. And Mr. Hodge, in, in reference to what he said, yeah, if you were to say, hey, we got $300,000 in the stormwater project, then why do we have to do that? Well, if that was next, that would uh, give back the $300,000 into the stormwater fund specifically. Okay.
But it did give back $150,000 in the stormwater fund.
The general fund.
Well, it's 150 in the general and 150 in the stormwater.
It's 300 in it.
So that money is going to flow back to 300?
Yes. And if there's components of a project, one component might be stormwater, one component could be infrastructure maintenance. And we have those spelled out in our, in our CR, in our, our capital projects in this, in this budget book. But again, yeah, if you, if you nick something that's specifically stormwater, well, then you're, you're lowering your expense in stormwater. And then you're going to have more money for stormwater. Or maybe you want to do another stormwater project because you've mixed that 300,000 there. So. But the funds are exclusive. You could go all the way up to the state level. The general fund and the enterprise fund are two separate. General fund funded 33% in the city by the taxpayers. Okay. The rest, we get revenues in different light. And then the enterprise fund funds the wastewater, stormwater fund.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Now that we're, not to go too far afield here, but since we're talking about the stormwater wastewater fund. So when we go and review the rate that we imposed for this coming year, that savings, if nothing else is used, would be reflected in where we are next year, when we look at the next rate.
Right. And I'm looking exclusively at wastewater because that's the sewer, you flush your toilets, whatever. And so that's specifically that, that 10% increase that you, you, this council did, that's specifically wastewater. That 10% ain't going, that money's not going to any other place but in that wastewater fund. And like the city manager said, you know, it's to fund the operations and whatever. And when something goes wrong with a wastewater treatment plant, you need those user fees because it's expensive.
So, yeah, to, to Mr. Hodge's point, if it's going to free up 300,000 out of the stormwater fund, the civic hub is being funded this year's out of CRA and, and, yeah, CRA funding. Why couldn't we take, and it's 250,000? Yeah, that to me says you would reduce, you would cut the 250,000 out. And then you can take those funds in the stormwater, the 300,000. And for 100,000 or 50,000, you could do your stormwater study and see that's a stormwater project, but it's not mentioned in here as a, as a stormwater project.
Right.
On page 149 of the capital improvement plan. And so if we want to get serious about calling this a stormwater project, let's properly put the cost down, add it to this list and refine the scope of work to be only stormwater. That allows us to free up 300,000 or 250,000 out of the general fund right there.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I could.
For the CRA.
Mr. Mayor, though, if I could just put that in context for you.
Yep.
The 250,000 is pretty much, when we got the 1.2 million dollar loan, is the money that's remaining, let's just say, in the investment fund, which is going to be used, the remainder of the money to fund the civic hub. Now, if you do look at the way staff had put the sources of funds in, on, on that project.
Page 118.
Let's go to page 118. And ba- basically, at that point, when, when we were having discussion earlier, yes, whatever portion would constitute in the end, when this engineering was done or the design or whatever, it was stormwater. Council had stated, and that's why we put it in there, that we would use ARPA funds for stormwater because you could use ARPA funds for stormwater. So let's just say that out of that 250,000, because I don't know what the design's going to be now or whatever. But, but let's just say that, well, let's just say this, let's say council said, we, let's take the 250 out. And then that's the, that's the, that's the loan money, but I put that back in the investment account. And when, and when council wants to do something else with the civic hub, the design or whatever, they say, okay, John, it's time to do that. And then we just move the money in. But for the stormwater person, portion of this, you're absolutely right. You'd be using stormwater money for that or using ARPA fund money, which is designated for stormwater. So yes, you, you would be able to do that. If it ends up costing a hundred thousand dollars over here for stormwater, you could use a stormwater fund for that.
Thank you. All right, council. So we really need kind of a, similar to what we did last time, a motion to come out on what we want to do. City manager, if there's anything or clarity that we need on projects, I think we've made it clear in during the millage rate that the estuary project is one, right? And then the other one?
If I, to answer your question, Mayor, yes, I, I think there appears to be consensus to cancel the estuary project. So that puts $130,000 back in the general fund. There's been a, a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Callum to continue Veterans Park. There was another council member said, push it back a year. Mayor Pro Tem Callum said, no, we could still do it, but fund it out of ARPA. So that removes that, how much? 210,000?
210,000?
From the, from the general fund, if the council wants to go along with that. Either way you go, either push it or fund it by ARPA. And so there's two things.
Veterans?
For veterans. And the third thing is civic hub funding or identifying a portion of that design work that's going to be stormwater. And having that funded from the stormwater enterprise fund. Jeff, if you have an idea on what a stormwater study would be for the civic hub, what that portion might be? I, I know that the initial design number that we threw into the civic hub was prior to Councilmember Willis suggesting we have a stormwater component. So we still have design work to do with the civic hub. I think anything we do might be in addition to that. So yes, go ahead, Jenny.
For the Veterans Park, there was another, when you talked about still going forward with the project, but having a lower cost, but we didn't really identify what.
We didn't. I, I'm going to guess that's maybe 10 to 15,000 because the solar light's going away, but.
So the whole project's 10 to 15 for this year?
Potentially, but that's just a guess.
Okay. That was just another.
We're going to try.
Thing that was thrown out.
We're going to try to be frugal on this lighting situation at the park. And I think there's a better way to do this because of that pole has to stay.
Okay. So yeah, the, the 150,000 out of the general fund by removing estuary park, it also frees up 300,000 out of the stormwater fund. And so Veterans Park, I think we heard a concern out of our finance director about, is that an ARPA project? I don't think it's a great ARPA project. Maybe you can justify it, but I don't feel great about that. I would want to fund Veterans Park out of our general fund or CRA. And I'm not against that. I think it's kind of silly that we're trying to like squeeze it in there. There's, there's enough funds to do that. This project's been worked up. It's along the way. The civic hub, the 300,000 out of the stormwater fund, all we have to do is find general fund projects that would qualify for stormwater funding. And then cut those general fund projects out, fund them with this 300,000 in the stormwater fund. We could literally go below the rollback rate. And these are the things that I want on.
The civic hub is not only.
No, we've already, but I'm just.
The civic hub is not only a stormwater project. It's much more than that. So we can only use the stormwater enterprise funds for the portion of it that is stormwater.
Right. I'm saying, don't only focus on the stormwater portion of it.
Yeah.
Fund it from the 300,000 freed up to Mr. Hodge's point in the stormwater fund. Fund the study and then you can strike civic hub, the 100, the 250,000 dollars. There, there we are. Just, I mean, we're, we're close to, I know we've already passed the tax increase, but.
Mr. Mayor, just clarification.
Not that clean.
The civic, the civic hub, the 250,000 dollars is a wash if you take it out because that's, that is money from the investment account going into the CRA. So all that would do is if you say, scratch that, you take the 250 out of the revenue. So the expenditure is gone. It has nothing to do, it, it has, it, it's just, it's just the CRA project that's funded by a loan within the CRA. So the civic hub does, all the civic hub does for you, if you decide to take it out is you're just delaying spending that money maybe a year or two years from now, if you said you wanted to delay it.
Well, my closing statement is any project in the general fund that we can fund with stormwater funds, the presidential streets, whatever, stormwater component, that 300,000 could go there and, and hopefully it's a project where you can pull the money out of the general fund and positively impact.
The only problem with that is the listed projects here, if you look at them, they're just in a car, paving, EV station, boardwalk repairs.
Paving.
And I'm just, I'm just, I'm just looking at the list I gave you that's eligible to cut out of the general fund. There's no stormwater component associated with any of these.
Paving?
Well.
Paving is literally in the stormwater fund.
Yeah. Well, there's a paving element that we put them in, they're in both, they're in the.
Yeah, I think pavement and stormwater go hand in hand.
Yeah, but all I'm saying is anything that's in the general fund, okay, that doesn't have a stormwater component, that, yeah, that's not going to, that's not going to help.
Saying the opposite of what you're saying. I'm saying find things in the general fund that has a justifiable.
And pay for it in the stormwater.
And pay it with the 300,000.
There's just not a lot. I just don't see much in there, but council could look at that, but I don't see a lot of stormwater.
I don't think we have time to do that. I'm just saying, if that can work, that's great.
Yeah, there's not enough there.
All right. And we're going to try to.
Mayor. Um, a few things. Um, I think the $300 or $300,000 that we're saving, saving in stormwater fund without the estuary park should go to stop the flooding on Long Point Moon. Use the stormwater fund to fix that flooding. And then on page 77 of the, of the budget book, it says estuary park, non-departmental, 458,000. Well, if you, it, if you take out the 300, it comes to like 158, not 133.
Um, it's the grant, it was 325,000 in revenue towards that. So if you take the 458,000 minus 325,000 for the grant, it's 133,000.
It's in the general, the mayor asked the grant.
Okay. So you've got a revenue loan here, it's been $5,000, it's not.
Now you've got the expense of the 458, okay? So take the 458 that the city's going to pay, less the grant. And that's, that's how much money the city's paying. You remove the estuary project and you have 133, 133,000 that could go back into the, the general fund. And based on your assertion, Mayor Pro Tem, you're, you're saying maybe get removed the estuary, but then you're, you're, if you go with the mid-level millage, which that's been approved, you're removing Veterans Park or using it for, moving Veterans Park for a year, okay? Or using ARPA funds then satisfies with the rest of the council set for the 3.44.
Right.
Yeah.
And I, yeah, I just think that, um, you know, we need to address the flooding on Long Point. That's a big problem. So if we could use that stormwater fund that was allocated for that to fix that problem, I think that would be, that would help the people on the street. And then my other comment about the civic hub, you know, this was budgeted for 900,000 and we are way over budget on that. And I keep bringing up the 285,000 in a grant that we were supposed to get. We're like 800, I mean, 85, I mean, don't, I'm not great with all these numbers, but close to 884,000 over budget on that. And we haven't even started redevelopment or anything. So I'm thinking, you know, if we could, I know the CRA money has to stay there, but I just think that if, if we put it off, we could use the funds for something else. Um, and it, you know, if it takes council to move that money to somewhere else, then I, I think that's what we should do.
Thank you. We have a millage rate passed. Does staff need any direction on what project? Because I think the worst thing is you, you want to know what projects you're striking. Do you need clarity?
We have clarity on the estuary project for both general fund and stormwater. I think we're looking for clarity on Veterans Park. There seem to be several options out there.
There's two options.
Yeah, two.
Either kick it down the road a year or fund it differently.
Well, is that what the second project proposal was to get to the tax decrease? Is that what y'all wanted before we go down that?
I don't think we should keep Veterans Park down.
Yeah, I didn't.
I don't agree with that.
I don't think that was the second project. You gotta, you need another.
No, no, Mayor, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Callum said, we've done the workshops, the work has been done on that. We should move forward on it. That's it on Veterans Park.
And Todd thought maybe we could do it for less than 210,000 now with the poll, but maybe if we come up with some number that we could try to stay.
Say 200.
That would help.
200.
Oh, so you think it's still at that level?
And if we could fund it through ARPA funding, that would take it off the year.
But would that give you what you need to justify the?
That would be almost right on, on, on the button. If council wants to keep Veterans Park and if they want to use ARPA money. If they don't, council has to identify in this meeting tonight, 207,000 to cut from the list of projects that we gave you in the general fund and that gets you there. So council has to, council has to find the 207,000.
All right, let's go down the list. Does everyone have access to the list he's referencing?
I believe so.
Okay. Let's try to focus on the ones where that we can get consensus on first, not the controversial ones. Okay.
Just, we're at, with, with the long point coming out, we're at like 74,000. Plus we have $10,000 from the EV charging station. So really we're at 64,000 we're looking for, just to clarify.
We need 64,000 to come out?
Yes.
Okay.
That's where we are. We're very close.
Since you agree on taking estuary.
If you agree on estuary and the 10,000.
Taking estuary out, she's right, that's.
We're at 64,000.
Then you have to identify 64,000 and your, your work is done.
All right, guys. So when I'm looking at this spreadsheet, I just want to make sure we're referencing the right list. Is that right? The one you put together? The council directed actions to staff? Okay. There is the, the milli- the millage mid-range paving, mobility, manatee, boardwalk, Long Point Estuary Park and Veterans Park. And thank you, Jen. We need about 60,000. So really there's a combination of a few of these that could work. Manatee boardwalk and mobility would get us there.
Yep.
Mobility and paving would get us close.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, the mobility was actually just cut in half to 37.
And that's what that represents. So the budget, that's what council requested last time and that represents that. We didn't take it all out. We cut it in half like you requested.
If that freed up stormwater project for paving could come in and fund paving. So I think we take the 12.5 off. Is it 64, you said? Okay, so 64. I'll leave this with.
So that's a, that's 50,000 right there. So.
Yep. And then the biggest, the next biggest is the mobility. Is mobility paving as well?
And sidewalks.
Can't that come out of the stormwater as well that we freed up from the estuary project?
Sidewalks with stormwater, John.
It should be.
Based on the, whatever, the project may be, if you're, if you're tearing up sidewalks to put in uh, something on the road and that could be, that's part of the stormwater project. Yes.
Okay. So that gets us at 49,000. I mean, to me, even if you just shrunk mobility, you, you don't have to strike it to a goose egg zero. But we might just say, take manatee boardwalk down by half and, you know, mobility. I think if you pulled from all three, paving, mobility and. from all three, paving, mobility, and manatee boardwalk, to get to your sixty thousand, don't cut any of them out, just reduce them, if that even works.
That'll work.
Okay, are y'all okay with that? We don't strike anything we reduce?
And that's how the budget will be changed accordingly then, and then, once we get through this, next Friday, uh, finance will hand council a new budget that represents what you approved here.
Council with that, do we, you have understanding and consensus, City Manager, on what to do, I think the motion could adopt it with changes?
Yeah, Veterans Park stays funded, general fund.
Yes.
Okay, got that.
In our motion, would it be, do you understand what the order?
I fully understand, yes. We're gonna be cutting from all those to make up the sixty-four thousand dollars paving, mobility, manatee, boardwalk, we're cutting Long Point Estuary, we're keeping Veterans Park general funded.
Okay, so you could, your motion could say, uh, we adopt the budget that supports the millage rate with the discussed items, okay? Yes. All right, anybody wanna step up and make that motion?
I'll make the motion to, uh, adopt the budget with, um, the cuts that we're gonna make.
I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Callum, got a second by Councilmember Raymond, this is the time where I say this for clarity, so there's no surprises. I think we can cut more, but I'm extremely happy about what we just did, thank y'all. Um, so I'm not gonna support it, but we almost made it, uh, two hundred more thousand to go. With that, any other discussion, council?
I don't know, why can't we fund ARPA with the, with Veterans Park? It's gonna be less than the two hundred and ten thousand.
It's covered with general fund dollars now.
You just made a motion.
He's not gonna support it.
Oh, she's saying pull ARPA out, and then you cut the two hundred thousand?
Yeah. And that's where you wanna be, right?
Because I'm not sure ARPA's allowed for that project yet, I would make a contingent on verifying.
You could, but I think that what, what the mayor you conveyed to the council is, is by taking estuary and those three other projects, it gets you exactly where you have to be, and you don't have to, uh, you don't have to touch Veterans Park, and so your project could can, uh, just stay as is, uh, within the, uh, general fund. There's, there's no, there's no other, there's no other action to take, you have achieved what you wanted to do, almost to the dollar.
Yeah, no, I'm for, the tax rate is where it kind of, that's, that's the issue, but if, if we can do that, and it's an ARPA project, great.
Well, we could keep Veterans Park, we don't have to use ARPA now, based on your discussion, we don't have to use ARPA.
Call a question, please.
But I just thought it would be nice to have a five oh rule on the budget.
We're two hundred thousand away from that.
There's your two hundred thousand.
To be verified, um.
We already did.
Call the question.
Yeah, I'm just making sure Mayor Pro Tem is clear, um, no, I mean, I, too many unanswered questions for me to, to think that that's allowed, if that's possible, and there's a high level of confidence.
There is?
I would, but we still have a tax increase, so we're gonna have a surplus of cash. So, that would be a deficit, though, if we cut that out, right, I mean, that's, that's the problem, we can't pass a budget.
Well, if you, if you cut, if you cut out an expense, then it's going to go into the contingency fund, which is, you know, much lower than it normally is, but I would say, uh, council gets the best of both worlds here, because you get Veterans Park, council has already approved the tax at three point four, you, now you had to do something to achieve what you wanted to cut, you already did. Council, council's taken the actions it needed, because council's voted on three point four, so you just had to back that up with the cuts, and y'all just did that. So Veterans Park is no longer even a, and there's no use, there's no reason to use ARPA money, that ARPA money now could be used for more stormwater projects in the city.
I support Veterans Park in the budget, I do not subscribe to the idea that if I vote against this budget, I'm against everything, now, Mayor Pro Tem Callum. There are some, I support the pay raises, I support police, I support fire, I support many items, but there's enough in there that I think we gotta get out, if we ran out of time, I've been saying this since the first workshop. And I said, five hundred thousand comes out, and I'll support it, and what's okay, we should be very proud of what we did, this is the first time in ten, fifteen, twenty years that this council has ever rolled up its sleeves, that I'm aware of, and worked through a budget to the very end, so I applaud all of you for that. And, and absolutely, thank you staff for grinding through it and doing it, and I get the other approach, it's easy, but we're proud of this budget, we've got a motion, we've got a second.
Mayor.
Any more questions?
I just wanna echo something you just mentioned, that we are taking care of the employees in this budget. That's a, a big part of this budget, and I see several employees here tonight, and you're very loyal to this city, and this is the council proving their loyalty back to these employees, so thank you, Mayor, thank you, council.
Thank y'all. Couldn't do it without the citizens, nothing happens without them, so thank y'all. City Clerk.
Councilmember Davis. Mayor Pro Tem Callum.
Four.
Mayor Morrison.
Yes.
Councilmember Raymond.
Four.
Councilmember Willis.
Four.
Great. Motion to adjut, the budget passes four to one, with that, it's eight seventeen PM, two massive items we just got through. We saw exhale, we are gonna take a ten-minute break, reconvene with public comment. Thank you.
All right, everyone, we're gonna get started here in about thirty seconds. Yeah, we're all tired. No, fortunately. All right, everyone, we're gonna call the meeting back to order. It is eight thirty-two PM. We are now on the public participation point of the meeting. I've got some cards here. First one here is Mr. John Benton. John Benton? Hey, John, come on up. You'll have three minutes.
Okay, I'm here for a code reduction hearing. And I was told by this council, the first time I came in front of it, six months after your code board found me guilty of living in a warehouse. The only reason you found me guilty is because Kevin Mann, a deacon in the Presbyterian church, owned warehouses where my warehouses is. He owned more than half of them. He wanted my two warehouses. The unit next to me, a cop from Cocoa Beach, was in that unit. I'm not gonna live in that warehouse with with EZ in there. The month before that meeting, and you're bored laughing at me because I was homeless? He he kept track on his calendar how much he was up there. He was up there one hundred and sixty hours May, working on a car because he wanted to find another job besides being a cop. The pressure. Nobody knew a cop. But everybody on that board, the lawyer, and the code enforcement officer laughed and mocked and taunted me with a driver's license, electric bill, phone bill, homestead exemption. And I asked Ree when I paid her that three hundred dollars for my code fine, will this keep me from getting my code enforcement hearing? She said, no. Well, two months later, I asked, when we gonna get it? She says she forgot. Well, I showed her the pictures of all the renters that was in that warehouse that Kevin had in the warehouse the night he testified. And he got up and testified after I testified. I told him, I said, I don't live in the warehouse. Driver's license, electric bill, phone bill, homestead. I do not live there. I live on Tyler. He got up and testified after I did and said that I lived in the warehouse. It's in Israel when you don't let me defend myself. I'm sitting right there, and they wouldn't let me defend myself against him because he's a deacon. He's a Christian. I'm not a Christian, but I don't hold it against you guys for being Christians, but you guys hold it against me. I want a code reduction hearing, man. You laughed, mocked, and taunted. And this board, the first time I came to you, Mr. Randles, said, I know you don't live in their warehouse, John. You live on Tyler. And we're gonna take care of it. And I met with Todd Morley, and they would not give me a reason why I could not have a code reduction hearing. They wouldn't talk about it. He said they wouldn't talk about it. I said, why can't I? Why aren't we gonna talk about it? She didn't, she's, the Ree told me when she saw all the pictures of the homeless people. She said, that's when she said, you ain't getting the code reduction because we'll all get in trouble. I don't live in my warehouse. And to laugh at somebody you think is homeless? What good is that to laugh at somebody homeless and take their money and give them the maximum fine? And his son got arrested shortly after that because he was using the warehouse address as a sex offender, and he's not supposed to use it. That makes his mom and his dad, Kevin and Debbie Mann, pedophile groomers. Now, you think about that, and you explain to your citizens here, when they see me out here with a pope sign, you explain to them why I'm out there with that sign. I'm protesting for my code reduction hearing. You guys promised me that.
Mr. Benton.
Changed it because you don't want any, oh, they're all gone. That's why Randles lost his first election because he trespassing. The judge told me to bring the signs here, and he lost his first election.
Mr. Benton, we're gonna need to, we're gonna need to wrap it up.
Okay, we're wrapped up, and I'm back, so.
Thank you.
I'll see you Friday, Morley, over there.
Thank you, Mr. Benton. Okay. Mr. Joe Abreu? Hey, Joe.
Thank you. Just real quick, something I probably should have brought up at the last one. And that is in two thousand eighteen. At one of these meetings, I requested that I be notified in writing whenever anything was gonna take place down on Long Point Road. The only one time I got notified in writing was when they had a brainstorming meeting. I would like that to go into effect again, put in the minutes. That's what this letter is, is it was acknowledgement from the city that I had requested that, and they corrected the minutes. I would like that put in again, that I'd be notified in writing if anything ever happens down there again. Okay? Thank you very much.
Just to clarify, when we go to vote to approve these minutes next month, you're requesting that the public comment you just made right now be captured in those minutes?
Right.
Okay.
And that is that I will receive a letter if anything's ever gonna happen down.
Understood. City clerk, I think that would happen.
Awesome.
Thank you, Joe. Okay. And I did have a card on the mitigation for thirty-three thousand, which is the next item. This is the time to speak about that. I just will say, I think you all heard that we voted to withhold movement on the Estuary Park. But the names, I'll just go through them and call them. I think you oppose this. That's what I'm reading here. If we'll do the same exercise. Joe Abreu opposed, Jason Pace. Okay, Cindy Knight. Simone. Thank you. George. Thank you, Michelle. And you, Michelle, you're the next, suppose. Okay, Ms. Peggy Green. Ms. Kristy Hopkins, she was here. Thank you. It's Laura. Bill Hodge, I think I have, same, okay. Ms. Goenlock, you came up and spoke. I don't know if you're still here, Ms. Goenlock, but she opposed. Okay, excellent. Those are for the items of item item number two. And I've got, no, I have your card. I'm moving. Yep, I'm go, we're still there. Okay, so I have a card for you for item number thirteen, which is the VMR when we get to it. You wanna wait to do it then, when we get to it, or do you wanna do it now? Come on up. Yeah, it's public participation. Yep. Mr. Campbell?
Okay, thank you.
My name is Patrick Campbell, three oh seven Surf Drive in Cape Canaveral. I just wanna give some public recognition to a couple of hardworking city employees, Todd Morley and Michael German, the building official. They really helped me and my family out over the past couple of weeks with a contractor and building code issue, a serious issue that was somewhat complex, that the building contractor was just way off base with the approach they were taking. Todd and and Michael German stepped in and told him, no, that's not gonna fly. You need to do this. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you, Todd. City Mike. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Okay, moving right down the line. Mr. Hodge, I've got a card for you for item number thirteen. I got two cards for item number thirteen, which is the virtual, yeah, virtual meeting rooms. Y'all wanna wait till we get there? Okay, you got it. That's fine with me. And Mr. Campbell, I do have a card here for you. Sorry if you wanna lay back for item number fifteen, which is an information-only item. You would come up now. That would probably be your best opportunity since we don't take action on information-only items. Thank you.
So so we'll remind you, I just complimented city staff. So this is a little bit more difficult. I am opposed to the lot split, and I believe that's what this card is for, for the informational only. I just wanted on record that I have requested that council review everything that I've said about that lot split, take a really hard look at what's been presented. I did get an opportunity to talk to my friend Todd on Monday. We had a good time bonding with AutoCAD and playing with some measurements. I don't think I walked away with him totally convinced that it doesn't fit, but I'm convinced it doesn't fit, and I hope Todd will eventually come around to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. All right. Which just leaves the two for item thirteen. And with that, if there's any one that, I had a big stack of cards. If I did not call your name and you're waiting on it, there's one more that just, oh, that was Bill's. Okay. Anyone that turned in a card that I did not call their name? Okay, seeing that, public participation portion of the meeting, we're gonna go ahead and close. Now, we're gonna move on to old business. The first item of old business is to approve the purchase and sale agreement of the Reserve integration credits with the Webster-Creek Mitigation Bank for the Long Point Road Estuary Project in the amount of thirty-three thousand, and authorize the city manager to execute the same. Request to remove this from the agenda, I think is appropriate action. If you guys agree? You can remove it, okay? If you don't mind. Motion in a second, and we'll do that.
I'll make a motion to remove the item two from the agenda.
And a motion by Councilmember Willis, second by Councilmember Davis, to remove item number two, old business, from the agenda. Okay, any more discussion there? City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Motion passes five oh. Now, we move on to the consent agenda item, items three through eight. This time, if council wants to remove any of these items, please tell me which ones you would like to remove, and then we will pass the remaining balance. Is you listening? It's a budget workshop meeting minutes. Our law enforcement agreement, a fire protection agreement, a reappointment to Board of Adjustment Cultural Leisure Services, an amendment one to task order for Jones-Edmund Associates for a engineering services for a lift station number five, and authorizing the mayor to execute a consent to terminate a radio communication program, which is something we've needed to do. I don't have a problem with any of them. As long as nobody wants to remove them. Good? Yes.
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, got a motion by Councilmember Raymond, second by Councilmember Willis to approve the consent agenda. All right, city clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
All right, now we move on to the public hearing portions of the meeting, and we're flying now. All right, it is ordinance number seventeen twenty-two. City attorney.
Ordinance number seventeen dash twenty-two, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, amending the city's sign code related to feather signs, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code, severability, and an effective date.
Thank you very much. All right, so this is something that has come through the P and Z board. City manager, do you wanna add any explainer here?
Mayor, if you like, I can explain it for the audience. What we're looking at here, I know I've spoken to each of you individually about this. During COVID, there were several things that were relaxed by city council. One of them was related to feather signs. Feather flag signs are those usually you see very colorful, tall, thin. They might say open or whatever, maybe twelve feet tall. Some are red, white, and blue, or whatever colors. That was as a result of some requests by business owners who at the time were obviously struggling with COVID. City council waived the prohibition on these feather flags and also waived other things temporarily. When COVID started to subside, city council realized it was time to go back to business as usual and remove and got rid of that temporary suspension. Except for feather flags, council was very sensitive to the needs of business owners who were saying, hey, we really like feather flag signs. We think we should still be able to have them. And because of that sensitivity, city council approved what they knowingly knew was gonna be a temporary resolution, which authorized the continuance of feather flag signs until such a time as the Planning and Zoning Board had a chance to really chew on the issue and come up with a recommendation. Well, the Planning and Zoning Board has done that. The recommendation is in the packet here tonight. The Planning and Zoning Board was looked at three different options. Option one was to just continue the prohibition. They're just not allowed. Option two was, we can treat them like we treat banner signs. Banner signs are permitted on commercial properties for thirty days, one time a year, with a permit fee. And that's contiguous, thirty days continuous, not, you know, a couple of days here, a couple of days there. And the last one was to treat them like any temporary sign, which you could have it up all year round, as long as you complied with the temporary sign code regulations. So the board looked at those three options, and they said, we like that second one the best. We want to recommend to the city council that you can have feather flags for thirty days, consecutive days in a calendar year, if you get a permit. And you, not only that, you get one for every one hundred and fifty feet of linear frontage that you have. But also, if you're a tenant in a multi-street center, you get one per tenant. So that's all written into this. There are other things, Dave, that I hit all the highlights? Okay, mayor, mayor?
Thank you very much. Council? Three options. The board recommended two. Good place to start is do we like the board's recommendation? If not, what? If so, we can move, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I'm in full support of the P and Z board's recommendation.
I am too. Even though I hate feather flags, sorry.
Option two.
Which allows feather signs as the temporary on-premise signs. It creates section of code applicable to feather signs as a temporary use, creates a new definition of feather signs, and removes it from banner definition. It comes with a permit fee.
Yes, sir.
How much is that fee?
Dave, is it fifty, fifty dollar fee, Dave? Do you cover the microphone?
Evening again. Yeah, there was, we didn't specifically talk about a fee amount at the P and Z board. That will require a resolution by this council. As you know, any new fees require a action by the council via resolution. So I think what we're asking tonight is to see if we can get some policy direction, obviously, first reading. And then at second reading, we will come back with a resolution that will indicate a fee as well.
So if it's not established, it would make sense to try to mirror the fee for banners?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Which I believe is fifty dollar.
I like it. I mean, I just think, right after right after COVID, we say, gosh, anything we can do to help, and we relax this. And the point is, is it helped them. And today, I still think it helps them. And so for us to restrain it, look, I feel the same way. Some of these feather flags are dilapidated and falling apart. But, you know, with good communication with the businesses, persuasion, send your mayor in there. I'll go happy to talk to him and persuade him to try to upgrade. Heck, we got a signed grant reimbursement program that they they could know about. But I really lean towards more option one because I'd just rather you treat it the same. They've had open reign, and there hasn't been, I think, a proliferation of them. I think we've seen some dilapidated ones, which is a separate issue. But if we are gonna go with option two, thirty consecutive days on residential property, one time during any calendar year, I would wanna increase that. Because if they've got a promotional event, they're a new business, but I would say allowing them two to three, three times a year would be my, my request.
Yes, I'm going along with option two because I think it's out of respect of the P and Z board. I have heard comments about the advisory boards. I really worry about this. Some people on the advisory boards feel that Some people on the advisory boards feel that we are not supporting them, because when they give us recommendations, we knock it down. So, I do think it's important to respect the P and Z board, as well as Culture and Leisure and some of our other boards. Otherwise, we're going to have more absentees on those boards, and I really, really worry about this. I am in support of option two, what the P and Z board... They spend a lot of time discussing this, so I want to go along with them. So, I concur with Councilmember Willis. Thank you.
So, I'm agreeing to option two as the P and Z. And I'm saying a couple... Instead of one-thirty day consecutive days, allow for three in a year. Be three permits? It'd be fun... I mean, go through...
Understood.
Because it'd be way too hard to administratively track three times with one permit.
Yeah. It would require separate permits, I think. Because what the plan would be is when they come in for a permit, we would identify when that was issued.
Yeah.
And we would put a tickler in our calendar, the code enforcement folks. Okay, thirty days, we're going to go out and check it out. If it's not down, we'll visit with the property owner or the business owner. So, I mean, could we do it with one permit? Yes, we could. But it would just... It would be a little bit more cumbersome, but not doable.
Yep. That's it. So, ninety days out of three-hundred-and-sixty-five, they could have a feather flag. But that's not going to die on the hill here.
I have one question for Mr. Dickey. If they were to come in to get multiple permits, you know, a thirty-day period here, and like the mayor said, another thirty-day period, you'd be timing that period?
Yes.
So, you would have a calendar to know when their period?
Sure. We could do that. I mean, yes, we could do that. They come in and get... But the issue... We talked a little bit about this. And the issue was, as I recall, was that a business owner may not know exactly those specific thirty days during an entire calendar year, when they would want to use the banner. And they may have a... If it's a chain store, if it's part of a larger company, they may be pushing out promos throughout the year. Or if it's a smaller... Excuse me, it's not disrespectful, a mom-and-pop store. They may have specific needs for... Throughout the year, as far as different specials or grand openings or reopening. So, yeah, whatever the council would like to do. I guess my point is, is that staff can handle it however you would like to do it. If you want to make it easier on the business owner, they can come in at one time and get three permits. That's fine. If we want to do it through a permit for each thirty days, that's fine. We'll make it work.
One of the problems is that I know someplace that sneaks it in, sneaks the feather flags in over the weekend, just like on Sunday or something. And that is a problem.
We have that problem. That is one of the reasons why we have a code enforcement officer now who works after hours and a day a weekend, is to try to address some of that. There's a lot of stuff that goes on over the weekend in the city. As you all know, that may not be appropriate.
Quick question. Would it go for the year January to December? Or would it go, like, say, they came in in July, and then they only can have... They have to have all three in by this... Or it goes July to July? Or how would the year be defined?
It mentions it right there, ninety-four eighty-six, when it's any calendar year.
So, it would be January one to December thirty-one.
So, you could only... Under the way it's written, you'd only give one with the year twenty-twenty-two. And that's easy. You can only get one with that year. And so, if they did it in December, and they got their one-thirty day, January?
Yes.
They could run sixty days?
Correct.
In a row, because they roll into twenty-twenty-three.
We have businesses...
They can't get another one until twenty-twenty-four. That's the way it's written.
We have businesses that will do that. They'll back up their two... Put their two thirties together to have a sixty-day window. So, yes, that is done. And that's fine.
And what kind of signs do they use for that? No. No. They say, we have people who do that. So, which?
Banners.
Banners?
Yeah. Feathers are now... Currently, feather signs are considered banner signs.
Okay.
Yeah. But so, any banner, not just a feather, but any banner?
So, we already have?
Yes.
That regulation on the books. We're just making this equate to it.
Correct. That's exactly right. This is kind of status quo on how we handle them now. We're just creating a little bit more context and a little bit tighter regs on the feather signs.
So, P and Z board is basically just being consistent?
That's... Yes. Essentially, that is correct.
Okay.
If we were to drive around Cape Canaveral, there's three businesses, four?
Very few.
That's my best guess. And it's wide open right now. You can put feather flags out, right?
Yes.
There's no... And so, I think that was an excellent experiment to think that you don't want to legalize feather flags, because they're going to go everywhere. And my position is... No crime. It's aesthetic. I think you could argue a safety issue during hurricanes, you know, if they're projectile, absolutely. But that goes with a lot of signs and construction materials out or anything. I think we all got to tighten up during those times. And that's addressed in temporary signs and, you know, and intermittent weather and things like that.
They need to be removed soon here.
So, we have that. I think we let them fly. I really am compromising with the P and Z here, but that's just my position. And economic development, which is be a topic when we get to it, you know, that board would probably have a very different perspective than our P and Z. I think they're going to do what the businesses want. And it's just interesting that only three or four really want it, it seems like.
Yeah. It... That is the case. And you're right. It is interesting, the different perspectives of the different boards. I mean, with the bedboard, it certainly would be business-oriented, I would imagine. And then, with the P and Z board, they're more tasked with... One of the things they're tasked with is the aesthetics and the safety issues of the city. So, it's a... And I'm not going to say they're competing interests, but they're certainly, you know, have different perspectives.
Yeah. I think community appearance would say no on aesthetics. P and Z would say it's safe way to use your land and, you know, economic development. Look at the driver, so...
But wouldn't... Wouldn't... If economic development and P and Z and appearance boards conflict, they're going to have to meet some resolution. They're going to have to come together in some form.
Well, and if they... Guess where that form is going to be?
Right here.
Right here.
Well, but I mean, you know, if you extend for feather flags, then we're going to have to start looking at everything and make adjustments on those times as well, which means P and Z needs to go back and look at it again or look at other... Somebody is going to come forward and say, well, I don't have feather flags. Why am I only limited to thirty days a year? So, it's going to open up everybody.
Yeah. I mean, a lot of these issues, or some of these issues, were talked about at the P and Z. And, you know, what we do is we include the minutes of the P and Z. That doesn't as... Perhaps not as granular as what maybe the board is looking for this evening. But maybe there's an opportunity for us to have a little bit more transparency with the P and Z board discussions than we currently have, to include having the P and Z chairman come to these meetings.
We'll see.
You're always welcome. Yes. All right.
Has it been a burden on staff?
Has what?
Has feather flags now that we've... Has it been... Have you?
No.
Okay.
No.
See, that's my issue. It's like, hey, it's not burdening staff. I get the aesthetic argument. I do. My wife tells me these things. And I think we all have that. We all have our vision. But the truth is, is they're private property, and they should be able to use it how they want, as long as they're not hurting anybody else. And if they want to fly their feather flag, Cape Canaveral is business-friendly. I think it's good. And I do think we should encourage and let them know about the programs and the opportunities to improve their aesthetics. Rather, just approach it from that side and help them with the CRA, opposed to say, can't fly your flags. That's it.
Mr. Mayor, I'm all for business, but I think we need to be consistent in the rules. Now, if business owners want to come back and say, hey, restricting this hurts me in this fashion, then maybe we look at it and overrule P and Z at that point. But until we get public feedback on it, how do we know? How do... You know, I think we need to be consistent in our rules.
With the types of signs, you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you're saying treat a sandwich board, a banner, the same?
Until we get feedback from business owners and the community? Yeah.
And so, if you open up feather flags, you should work with the business and potentially open them all up?
Right.
Give them all the tools?
Right.
I agree with that. That would be good. It's obviously not what's before us tonight. So, you're saying, because they're not all the same, let's keep them the same?
I'm saying apply the rules the same. I recognize that all signs are not the same, but the rule is regulating the signs. I mean, we're suddenly considering taking feather flags out of that restraint in your scenario and giving them more leeway.
But you can't do that with a sandwich board?
Right now, no.
And you're saying?
If...
That's an issue?
To me, it is. I think...
Okay.
I think for consistency's sake.
No, it is silly. I mean, why one flag sign over the other? So...
I think...
Yes, Mayor Pro Tim? I'm following.
Oh, yes. Thank you. I think that the idea of thirty days, maybe more than once a year... There are only a few feather flags out there. And I think if they have to pay a fee for each thirty days, the feather flags will take care of themselves, because they're not going to want to spend the money. And I really don't see the harm in it. They look nice until they get withered and look horrible. And that's addressed in the sign... Maintenance. Maintenance of the flag. I know I've called code enforcement about some flags that were looking pretty bad. But again, it's, you know, businesses trying to survive. And I would go for... I like the thirty-day idea, but I would like to go more than once a year. And why couldn't we just follow the fiscal year? I mean...
I think we could set any timeframe we would want, Dave.
Sure.
If fiscal year feels better to the council.
I think it's harder. We want to easy on the businesses and staff. And think about it. If you just know you get one tally, just tally them. If you get two or three a year in twenty-twenty-three, you can see that business however. It's easier. But maybe you are on to something with fiscal year. I don't...
Well, I just think, you know...
I think calendar year was suggested for its simplicity.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
And I will say this, too, that, as I indicated earlier, some of our businesses do like to back up their thirties to thirties. So, if we were in generally, you just have to think about, when would that be most beneficial for our businesses? Over the holiday seasons or during September and October? I don't know. That's just something to think about.
Most small businesses are going to run on a calendar year anyway.
That's true.
Mayor, I know you're still having discussion. I just want to remind this is that we will have a public, open discussion on this.
Yeah. This is an ordinance change. This changes the... The ordinance is the code. And so, this will be the first reading, and then we'll bring it back again. Let's not forget that. We're going to bring this back. I'm ready to get it through.
Public hearing.
As written. And then, yep, we'll go public hearing, bring it back. But any more questions amongst ourselves? Okay. Thank you all. This is a public hearing item. For those of you who are with us here, item number nine, ordinance number seventeen twenty-two, public hearing item. Anyone like to speak on feather flags? Okay. Deputy city clerk, anyone from home? Thank you very much. With that, public hearing is closed. Back to the council.
I make a motion we adopt ordinance seventeen twenty-two on the first reading?
Second.
Who wants it?
Who was the second?
Or... Mayor Pro Tim. I got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, and a second by Councilmember Raymond to adopt ordinance number seventeen twenty-two as writ. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Okay. Ordinance number seventeen twenty-two passes five oh. Moving on to our second public hearing item. Ordinance number eighteen twenty-two. City attorney.
Ordinance number eighteen dash twenty-two, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, amending chapter one oh-two vegetation, article two, tree protection, providing for amendments to comply with state law preemptions under Florida statutes, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into this code, severability, and an effective date. This is first reading.
Thank you very much. First reading, ordinance number eighteen twenty-two. Council, any questions for staff on this? This is tree protection.
I make a motion we adopt...
Well, we got to go to...
Oh.
Okay. Any more? Okay. This is a public hearing item. Amending chapter one oh-two, ordinance number eighteen. We just heard it being read on tree protection. So, state law came down a few years ago and said, if you want to remove a tree, pretty much get a city arborist. And if it's a... I think the language was danger.
Yeah. Any arborist.
Wild to interpretation. And they came back this year in session and made some improvements to it. I think, depending on how you look at it for cities. And Todd, if you want to expand a little more?
Yes, sir. Thank you. As Mayor alluded to, about four years ago, the state legislature changed what cities can do with tree protection codes. They said, if you own residential property, all you need to do is get an arborist to write you a letter to write you a letter that says that tree is a danger. Once you possess that letter, the city can no longer apply its tree code to you. You can't force you to get a permit, can't force you to do any mitigation, replanting any trees. You're free to cut it down whenever you want. State legislature, uh, has evidently had some feedback on that. And now this last latest legislative slash session, they pulled that back down. They scaled it back down in the city's favor. What they did is they said that exemption only applies to single family residences, not condos, not apartments, not duplexes and tri, only single family. Further, they said that arborist certification has to say the tree poses an unacceptable risk, which is a, a term defined in the arborist handbook. Uh, so they tightened it back up. So what that means is if somebody does get that, they get us, they get a certified arborist, say this tree poses an unacceptable risk. In that case, the city codes do not apply. We cannot require a permit. We cannot require mitigation or tree planting. So you tightened it up and they basically get the city tree code, its teeth back. For a lot of cases, for instance, condo properties and apartment properties, we have our full authority now. We have our full teeth back. We can regulate specimen trees in those situations and whatnot. Yes, Dave?
The only thing I want to mention too, Todd, is that, is that previously it was, it was interpreted that residential property included undeveloped residential property. Now it has been clarified that it is only developed single family property is, as Mr. Morley indicated.
So that, that's one of the conforming amendments. Um, as, as indicated earlier, there is a second one. The legislature did. And this one's much simpler. If you are a utility, FPL or Bright House Spectrum, you can go in and re- remove, trim, do whatever you want without any regard to city tree code. You don't have to apply for a permit. You don't even notify us. Means a utility could even cut down a tree if they felt it was necessary to cut down a tree. Of course, this would be on public property where they have presumably easement rights anyways. So this ordinance takes both of those and conforms our code to match them. So we're conforming to, to state law, new state law in our tree code by this ordinance, Mayor.
Thank you. I do have one question. Is there anything that goes beyond what state law requires?
In our code?
Did we, yeah, did we expand this? Just complied, okay.
That's all this does.
All right. Public hearing item. Anyone from the public like to speak on this? Okay. Deputy City Clerk, anybody? Thank you. Closing public hearing. Back to this council. You can discuss it if you're good. Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass resolution.
Ordinance.
Oh, ordinance, excuse me, eighteen dash twenty to twenty-two.
Second.
All right. Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, second by Mayor Pro Tim Kellam to adopt ordinance number eighteen, twenty twenty-two on first reading as written. City Clerk.
Councilmember Davis.
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellam.
Four.
Mayor Morrison.
Four.
Councilmember Raymond.
Four.
Councilmember Willis.
Four.
Thank you very much. Motion passes on first reading five oh. Now we're moving on to item number eleven. This is the items for action portion of the agenda. Item number eleven is to request for removal of one live oak specimen tree at one eleven Lincoln Avenue. Seems very relevant. Thank you very much. Please introduce yourself and.
Good evening. My name is Bob Levine. I live at one eleven Lincoln Avenue. I would like to take this tree down and we have some, we feel prob, uh, good cause for it as well. Uh, my wife has autoimmune disease and multiple chemical sensitivity. She's highly allergic to oak pollen and chemicals from perfume clothes detergent, traffic softeners and from laundry products as well. There may be some of you who experience the same problem. She's highly allergic to oak pollen. Our tree shades over my yard. My dog even comes in coughing during the high seasons. Unfortunately, Florida, uh, this happens several times a year. Our tree is infested with carpenter ants, uh, as I show you today, and, uh, they run all over the house at times and this is a real problem. So I'd like to.
Can you get it?
Quite a nuisance when they, they get in. We can't fight them because of my wife's allergies to pesticides and autoimmune problems. So they're, they're all terminated, trust me. It's, it's, it's quite a challenge to have to combat those as well when they make the rounds through your house at night while you're sitting there watching TV and they're coming down the walls or they're crawling all over you. They're in the bed. They're everywhere. So they're coming out of that tree is a problem and the house has got infested from them as well. This tree is only four and a half feet from the corner of our concrete slab and I worry all the time about a crack in the slab to show up next. This tree should have been removed when they built our property. That was the problem. This was done, uh, about eleven years ago. Uh, should we experience a strong, uh, storm of enormous magnitude? This may damage my house severely, forcing us out of our home. I want to add solar panels next year as I'm getting ready to retire from my job that I've had for forty-five years. And, uh, I've allocated funds to finish some interior improvements that we're trying to do as well. And the company that came out and did the solar panel estimate told me that they couldn't do it because the tree is there and the tree is in the way blocking the solar panels. So in other words, I can't go green like I'd like to, to try to reduce our overhead costs and to, you know, be very energy efficient. This is a tremendous problem. We plan to add a jacuzzi in the backyard. It's one of our retirement plans, but the tree makes it impossible. I've spent, uh, a lot of landscaping on our property. When we first bought this property, there was not one twig on this property except for the oak tree. I have planted, as you'll see in the pictures, I planted everything here and spent enormous amounts of money and a lot of labor and love. And I have, I think one of the nicest properties on our street as well. Everything else there is flourishing that we planted, all the trees and shrubs we planted. I fenced the property, papered the driveways, papered the, uh, back patio as well. And, uh, I don't know if another tree to replace off to the side would be acceptable, but I'm asking for permission to take this tree down.
Thank you, Mr. Levine. Would you mind if could we move that a little bit closer selfishly? I just, I want to be able to see those. No, no, it's great. I just want the council to be able to see what you're demonstrating. Yes.
Have you tried extermination? I mean, can these, um, oh, I, I'm so sorry about your wife. I'm very sorry about that.
Mr. Levine. We can't record your voice if you're not at the podium. You can leave the pictures, but your voice needs to be on the microphone.
Do you mind?
Oh.
Leaving, okay.
Are, are there? Are there any organic methods?
I'm sorry?
Are there any organic methods to get rid of these carpenter ants from in your home?
Well, removal of the tree is one. There's nothing else that, that you can do that. They've, they've infested the house and, you know, we have a two floor townhouse and it's, uh, it's, it's quite a challenge. So it's, uh, that's why I brought those in one day when they were, when they were alive or brought them in to share with people.
Thank you for sharing. Thank you for sharing. I'm so sorry about your wife.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it is a problem. We've been married forty-one years and she's all I've got and I've, you know, I travel like, I, I go to Asia once a week, so I'm gone often. And, uh, it, this is the, unfortunately, I think what we need to do to, uh, to satisfy and including putting a jacuzzi in the back. We weren't, not, not a pool, but a jacuzzi because it, it even goes into the jacuzzi next door. My neighbor has one on his side. It kind of litters his up pretty well. But it's a, it's a dirty tree and it drops branches and, and things all the time. It's, uh, I've replaced my St. Augustine uh, three times in the backyard because of the sprouts that come up from the oak tree in the yard. So I, I fear that it's already under the house and I'm just, uh, fearing that, you know, we get a crack in the concrete and that kind of repair is costly.
Thank you, counsel. Does anyone else need to see these photographs? If so, I'm going to ask them to either, we move them? Thank you, Dave. Move them down closer to you maybe or whatever. I'm good. I, I, I can see. Oh, you're not going to leave those with us? Thank you. So thank you. If you want, maybe stay close, but have a seat. We'll go through this, kind of let the council work through it. Thank you for your, your time and presentation of this application. City manager, anything beyond what we've discussed that you feel that we need to know?
Um, I just want to clarify that the, um, the, uh, property owner did contact the city arborist and the city arborist did, um, give a courtesy, um, inspection and his report is here on the tree hazard evaluation. Tree inspected was, is a specimen live oak in good health with no hazards. It is five feet off the house. No damages being caused by the tree. Um, so anytime we remove a, a specimen tree from the count, from the city, it has to be done with the approval of the city council. And there are always very difficult decisions I know to make and, and there are a lot of passions in this city and the residents feel very strongly about the trees. And I definitely know that perhaps more than most people. But, um, the, there's a reason that city code gives this to the city council because we do take our tree protection very seriously. Uh, that's why our, our arborist, um, goes out and he wants to make sure if it's a diseased tree, if there's a structural problem with the tree, that can take it out of the council purview. But in this case, it's a healthy tree, so it's squarely on city council to make this very difficult decision, Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions on this? Yes, Mayor Per Tim.
There you go.
Mr. Levine.
Oh, hey. Uh, just a couple of questions. When you bought the house, the oak tree was there? And your, your wife had allergies?
Answering in there. We got folks who are listening from home and it's very helpful for them. And thank you.
Yes.
And did she have the oak allergies when you moved in or is it something that developed?
She's had them, but they've gotten worse as she's gotten older as well. She has some other health issues that, uh, causes problem. I don't want to get into too much detail, personal detail, but.
No problem. Um, the other question was as far as an exterminator, um, have you had anybody come out and look at the tree that maybe could get rid of those uh, ants or whatever they are?
Well, the, the answer they had was the tree is the problem because there's a lot of areas on the tree that had been eaten that they've gone into and bored into. So they, they really infest the tree, unfortunately.
And is that, um, as far as our arborist, does he ever look at, um?
Tim was out there.
Yeah. Did he look at the insects and see the insects?
He's determined this is a healthy tree.
Right.
And healthy trees can't host insects.
Okay. Oh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Per Tim. Counsel, anyone else?
Mr. Levine, uh, when did you purchase the home?
Uh, two thousand thirteen.
All right. And I understand your wife doesn't have an allergy to ants, so that's not the problem.
Your wife? No, no, but they're, they're a real nuisance though.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what vacuum cleaner works. Yeah, but she does have, uh, her chemical sensitivity is a major thing. She had silicone implants problems from reconstructive surgery years ago and the fallback from that, from the silicone implant caused this. And she's been living with this for the last twenty-five years, so it's quite a challenge.
There, you know, you, we solved the ant problem. I just can't get past your, your wife's health. Pre-health important. I don't know anyone who, like I've said this before, who dislikes trees. I think we all try to, I don't think you need a law to protect the city trees. Maybe if big, some of these big developments, just scalping lots, that, that's a different problem. But when we're talking about within the property, you got your home there. It's not a vacant lot like we were saying. You got this tree in the corner. You bought it. You liked it. Well, you're allowed to not like it anymore. And I think, um, are you going to try to plant another tree, I think you said?
Well, I think I would plant another. I think that's possibly a requirement to replace. If they take this, is to replace another, uh, similar type of a tree. I would just put it in a strategic area that wouldn't be so close to the house that wouldn't pose a threat.
And not the pollen issues that you're dealing with?
Right, so we'd be selective and it's either something agreed upon. Some, some type of tree that would, uh, be acceptable. Sure.
I know that from what I understand, the health issue is just kind of where it all comes to a halt there. If, if, if there's a problem, the burden of proof on the health issue is not, I think in my purview, I don't, I, I take your word on it and I think it's enough. It's not a criteria, but it's reasonable. What's the terminology in the new language? Reasonable? You had said it earlier. It, this doesn't even apply, so I won't even go down there because we're literally passing a tree ordinance as you're doing it. So it'll all change after this, but that's my, my concern is that that no one needs to suffer and I think that we can make good on trees.
Oh, well, Mr. Mayor, um, I'd like to commend staff for their work on this and following the intent and letter of our regulations. And it is for us to decide, uh, for staff. They presented us with what the rules are, what the regulations are. But I'm big on property rights. And I, uh, I think if it is posing a health hazard to your family, it's your home, then I would be in favor of allowing the tree to be removed.
I know we just discussed this about the protection of that, but, and I know we just, just did it, but prior to that, does this tree need to be deemed any, uh, I mean, it's deemed safe now. Does it help? Does it need to be changed? Uh, you know, if it were a different category, that it was a risk or whatever. I know that's a give me, but are we in conflict of anything that's technically in writing as of now before this?
Mayor.
Does that make sense?
Are you asking if we approve this with that application that says it's healthy?
Yeah, I mean, is there anything, um, because it is a healthy tree. So our, I'm just wondering what our options there are. If it needs to be, you know, obviously would have helped if it had been deemed a risk or whatever. But it's not. So with what we had prior, is there anything that needs to change that would make this easier?
If I'm mayor, if I may, I, I think what I understand the question is, is are we limited to the five criteria that's in the code? And, um, Daniel, if you could go to the agenda cover sheet, it shows the five criteria. Um, one is about site design. It was talking about in your house isn't built. Uh, two is if it's would be located in the footprint of a proposed structure, your house isn't built. Three is, does it prevent any access to the property from, uh, access for, that's a house that's not yet built. Four, location of specimen tree interferes with preventive construction. Again, house not built. Um, and then number five is whether the specimen tree is diseased, weakened by age, storm, fire or other injury so as to pose a danger. Those are the only five criteria the code gives the council to make a decision on that as the code exists today. If the council wishes to change that code to put in a sixth criteria about affecting the health of, of residents, I, I suspect that it's absolutely true in this case, but we could see future ones that maybe it's just something that's said to get a tree removed.
Yeah, and I think it's important that the neighbor's health. I mean, that gets really dicey. It's your, your neighbor's oak tree is causing you problems. I, I don't think on that, but we don't want to get too far down the road.
I'm taking number five, whether the specimen tree is diseased, weakened by age, storm, fire or other injury. Well, it's not an injury to the tree, but it's an injury to a person. It says here, so as to pose a danger to persons' property, site improvements or other trees. I think that's open to interpretation. Attorney, what do you think about that?
Um, well, I was actually just going to suggest, um, in addition to, you know, the criteria you have here. Um, the ADA does allow the city to, um, vary the code to accommodate disabilities. Um, that would be something that affects one or more major life activities such as breathing. Um, so that could be a potential, uh, that, uh, reason for, um, granting the application. Um, if, if that's what the council's inclined to do.
That's very helpful. Thank you. I do agree. And actually, it doesn't even, and I was looking at the same thing. It says whether this specimen tree is diseased, weakened by age, storm, fire or other injury. And I know it's like, it's hard to, but the point is, is if it poses a danger to persons' property or site improvements while those areas, um.
Can I ask?
Yeah.
Are there other oak trees on your property or is this?
No, ma'am. This is it. This is the one.
I think you're the most sad to remove it. I mean, uh, you know, it's, that's my point is you wouldn't remove it if you didn't have to.
Correct.
I think you're in a position that.
Mr. Chairman?
I do know about solar panels and I could tell you whoever the net impact of that solar is equivalent to planting thousands of trees over the twenty-five years at hundreds. I'm not going to quote, but you can Google that and, and there's a carbon impact, um, on that. And so we've been in that situation up north on projects where it's like, wait a minute, we're removing trees to put solar panels here. And, you know, the people smarter than me measure and for what it's worth, it does give some sort of green justification to it.
Yes, I, I just wanted to make a, an observation to the board. If, if the board decides to grant the application, I will say this, it's not included in our recommendation because we were recommending denial, but should the board decide to go ahead and grant grant the application, um, the property owner has the ability to either A mitigate through planting additional trees on the property or there is the ability for the property owner to pay into, I'll call it a mitigation bank. So should the property owner not want, because of health situations with, with Mr. Levine's wife, should he not decide to go ahead and put another tree on the property? Due to that, there is the ability to go ahead and pay into a, um, I'll call it a tree mitigation fund.
Call it the tree bank.
Yeah, the tree bank.
Okay.
Just as an FYI. But we will need, again, if the council decides to grant the application, we will need the council to kind of, uh, opine on that item too.
To make a decision, the code would call for what amount of money for this?
I believe it's fifty dollars per diameter B D B H. And this is, I think, was it twenty-six inches?
So the total amount?
That would be thirteen hundred.
Mayor, I have a question.
Should.
If you were to take down the, if, oh, if you were to take.
If you were to take down, if, oh, if you were to take down the tree, what kind of tree would you put up?
Having considered what?
In another part of your yard?
Something that, uh, would not what would be offensive to my wife, something that would, you know, not a big flowering type of something that the foliage. I mean, we've got a whole bunch that we planted up the side, up the palm trees, every, every shrub on that property I planted. Up down the front, the neighbor's side, I planted down the median there, I planted on our side along the fence, I planted everything all the way around the back.
You've planted more than you've taken away.
Yes.
Okay, counsel?
I have a question for the city attorney.
Please.
On the, on the health issue, uh, I think it was ADA, does it require any proof?
Um, I think it's, I don't think that that is, um, particularly spelled out. I, there are some limitations on how much information we can ask. Um, so I, I think that's sort of up to you, if you wanted to ask, um, maybe some limited questions, but I wouldn't get into too much detail.
I didn't know if the diagnosis of an allergy was sufficient?
I think it, it probably would be, um, you potentially could continue the matter and ask for, I believe you can ask for, um, some documentation from, you know, a medical provider, uh, if that's what you would like to do.
I believe that the gentleman told us that his wife was immunocompromised along with the allergies.
No, no offense to Mr. Levine, but anybody could walk up and tell us that.
Yes.
And no, no offense.
I just don't think that there's a big market out there that people wanna just take down trees every day.
No, but
I, I, I think it's one of those realities that people love trees, but there are times when you gotta go a different route. I, but I am interested, if you're gonna do it, do it, you know, right, true.
We, we need to protect this council and our, and our rules. Mayor?
This has never come up in the five years that we've been
The removal of a tree based on health?
Yes. Never.
I don't recall.
No.
Mayor, mayor, given that, um, the council seems to be sensitive to, um, the ADA concern, or, and possibly continuing this, perhaps Mr. Levine would be willing to ask for a continuance so that he could provide additional documentation at a future meeting.
Don't really wanna ask for that. I don't feel comfortable, but thank you. Yeah, I think I, his word is enough, and I do, I understand. Yes, Mayor Protem.
Hannah, yes, thank you. I, I just, um, nothing against you, Mr. Levine, but I agree with Councilman Willis, is this gonna open up a thing for everybody to come along and say, I have an allergy, we gotta cut this tree down? And as far as, you know, our city has been trying to protect the trees, when I first got on council, I asked to review the tree ordinance, that we can do more to protect the trees. And I've seen it in our city where on Madison Avenue, there was a, a specimen tree asked to be removed. And, um, the, the man that owned the property said, I'm just gonna remove this tree, and no, uh, none other. He took every single tree, and I have pictures that I don't have on me, but he took every single tree off that lot. Um, other, other, uh, oak trees, palm trees, every single tree. So it does happen, um, and I, I believe in, um, I think we need to protect our trees, I believe in property rights. But I just think if we, I mean, it doesn't have to be an in-depth thing, but we have to follow our own laws. And, um, if he could bring us something that says, you know, uh, we don't wanna go into your personal stuff that, that your wife is allergic, and that you would, um, put thirteen hundred dollars into the tree bank, and that, then I would be in support of that. So, uh, we can pa- plant other trees. Um, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
I actually, I do agree with Mayor Protem. Um, it's not against you, but I do think we need to set a precedent down the road, so that no, not everybody could come up, and we do need to have something established, and, uh, guidelines to go by, so I would agree, um, to have something to show that there was, there was a medical issue. Just so that we have a protective future that everybody else can't come on.
And then also
Believe you, I'm just looking down the road.
And also there, you know, on this number five, and this is something we, if we continued it, we could look more into it. It says site improvements on here, so he does wanna improve his site. So, um, you know, I think we should continue it if it's okay with Mr. Levine.
Site, site improvement?
Mm-hmm.
You see how
I mean, if you're, if you're going
His landscape, I mean, I, I've got so much flooring, fauna on the property. I've, I've planted a tremendous amount on this property in the last eight years.
Yeah, Bob, I, I think what, I believe what Mayor Protem is talking about is the tree perhaps creates an obstacle for you to do these improvements that you're proposing, solar panels, um,
Correct.
Uh, the, the hot tub, those type of site improvements, so I believe that's what.
Yes.
Um, to be clear, that number five criteria, it's whether the specimen tree is diseased, weakened by age, storm, fire, or other injuries, so as to pose a danger to those site improvements.
Oh, I got you, yeah, okay. Got you. Okay.
Well, the house certainly is a site improvement.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so we need to, I I would like to get this, my position is we plant more trees in the city without any force than taken away, there's a net gain in trees every year, the whole city gets upset, I get it, over one tree, we all got upset about a recent tree. It happens, accidents, problems, but he's going about it right, he's, he could've went out there and sawed that tree down and goes, oh, I didn't know, oops, and, or genuinely didn't know, he's trying to follow the process. He's brought, to me, very reasonable justification, and I don't think this sends us in the right, wrong direction. Our city is gonna have to take it on a case-by-case basis, and if, you know, we if we can look at the overall picture, we are we are winning more than we're losing, and I think that, that's, that's realistic, and this idea that people are gonna just start taking out trees, the last few years when state law changed, that was the wild, wild west of trees. I mean, they didn't have to go, they could went outside and said, no, it was a danger to me, I felt threatened, or you let a named hurricane show up out on the coast, trees and that didn't happen. I agree, we did see some trees go down.
Look at how many trees we took out at the multi-generation center. Um, and on Madison, that one, one person that lives on Madison bought the lot next to him to save the tree.
But look how many they planted at the multi-generation.
Yeah, but they're not a hundred-year-old tree, though I know, you know. That's
Who owns that tree?
He does.
Let's treat him that way.
For the city attorney, I think you just meant recently, or just now said site improvements, so you're saying that it infringes upon site improvements?
No, I was trying to clarify that the criteria is that the specimen tree is diseased or weakened by age, storm, or fire, or other injury, and that causes a danger to a site improvement, or to persons' or property. So that's the criteria, that it, the tree has to be determined to be diseased or weakened for some reason.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so I've heard two council members say to me they like the idea of, I heard continuation, was that an extent to do, take no action tonight? And then to bring back more evidence, is that?
I, I just think, I really think that we're just opening it up to Wild West. I got a tree on my property, it's perfectly healthy, but it aggravates me, because the leaves are on the ground. Okay, I can hit, knock it down. I, I mean, I'm exaggerating, but I'm just saying, we have protection for trees for a reason. And I understand it's private property, but I just think if we're gonna go this way for health reasons, which is a legitimate reason, that we need some kind of proof, and not personal thing, but a thing from the doctor that says she is highly allergic to oak tree, done.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, personal health is, just the idea that a governing body is gonna make somebody show their personal health, I think is just a bridge too far that I'm comfortable with. I think his, his tree being removed, there's always a just reason, and if anyone goes and just start, they still, we do have protection. They have to come through us. He, they had to go pay, you know, there's some red tape to get through, to get here, and he's probably doing the math of the, you know.
This has been gone on for about, about four months, and with my schedule, I go away to Korea three times a month, for a week at a time, traveling, and I had to schedule my time going around the meeting was, so I've lost, I've lost money right there enough.
Yeah.
Uh, as well, but, uh, uh, it, it's been a challenge, and we finally were determined to, you know, we got this date, and we stuck with it, only to find out yesterday was moved to today. But that still fit my calendar.
I think we need to move, move on it, make a decision, either yes or no.
Yeah, the continuation, I think is
It just brings it up, he can't do it in his schedule.
Can oppose it because you wanted proof, but I think to extend it out, I mean, really, are we gonna scrutinize a letter? I mean, I
How about, how about this? If we went ahead and, uh, said, okay, we will grant this request, and that, that Mr. Levine brings in the documentation that his wife is immunocompromised and has allergies, how about that? I mean
I just take, I take his word for it.
I do too.
And I don't think anyone can cut down, if they, if there's other health issues in this city, and they're, they wanna bring it before this council, I think they deserve that right.
All right, so, and then, um, do you want a motion?
Wanna hear them all? Yeah, I think
Ready?
Just trying to talk through.
All right.
Get to some decision.
Fine.
I'm prepared to approve it.
Okay.
Or
All right, and then I'll make a motion that we grant Mr. Levine's request to remove a live oak specimen tree at one eleven Lincoln Avenue.
Oh, second?
Got a motion by Councilmember Raymond, second by Councilmember Willis, to grant the removal of the tree.
Subject to mitigation requirements being met. In the, in this case, it could be thirteen hundred dollars to the tree code, or the planning of four trees, I believe.
And he has to do that?
Yes. It's a code, code requirement.
We need to decide on whether or not we wanna do the dollars
His, his option.
Or the digs.
His, his option.
Do you just make a motion?
I love it. Do you wanna, uh, plant trees on your property, or do you want to fund the tree bank? I guess, uh,
Well, I And previously, we've left that open, we haven't had to make that decision tonight, so that would allow Mr. Levine an opportunity to perhaps research what trees may be appropriate to plant on his property, so, uh,
All you would have to do is amend the motion, say, subject to the city code mitigation requirements.
Yeah.
Subject to the city code mitigation options.
Well, I think, we don't need this, if that's required, why do we need to put it in our motion that's required? I think it's more important that he knows that he needs to do that, right?
Yeah, it's an operation of code, you're right.
But y'all need help on, well, if he decides, okay. I think, I love that, I think give him some time to think on it. That would be the next step. Does that make sense to you?
Is there, is there a set monetary amount then?
Yes, it's fifty dollars per inch, it's twenty-six inches, times fifty dollars, is thirteen hundred dollars.
I thought that council had the option to add that on if they chose. I didn't think it was required, but, um...
I don't have the code up in front of me, um, but whatever the operation of, of code is, is still required.
Well, i- if it's not required, it's not required. I mean, there's nothing to discuss, but if it is, it is, and so we can bring it back and decide, right? Doesn't slow you down, in the event this passes, we got a motion by Councilmember Raymond, second by Councilmember Willis. Any more discussions on this, counsel?
Mayor, are we citing one of the five criteria, or, or not?
And did the motion include?
Um, I didn't, the motion did not cite any criteria, no. Uh, I don't, does it need to? I don't. Does it need to?
That's the way the code reads.
The, the motion?
Pull it up.
I don't think the motion needs to say it, but to be verified, I think our city
I'm just asking if you, if you want to make it clear that it's not one of the criteria. The record will show that it's not.
How much of the canopy of the tree overhangs your home, where you're wanting to put?
A fairly good portion on the south side.
Where you're wanting to put the, uh?
They have to be on that side. Yeah, panels have to be on that side. Yeah, the face is south.
Yeah, right here, whether this specimen tree is located within the footprint of the proposed structure, or if one or more third of the specimen can be required to be removed in order to accommodate the proposed structure, and whether or not it's feasible to relocate. If he wants to put solar panels on the south side of his house, that's that insulation, I think, yeah, it's like, you have a vertical easement, basically, which you can't control what your neighbors do. Your neighbors could come in with it on the south side of you and plant some big pines, and there actually are some
They're on the west of me.
Okay, so, but, but I think that that's, if you're looking for justification, number two, to me, is he's trying to do a good thing, and wants, but he can't. And electric bills just went up again, so. Yep, would that be helpful if we, if we, I think a part of our discussion, number two, we have agreement? And then our motion can just stay the same, but if you want it on the record?
Not necessary. The city attorney has the code up here, if you wanna read the applicable section.
Um, regarding the mitigation, um, as a condition of removal of any specimen tree, the city council shall have the right to require that replacement trees be planted, or a contribution to the tree bank be made in accordance with section one oh two dash forty-three.
It's the right, it's not an optional, it, it is optional.
It is optional.
That's what I thought. I think that's the, the, we, we do need to make a decision on whether or not we want to apply that. I say we, 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 we can hold. I mean, it, it, what's the timeframe on that?
There's no timeframe given.
I don't like that.
This gentleman already has a garden back there.
So like, he, when is the money, let's just say he chose a financial tree bank, there's no must be paid within thirty days, or?
No.
No, there's nothing in there on that.
That could be included in your motion, if that's what you decide.
Okay, thank you very much. So, counsel, what do we wanna do? We, we, we have the ability, we can come back to it at the next meeting?
No.
No, it has to be important in this motion, right?
Number two?
We can vote to, um, to, to not require any tree bank. It, for example, if this motion, the way I understand it, this motion would have passed, which we do, we have a motion, it was to remove it, seconded, we voted, and we never said anything about a tree bank or anything, we're not. And we just put on the record the discussion, that number two is what we believe is the strongest reason. We're not in, uh, in any issue at that point. We just, we didn't take advantage, I think, of an opportunity that we have at our disposal, and so let's, we have our motion to approve it, do we wanna add on any type of mitigation?
Well, the mitigation doesn't have to be on his property, does it?
No.
That's, that's why we have a tree bank.
He can plant trees on his property, or he can fund He can plant trees on his property or he can fund, pay into our tree bank financial. And we would deploy those funds with our arborists at strategic places in the city, right?
We've done that a lot. When we did Ridgewood Avenue, we did North Atlantic and all the plannings, that's where it came from.
Manly Park.
Yep.
Manly Park.
We need money in our tree bank.
Thank you. Needs money in his pocket. We got thirty-six million dollars and we're gonna, yeah, I, I, I don't like it. I don't, I think that if what, what happens if he pays the tree bank and he goes and plants two trees later? Is he gonna get his money back? I don't, I don't like that. That's just me. So, council?
I think we also, excuse me, need to think about down the future too. You know, and setting a precedent about the tree bank and, and I mean, we are taking away a perfectly healthy tree. So, um, I think that's something I would, I would be in favor of adding that to the motion.
Okay, good. So we got, it sounds like Mayor Protim Kellum, you like the idea of the tree bank?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Davis, you like the idea? I said I don't. Uh, Councilmember Raymond, I think. No.
I, I would like to ask Mr. Levine to just plant three trees on his property.
That's fine too, cuz it was one or.
I'm not allowed to pick it though, my wife has.
That's fine.
That's why we're saying that I think that you should plant the trees that would be appropriate so that your wife doesn't get sick or sicker. But I mean, he can plant four trees.
Yes.
And I'm fine with that cuz it was one or the other, so, I mean, is that your discretion as long as it's required to plant the trees?
That, that way we're applying it however we have applied it in the past to other people.
Or again.
Be consistent.
Mm-hmm. Again, allow him to make the choice what he wants to do, but at least.
I like it. I think that's clever. No, I like that. All right.
Um, I have just one more question to be, attorney. This number two, uh, the specimen tree is located within the footprint, that would, is that gonna apply to a building that's already there?
Of the proposed structure.
So however we naming that is the one that's going to.
Technically, the solar panels are going to be affixed to the structure. Todd, you think I, you know where I'm going with this?
No, no idea.
Technically, a, uh, if, if a, if there is a improvement that is attached to a structure structurally, it becomes part of the structure. Things such as a carport or a, um, uh, a breezeway. They become part of the principal structure. They're attached to it and there's, and there's, so.
When, when he goes to submit his permits to your department, there's a structural engineered plans for those solar panels that racking fast and right on top of his roof.
Ready to call the vote?
Okay, let's do it. We got a motion and a second?
Can we repeat the motion so we're clear on mitigation?
Uh, yep, so, well, the motion was made by Councilmember Raymond and seconded by Councilmember Willis to approve his application and allow him to remove it. And then we talked about him planting new trees. I don't know if you need to.
amend the motion.
And then that, and added in, but if you want to.
Yeah. The amendment would have to be the number two, that he would have to plant four trees on his property.
Okay, so you moved, I got a motion to amend the main motion to plant four trees voluntarily, looking for a second. Second, second by, uh, Councilmember Willis. Motion was made by Councilmember Raymond to amend the main motion by planting
Four trees.
Four trees on his property.
Four trees?
Four trees. They could be pygmy palms.
Yes, ma'am. Talk about that.
Yeah.
What's the different types of trees? They don't all have, they don't have to be four new oaks.
So we're gonna vote on amending the motion, I think procedurally. Is that okay?
Yes.
And then we'll come back to the main.
Correct.
Sounds good. All right, city clerk? We're just making, we're adding that little four tree part in and then we'll go back and vote through the main motion. Make sense? City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Mayor Protim Kellum?
Against.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four. The motion to amend the main motion passes for one. Now, back to the main motion to adopt and approve the removal of the tree.
Mayor, if I could just clarify, the code does talk about how you mitigate a tree and it requires when canopy trees are taken down, that canopy trees be placed, replaced. So the statement that you could put a cabbage palm in or a canopy tree is not true if you, if you follow the code. So I would just say four trees mitigate with four trees per code requirement.
I would not be putting in cabbage.
I don't.
Right.
I think you can come back to this council in thirty days and you can give us an update and we have the ability to go back and work with you.
He has to talk, he has to do his research about the allergies.
It may not even be feasible, but we can work, as of today, I think that this is the best we can do, and then we can move on.
Plant four trees per code. Mitigate four trees per code.
Yep. We need to, we need to work on that language. This is a little clunky.
They don't, they don't have to be on his property.
Right.
They could be anywhere.
Somebody's gotta consent to let him put them on their property, but sure.
You can't trespass.
Yeah. So, okay.
The, uh, the code is clear on this. There's specific language in what type of trees and everything, so we'll, we'll, we'll work with Mr. Levine.
And you'll let us know if there's issue.
Yes.
So, mayor, just to clarify the, the main motion, if I understand, if everybody agrees, it's to approve the removal of the tree.
Yep.
Subject to mitigation requirements, four trees planted are the mitigation requirements of the code.
Yes.
Thank you.
Does it sound right?
Yes, it's right.
Okay. Got a motion by Councilmember Raymond and a second by Councilmember Willis, city clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Mayor Protim Kellum?
Against.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four. Motion passes four to one. Thank you very much.
Four. Thank you all for your time and consideration. I certainly appreciate it. We, my wife and I both. Thank all of you, your patience tonight. I'm sorry to tie everybody up with this.
Wish you health and happiness. Thank you.
Safe travels.
Thank you.
Almost ten o'clock. Almost ten o'clock, man.
Okay, so we are sixty seconds. What's the rule here? We need an extend? Thank you, Mr. Levine. To us, but yeah, what do you think? Um, yep, I think we've got, I'm trying to, okay. We're gonna carry on. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay. So we are now item number twelve, items for discussion. Uh, let's try to first of all establish how much time we're gonna need. We're at ten o'clock. So, right, we need to extend if we are. And it's better to go further.
We extend thirty minutes and hopefully we'll be done in ten.
Amen.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mayor Protim Kellum and second by Councilmember Raymond to extend to ten thirty. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Mayor Protim Kellum? Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four. Okay. Awesome. Item number twelve, I do have a couple, uh, I thought I had a card on this one. Maybe I'm mistaken. If there was a card, I don't see it. Uh, thirteen, item number twelve is uh, to discuss and provide direction to Florida Department of Transportation regarding design considerations for State Road A1A Cape Canaveral submitted by Mayor Morrison. And we have with that, after this item, we have two more items. I think we need to try and keep these under about seven minutes apiece, give ourselves a little room. Um, Todd, do you want to, I'm happy to lead this and give an update, talk through?
I'd be happy to. It doesn't matter to me.
Yeah.
Okay, um, just for, for the audience here, um, A1A roundabout was nicked by the city council. Uh, it will not be happening. We'll be going to the, what was originally requested as a realigned international drive and a traditional intersection with a signalized intersection. Mayor, there's a handoff. Do you want me to continue or do you want the hand to speak?
Keep it going.
All right, um, that, that, um, project is gone. So in, in, in trying to keep the forward momentum and the funding that FDOT has, they came to the mayor and myself and we had a meeting and they said, look, we know this is gonna be just a traditional intersection. But what's critical is the width between the curb and gutter on the west side and curb and gutter on the east side. And there's actually a difference based on the two options that are now available to us. There's a difference in that width. So they're saying you need to pick one of these two options. So we know what that width is gonna be cuz that will inform the width for the next project that they're doing all the way up to George King Boulevard. Those two options, um, there's a graphic, Daniel, I don't know if you can pull it up. Okay. Um, okay, there's the center two option. The top option is what we have currently. Uh, the bottom option is if we had a roundabout, so we're only looking at the middle two options. The first one has the bidirectional turn lane remaining like we currently have. But off to the side, you see a separated bike. They call it a cycle track. And there's concrete barriers between it and the roadway and it and the sidewalk and then the sidewalk. So you got a separated bike, separated sidewalk. That's what option, that option is. The option below that shows the raised curb median. But now you gotta squeeze the sidewalk and the bikes into one nine-foot lane. So the council is being asked to make a decision to, to FDOT, which of these two options do you want? Because there's a difference in the width from curb to curb. Essentially, do you, do you wanna have separated bike and ped or do you wanna have raised curb median? I think that's really the question we're asking. You can't have both.
Thank you, Todd. So we've got a recommendation that I like here at the bottom of the summary, which is to hold a workshop meeting on Tuesday, October fourth, twenty twenty-two. This meeting would be utilized to provide citizens the opportunity to understand the alternatives offered and provide valuable feedback to the council. And there is also a second, include an agenda item on the subsequent regularity council meeting to provide correction to FDOT on options alternative one or two. So we need to decide and we can.
Point of reference.
Take that.
National night out is October fourth. That I, I, I didn't get the invitation from Sheriff Wayne Ivy. I think I'm correct. October fourth. National night out.
Was there a significance in that date chosen? Does that just seem like an ideal time?
Uh, it was the Tuesday two weeks before.
Yep. Do we, let's just ask this. Do we wanna have a workshop before, because FDOT wants us to tell them the alternative?
No.
That we want.
No, but I just wanna ask some questions. Do we need a nine-foot bike path?
It would be.
I'd like to talk about that at a workshop with the city.
It's combined bike and sidewalk.
I'm just looking, guys, this is a big conversation that we need to take a night by itself and we need to unpack this. Because there's no way we're gonna pick an alternative at ten oh five. Been here for five hours since five AM. And.
Five AM? No.
Or five PM. I am, my general comment is that I am very excited about this. I feel that we when you look at the state today, we're at forty-five miles an hour. They came in with a rose, a roundabout as a solution. We obviously expressed our desires. That roundabout was thirty miles per hour. We wanted thirty-five, so they went way low. And one thing that jumps out when you're looking at these alternatives, three, those trees, the height of those big palm trees, cartoon pictures catch your eyes, it looks like it's nicer. But we can go, height is not an issue. It's the diameter of the tree. So we can increase the height, just like the Everglades palms, the very thin ones on five twenty that you see there. Um, those are fine cuz there's a, a reka palm type, you know, thin, so you can have that beauty. Those are the things that I think we can talk about in a workshop and get it right and get down to one or two and overcome this sidewalk issue. The dedicated bike lane was a big thing is, do you want the bikers by themselves or on the pedway? And I think we get some cyclists in here and residents, invite everybody, come, and we need to come together as a community on this because it was rough after we had the workshop at the Radisson. Coming off that, there was a lot of opposition. So now we get to talk about no roundabout, you know, or a real solution.
Mr. Mayor, I would.
I like the city's recommendations.
Mr. Mayor, I would propose that we move a workshop to October eleventh. Because we have the Tuesday. It's just the following Tuesday.
October eleventh is my anniversary. And we have a.
How, how bad do you want this?
Mr. Hod, you've been married a long time. You gotta give me some wisdom here. Yeah. Yeah, I don't want it. Okay. I trust it. We can find a date. I mean, Todd can call a workshop without our consent.
Yeah, if you, if you just give me consensus to hold a workshop, we'll work on finding.
He'll fish it. We'll give him some feedback. Eleventh is an issue, fourth is an issue. So do we like the recommendations to do the workshop? And that second one there, is that for tonight? I don't think that's include an agenda item on this. Oh, that's just saying after the workshop.
Yes, after.
So November, December, we'll take it up. I love it. Do you, uh, anyone opposed to that idea? Okay, see, no opposed. I think you have consensus. Is that okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all. This is exciting. All right, ten oh eight PM. We did good. We are now moving on to. Oh, come on up, Jay. Please come up to the, speak as, on this.
I wanna clarify, are we talking about, you're talking about just the sidewalk around the North Atlantic Astronaut Boulevard area or is this all extending all the way up to the port or what are you talking about?
Mayor, can you have this gentleman identify himself?
Yeah, I'm, uh, JR, three hundred Monroe Avenue.
Thank you.
So Jay, I know you've been back and forth with your travel. I think we had spoke earlier. Are you aware that there was a proposed roundabout on A1A? Okay, just making sure we're on that.
And I just wanna clarify, all you can do is make a recommendation to FDOT. FDOT has the final say.
Absolutely. They've been fantastic. Yeah, the, um, they have shown a great desire to adhere to the citizens and work with this council, even though it's their road and they own it.
No, I just wanna clarify, what is the extent of the project we're talking about?
Two projects. Um, you can go to the FDOT website and kinda get more details. One of them runs from, uh, George King Boulevard pretty much all the way to, uh, International.
Long Point.
Long Point, I'm sorry, just north of International.
And I just wanna clarify my qualifications. I, I used to serve on the Citizen Advisory Committee for the Space Coast Transportation. Planning, I had to get a point of view. So, the A1A action plan is a long torture that's very familiar with it. And so I, I got that part. Can you extend all the way up to the port?
From George King Boulevard, yeah, the port there. And it runs, uh, it's only in the city of Cape Canaveral, the city limits as the overpass and it stops at Long Point right there by north of the Wells Fargo blank. The second project is aligning International Drive, which is a very small section where North Atlantic, International Drive and A1A there, that's a landmass, a smaller project space, but they, that's where they wanted to put the roundabout. That's a second project. They wanted to do that one first and then do the northern stretch. Uh, because, uh, this one was funded for engineering, the, the, the smaller project, the roundabout is funded for construction. And the other northern stretch, the majority of the road, the footprint, to answer your question?
Yeah.
It's not even funded for engineering.
Funded for design.
It is funded for design, so.
Here's the key. If I'm riding a bicycle, can I get all the way up to the port from say, the intersection of the Astronaut and North Atlantic? On that bike, on that.
With the proposed?
Yes.
The, uh, you can do it on a ped shared way? Or you can do it on your own dedicated bike lane?
I know, but can I get into the port because there was an issue or they did not wanna extend that into the port for something?
I do not know, but I think with your background and expertise and it serves on our.
Reasonable question.
That George King project includes the.
That George King project includes the bump out, which accesses the port.
Okay. Right. We haven't seen a lot of designs.
He he can, he can get on a pedway and go from where from North Atlantic and A one A all the way to George King.
Okay. I mean, that's something different. That, but that needs to be, because you talk about economic development. You want people coming from the port, using that pedway to walk into Cape Canaveral?
Right now, you can't do that.
It's amazing. That's one of the reasons I got.
Well, there is a, there is, there is a sidewalk.
Sidewalk, it's very easy. If it is there, it's not very attractive. But there is a sidewalk.
Okay, hopefully you can come to the workshop. We're gonna schedule. We really appreciate your help.
The other thing I'd ask is when you advertise these, if you could like put a choir in the library, not just put it on social media, put a choir in the library. Physical one, because not everybody's on social media. You want to get good participation.
Yep. For the workshop? Yep, that will be posted on the front marquee. I know at a minimum and and on social media and.
I just ask more than just putting it on.
Yeah, and our new digital city marquee sign or city manager.
But it would be on the weekly update as well.
Which is emailed out, so.
I'm talking about a physical poster like in the library. It doesn't, not really work.
Thank you very much. Understood. Thank you, Jay. Okay, great. We have consensus there. I'm looking forward to whatever date we decide. That concludes item number, was it twelve? Yep, twelve. And now we are moving on to item number thirteen and it is ten thirteen PM. I do have a card on this one from Mister Campbell, who I see back there. Item thirteen is to discuss the city council meeting production enhancements, upgrades, continuing virtual meeting room, VMR participation at city meetings except for emergencies, provide direction to staff regarding. Cam, I'm gonna let the city, if you don't mind, just hold just a second right there. And I'm letting the city manager give a quick overview. I think it'd be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And we do have two representatives from IM Solutions sitting in the audience tonight that can answer any questions. This came about because because of COVID, we decided we had to deal with everybody's doing council meetings from their home. How are we gonna have council meetings? We got go-to webinar. We did it remotely. The government, the governor allowed suspended physical forums, so that we're allowed to do that. That sunset, we had to go back to meeting in person. And we stopped doing the go-to webinar. And then we had recurrence in January of this year of a COVID variant, Delta variant. We brought it back for that. And then we had several discussions. Well, do we want to keep this? Well, staff would really not have this. We're not good at this, actually. And there's very problematic. We'd like to get away from it. Mayor suggested in one of those meetings, well, we could outsource that. We could support outsourcing that. And then we also started talking about what are better ways to do this. And he said, we're gonna keep our nose to the grindstone. We're gonna look for better ways. So we've been doing that. Concurrent with that, city council also said, we'd like to consider enhancing the video quality of our video recordings, audio and video recordings. Currently, there's one camera on that wall. And when you look at this, you just see a small picture of Dyson. I think that's the mayor up there. It's so small, but it looks like him. And so this would be adding three more cameras. And you could zoom in, you could pan and tilt, and you could be, you know, a camera on the speaker who's there at the podium. An overall enhancement. And there's a device that combines all of this and it's called a Tricaster. This is what IM Solutions is recommending that takes all these video sources and audio sources and puts them into a place where you can mix them and do screen fades and swipes and put little tags and automate things where it's on the mayor and it says Wes Morrison right there on the bottom of it. So many things to make enhanced professional video production. So when you go look at this on YouTube years from now, wow, that's so much better. They really enhanced that that quality of that recording. So those are the services that IM Solutions is proposing to solve these two problems that we're talking about. They've got prices in there from forty thousand to sixty thousand dollars, three different options you could do. And also there's a price in there for manning the the control station to record this. It's a hundred dollars per man hour to have somebody there doing that during a meeting. And also, if you want to outsource the VMR, that can also be done through the Tricaster. There is still has to host an exterior application like Zoom. But it can come right into that Tricaster and be a source there. So you can mix that right into the whole production. It's a very seamless production. That has to be manned as well. And that's a hundred dollars an hour. So you got a guy or a gal here at a hundred dollars an hour, another one here at a hundred dollars an hour. It's two hundred dollars an hour to have both of that. We have a five-hour meeting. It's a thousand dollars. We have twelve meetings a year, it's twelve thousand dollars a year to budget for that. The sixty thousand dollars a year, if you spend that much for it, that's a one-time expense that gets us all the gear. So what we're asking for is their interest to pursue all, some or none of the products and services. Number two, are we gonna, if we're gonna do this, do we want to do it for our boards as well? Maybe those boards don't want that, all that. I don't know. Maybe they do. And number three is about sole sourcing versus competitive bid. Currently, AM Solutions has been heavily involved with the city. All the equipment that is running all EV in here now was provided and serviced by them. They were part of the design team that made this. So I do have a concern about putting it out to bid at the point of integration with a new, new vendor, there could be troubleshooting issues where we have to call both of them to solve a problem. So that could be justification for sole source to keeping it all with IM Solutions. So with that, Mayor, IM Solutions is here and they can answer any questions or correct any, make clarifications for anything I misspoke on there. Mayor.
Thank you very much, City Manager. I want to go to public comment. Be respectful, Mister Campbell. And I do have another one from Mister Hodge as well.
So Ted Campbell, three oh seven South Drive. I have used the interactive portion multiple times over the past couple of years for various reasons, COVID and my health in particular. And I've found it to be reasonably well-done with the way it's going now. And I know that there are things out there that are a lot better. But I don't want it to be a budget busting exercise. I think, I think we can improve visibility of the council to all our citizens. We can improve visibility of all our boards to all of our citizens without taking us in the toilet for budget issues. There are other ways to do it. And I'm also totally opposed to sole source on anything digital media related because it's a very competitive industry and you can always get a better price. I know that for a fact. Identifying the requirements that you need is the most important thing. And let go of, you know, the issues you have today. Let go of that and design a system that you want. And then have it bid competitively and get somebody who has a track record of being able to do it. Please do not abandon the ability for people to interact with council and boards online. It isn't a matter of how many people that use it. It's what we should be doing to try and get people to use it and get more participation in our city government. I know you've looked at others, other cities to see what they do and try and go down to what other cities do. Please don't do that. Have other cities look to us to see what they could step up to do. Don't try to water this down. This is the way the world's going. COVID taught us some lessons. Work can be done differently. We need to embrace it and not try and cheapen. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Hodge.
Sure. Yeah, we just want to make sure that we have this capability. I'm not asking how you do it. But but we do need to maintain this capability. This allows us citizens to view the meetings real time, be able to make comments before the council votes on issues on the agenda. With limited parking at City Hall when there's a big issue, people are unable to park. Sometimes they have to give up and go home. Also allows people that don't drive, that are sick, out of town, disabled, listen to the meetings real time and not later to make comments before the council votes. Thank you for looking at this.
Thank you, Mister Hodge. I just want to open up with a statement of the city. I want to thank staff for digging in and looking into this because there's a couple, there's a few decisions as our city managers. One, do we want to improve the acts, the the production, right? The experience someone has. And I think my, my answer to that is yes. Do we want to allow that for boards and city staff? Yes, I think that's good. I think, so that's an equipment, a hard cost. And and I know that there was some training and stuff in there as well and how to use it. Do we want somebody else to to outsource and do it? I think that's a decision you would have to make, obviously, Todd. We don't have any of those. But if you think that it's better opposed to use it not, you know, not the highest and best use at your team's time. My statement's where I support that because it's that important to me that citizens have access. And that it's high, you know, quality enough to where you can see. And so I think the capabilities, the functionality of this is excellent. Sole source, I I think city. I don't like that. I I agree with Mister Campbell. I think we need to be bidding. And then as far as the labor, the costs at the hundred dollars an hour, two hundred. To get out of immediate, to run, go to webinar, which is what we have today, go to meeting. I don't mind as chair and the same thing with the boards of being able to manage that. You and I chatted about that. And if that can help short term, and I would like for the whole council to be able, if possible, to see. We're talking about what we're using today to get some immediate relief. To see, hey, there's a hand raised and we can all see it. And when somebody comments, I'd like to test that. Maybe we test that in a workshop or it's not. First time we're doing it. Maybe we come in for just an experimental. And I'd like to try that as a kind of a Band-Aid for the short run. And then as far as the equipment goes, yeah, I think we can figure that out later. If the budget doesn't support it or we can't figure out a way. I think ARPA was really clear on things that for public health being able to remotely participate was a public health issue in COVID. There's environmental impacts of that, the time and the resources it's taken for people to come here today. So being able to do that from home, I think, is justified in ARPA. We'll let the attorneys help us out there. But if it is, that would be a fantastic ARPA expense that is justified, in my opinion, for for help or from a public health standpoint and just expanding transparency, access, citizen engagement. And Cape Canaveral is, might be one of the only cities that's doing this. The two-way engagement, the ability to, no matter where you are in the world. And we were scared to do this, keep this going because we thought, gosh, people will just come on. Unfortunately, it hasn't happened. Or they're not residents. It's working so far. We had over three hundred people attend last meeting virtually. That's impressive. Three hundred twenty-six people lives were impacted by this meeting from their home. And this room was packed. That's over five hundred people that are engaged in this city. I'll take, compare that to any other city. I think we're doing really good. And so this, improving the quality of production's awesome. Do we have the funds? I, I'm not gonna sit here and say yes, but immediately we're funding go-to webinar. I might be able to help there. Our council can help. And if we can figure out a way to pay for it out of ARPA, but we should put it to bid. If, unless we truly do not have to, and sole source is one hundred percent allowed. Then, okay, I'll look at that. But I want to make sure I understand it. Those are my comments. I don't think, City Manager, you just want direction on generally, do we like the idea of it?
Yes, sir. Consensus and direction. And if you have any Q and A for IM Solutions.
Not, as of right now, I want to thank y'all for, who's with IM Solutions? Thank y'all for being here. Support. I I will ask one question. Come on up. While you're, while you're coming up, I'll ask it to save time. When you train, when you get it set up and you train a city, do you train in a way where you can walk away and we can run it?
Yes and and no. Depends, depends on what you do for your staff.
Okay.
Media technology is media technology and they need to know something about media technology, media production. And so there's a little bit of a let me, let me just start from the beginning here. Just to give you, this is Bill Davis, IM Solutions. We're a media technology company, right? We've installed these systems through multiple City of Melbourne, City of Cocoa, Canaveral Port Authority. We've done, we've done lots of different audio systems, lots of this stuff for your municipalities, right? And so we get the process of how you guys have to work and how you have to create the agendas and the workflow that goes through there. There's a little bit of a workflow associated with that. And so that understanding of that is a staff member that has to have somewhat of a good understanding and management of workflow. And then when you add on the component to the media and the social media and slash of what we call web conferencing. Then you add another layer of managing people, raising their hands and or trying to get them into a queue. And and that becomes a little bit of a challenge too. So it becomes people that have to do this and think and logically get together and work together as a group in a team. So outsourcing for twelve thousand dollars is less than a just to kind of give you an idea was we do, we already do the production for the city of Cape Canaveral, uh, city of the port. We do it for City of Melbourne and we also do it for Barefoot Bay.
When you say you do the production, you mean you have a staff member there running the switchboard or the tri? Okay.
And I am a solution staff member.
Yes. That's a hundred dollars an hour. And so the, the, the thing about it, though, is that there are technologists as well as a production person. So the technologists, they hit, keep the audio going. Make sure your mics are working. Something went down, something technology broke. Because it's technology, right? It's computers. It'll break. Someday it'll, something not work. And so there's always somebody that has to fix those and and do that side. So there's a, there's a technology component to it. And then there's the production side of it, which is more of like a, a graphics artist, a, a website designer type person that has to know the switch. And do you put your name up and do the agenda and start doing that kind of stuff and and do the logical flow. So yes, it can be trained. It's a specialty as a, as a person. And so you hire somebody for that? Great, go for it. That's, a lot of, a lot of them do that to you. What we do is for your type of meetings, we do it on more of the grander scale and lots of production agenda and all that stuff. But for the little, smaller meetings, it's just more back to the basic of good camera, good shot. Gives you the good visibility and they're not the higher level meetings of need. It's more of a CRA-type meetings.
Right, a board meeting.
Board meetings, those kind of things. And that's, that's where we make it what we call the simple meetings. You just go in, press it, start it. There, there's, we usually set it up with presets. And you just press the preset and go, it's off and running, right?
I'm gonna have to pause there. We're at ten twenty-nine.
I just wanted to give you an understanding. So we have a long background and what we're recommending and trying to give you guys is a good solution. It's a, it's definitely out there. You can take it to bid. We don't, we're agnostic in that sense. We just try to make sure that you guys get requirements down and you have a good solution going forwards. And we'll see how it runs.
I'm, thank you. Thank you for offering this service. I I hope we can figure out a way to to get our arms around this. It makes sense of it. So generally.
I haven't heard from the rest of the council. I don't know if you want to ask.
We need an extension of time.
I, I'll make a motion. We extend fifteen minutes. Fifteen. We still have Mister Stewart here that has been here all night, so.
Second, got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellam, second by Councilmember Willis to extend to ten forty-five. City Clerk.
Councilmember Davis. Mayor Pro Tim Kellam.
Four.
Mayor Morrison.
Four.
Councilmember Raymond.
Against.
Councilmember Willis.
Four.
So what, so what we need, what do we need to get this?
We just need to hear from the rest of the council.
Yep.
I think it's, yes, I thank you. I think it's a great idea. I, you know, as, as less money we can use is the better. But you had, I had spoken to you about, you're trying to get the staff out of doing this and, you know. I, I don't blame you for that. It's very trying. But, um, I, you know, I think it's up to you really what, what we can afford and, um, but we definitely need to keep the the whole thing together. Um, so people can be at the meetings from home.
And on the Soul Source matter.
Um, Soul Source matter. If it winds up costing us more money to put it to bid than it does Soul Source. I don't see where that's.
We wouldn't know until we did it.
No, we don't want to make that.
Right? Well, I'm, you know, Soul Source. Put it out the bid. Like, uh, Mr. Campbell said, you know, there's a lot of IM people out there. I would be open to putting it out the bid.
Thank you. Counsel, general direction?
Sounds great, but I don't know if we really can afford this. And you've been talking about tightening the belt. And I think that this is a wonderful thing, but we don't have it in the budget. So I'm not, you know, I don't know how we're going to handle it. I'm not certain. I'll have to hear more about it.
My, my comment is that, uh, we don't know what it would cost putting it out to bid. But I would like to go with something at least slightly better than what we currently have. See what that bid comes back at. Then see if we can scrape together the the money to fund it, or we continue as we're going.
Thank you.
Um, I understand. You know, it would be nice to take it off of the staff. So I again agree, we need to see how much it's going to cost us and at that point decide what we can and can't do if we want to keep status quo or move forward.
Thank you. City Manager, I'd like a bid.
Uh, is there consensus on putting it out to bid? Okay.
My statement on that was unless it's clearly allowed under Soul Source. And that's just me. I'm speaking for myself.
No, I agree.
Soul Source has a time and a place. I, if, if it's allowed, I will look at that. I just want to make sure. So.
Okay, so, uh, I believe that's the next step then is to put it out to bid and then come back with the reports, uh, whatever we, whatever we come back with.
Yeah. Quest for quote or whatever. Okay. Thank y'all very much for, for hanging out with us. Um.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anywhere else?
I'm, it's just one step and then I think there's more to revisit and learn.
Yeah, these are big items that the staff worked hard on. I'm excited to get these accomplished. Down to the end, it gets tough, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, we are at the moment, I think we've been waiting for, which is the last item. Uh, number fourteen, economic development. This is one that I submitted. Thank y'all. And it is, I, I used kind of a, an email I think we might have all been a part of from resident Stuart Smith and added some in there and pointed out some some items. And this kind of been a long conversation over the past few years from longtime resident and somebody who I think we're likely to have in our community, Stu Smith, who's involved with our veterans, involved FAVOB, involved with, uh, just being a committed resident to be a part of the system. And we always find ourselves talking about economic development. He put this email together and it was so good, I just figured I would try to capture it and, and let's just talk about it. And so obviously tonight, um, if we don't get where we want to be, I would request that this be moved as old business. So we handle it first at the next meeting. But I at least want to say economic development, if we have all had a chance to read this, and if Stu, if you want to talk. Did I get a, I don't know if I got a card. I'm sorry, I had a bunch. But if you want to, I'll make sure you have a time to. Okay. But it, just in general, economic development, we've talked about it. How can we improve it? We talked about a position on economic development, adding that on. We voted on that. I think it came back with one, two, and three. There was a ranking system. But no matter what, our city manager and I just talked about it again, currently Dave helps with this. Todd's been in that role. They both share it. And one of the things is at a minimum, no matter who does it, being able to communicate metrics and report on it, I think is important in some settings, some economic development goals and talking about it. But getting back to the structure of it, um, adding it to the comp plan was one of the, the original emails that came over from Mr. Smith. And if he wants to elaborate that, only can. Now, it is, I think, mentioned in there within item E. Um, and we want to just make sure we're fulfilling that. It's that important, that it's strong enough. And the glaring and the biggest issue I hope we walk away with, whether I'd love to have a full-time economic development director. But our economic development board, which Councilmember Willis, you've sat on, the first inception board, I think we ever had, is revitalizing that, getting them back. I put from twenty thirteen to twenty twenty-two the amount of times that they met. They met in twenty twenty and the only reason they met in twenty twenty was because we had just came out of Covid and we had requested that they meet. They met and they never met again. We got some actually really good stuff out of that meeting. But it's been, uh, we're approaching five years, six years now, straight, no meeting. And there's an economic development piece to every, almost everything we do. And so Mr. Smith, uh, had presented a application to sit on that board. And he had, uh, I wanted to get an update on that and react, getting that board back. Got a citizen who wants to participate, wants to be a part of it. He's questioning some big things like the comp plan, making sure we're good, very talented. Support that. That's what I tried to articulate from his email. And I hope the council, at a minimum, can consider getting an economic development board meeting back. And hopefully we can get some resolution with whether or not appointing Stuart, following our process to make sure he's on here. So by the next meeting, if we can have some sort of appointment or wherever we are with that, that would be very helpful. You would like to speak or if any council members?
I'd, I'd like to ask.
Um, against your Smith, uh, two one five four drive, where all the cool kids live. So, uh, Mr. Dickey and I were trying to get a meeting today, unfortunately they have a schedule conflict. I'm trying to just get a handle on what the city has done so far and what the city wants to do. My assumption was that the strategic planning process would inform economic development. It's a little confusing to me that a city like this city would not have economic development or a cornerstone of a strategic plan. So I haven't seen that plan yet. I'm not quite sure where it is at. And I don't need to go too far with that conversation tonight. But we're Bovard's port of entry. If you really think about it as a city. And we have one of the biggest economic development
Engines?
Yeah, just events in the history of this city coming with the aquarium. And I was in Atlanta when we opened up the Atlanta Aquarium. People, I would meet people from San Francisco. I would meet people from New York City who came to Atlanta to come to that aquarium. We're, we're sitting literally on the edge of this economic tsunami. And we don't even have an economic development board functioning. That's why I put the application in. I want to work with Mr. Dickey and support city manager and this council. And I'm in your service. You just need to direct me the way you want to go. Um, and I'm also confused a little bit from a, from a planning perspective too, that you know, the, the three largest landowners, like no, in this city weren't involved in the strategic planning process. These are the three largest economic development engines in this city. So there's some disconnect from a planning perspective. And there's some disconnect because we don't have a functioning economic development council that represents business owners and folks like me are very, very interested in. And we have an opportunity that I think we will miss if we don't take action on. So that's my comment to the council.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions?
No.
Any comments?
Thank you, Stu, for being here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just think this is very important. And if you look through the strategic plan um, and the revisioning, it comes up again and again that people here want businesses and they want economic development. And I agree with Mayor that I would like to have an economic director. But if we could get a board to start with, that's a step in the right direction. And, um, I think it's very important for our future to, um, bring businesses here. We have the Space Center. We have the Space Force. We have the, uh, Aquarium coming. There's a lot of business that we could attract to our town. And, and it's very important for us to have a board. I've talked, talked to a few other business people that are interested in being on on the board if we could get it going. So I think it's very important. And we should definitely revitalize the, uh, economic uh, development board. That's.
And I mean, we, we've got a decision. We can be reactive, right? We can let developers and other people make decisions about land usage in this city. Or we can be proactive and attract the type of business industry and residential. If, if, there's a lot of property in this city that's available for development. Do we want it to be multifamily units? Do we want it to be, you know, um, uh, single residential communities? How do we influence that? How do we attract people that we want to come to our city with, uh, industry, especially with the Space Center? You know, and we should have, um, we should have a front-facing opportunity for people to interact with the city so that we can help inform how the city grows and develops.
Counsel?
Thank you, Stuart. Um, Mr. Dickey. Do we still have two members sitting on the bed? Well, I know, I know when I left the bedboard, there were two others left. I don't know if there's. Okay. Um, well, since I now sit on the Land Use and Economic Development Legislative Policy Committee. I'm again very interested in economic development for Cape Canaveral. And I think if we can recruit people to sit on that board, I would like to see it active because we can affect some change. But I'm all in favor of reactivating and trying to promote that board and recruit people to sit on that board. And I know two business owners that would be very willing to sit on it. I just have to convince them to give up their poker night and go do something. So, um, but I would like to see that board reactivated.
Thank you. Councilmember Raymond? Any comments?
No, no comments, just listening.
Councilmember Davis?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, I think that's good news. I think that the board is step one. I will go, all of us go recruit everybody. Tell, if we're doing it right, we're going to have enough people where everyone can't make the board. I think people don't know about it. And so maybe there is some staff, um, open call for boards, maybe not just economic development, but open applications, maybe do a couple of social media posts, really try to get it out front, maybe a banner on the website. Oh, that's your world. You decide, but put it out front where people really see it.
The sign.
The sign would be good is, we're looking for board members and maybe nudge economic development. Got one application. We've got two existing. I think they need to be honored and respected first to make sure they still want to maintain. That's a quorum if they do. It's three. So we really have a board today potentially. Um, I see you're, hi.
Uh, I don't know if Todd, you want me to respond? Um, yeah, I mean, we're, we're any, any help that the city can get with economic development, I think is going to be a good thing. I think we're all wanting the same thing.
Yeah.
It's just a function of how much time any one person has to, to effectuate the, uh, the desires of the council. And, um, if, you know, I personally, if, uh, don't kill me here, Todd. I personally, if, if, if we could, uh, if, if, if I could get some assistance or if it's not me, me particularly, but if the city could get some assistance with economic development, whether it's a board, whether it's a full-time person or a part-time person or a volunteer, whatever that is, I think any efforts that we can make are going to be a good thing because Stuart's right, we really don't get out and proactively, um, look for opportunities. I mean, there's, I've, I've worked in organizations where they have dedicated economic development corporations. Lot bigger than the City of Cape Canaveral, but there, there, there's, there's a role and there's a role for people like that. And it's an expertise. I mean, you have folks who are, they are trained, they are educated, that's what they do. And they're very good at it. And, and could somebody like that or somebody who has a desire help the city? Of course they could. And, uh, and, and we do have some some wonderful assets to build on and leverage. So.
Neighborhood.
Well, maybe we tell them about all the boards because if you can't fill it. And we try to get it going. And I hear you loud and clear. We all want it. Step one, build the board. Step two, to answer your question, we did a strategic planning report. No. Strategic visioning report. So when you said strategic plan, right, I'm not aware of a strategic plan. And I, and I caught myself saying that. And I'm going, we actually, because I think you're.
They helped you with the envisioning process and the cycle.
We, and, and, and they capture kind of what happened and some of the summarized aggregated data. And so one of the first things with the board and with a vote and a recommendation is let's put an economic development plan together and the board can work it and propose it and get it to the council. And maybe that develops into real tangible projects and strategies that we can implement. Thank you so much. Anything else for?
Mayor, if I can regurgitate what I'm hearing, that there is council consensus to make an attempt to, uh, reconstitute the Business and Economic Development Board. And the first order of business for that board would be to revisit the previously established Economic Development Action Plan and update it for the council.
Love it. Have they approved those minutes yet? Did they approve the minutes from twenty twenty?
If that was the last meeting, no, they have not.
Anything else on this? I don't think. Are you good, uh, city manager?
Yes, sir, thank you.
City Attorney, any reports? Thank you so much for. Thank you. City Clerk, are we good? Counsel, any final reports?
I, I just have one thing. Um, on September twenty-fifth at Veterans Park, there's a Gold Star family, uh, memorial, whi- which is really important. Um.
Yeah, Sunday, eleven AM.
Okay. That's what I said. The twenty-fifth. Yeah.
Twenty-fifth. And where is it? Veterans Memorial Park?
Yes.
What time?
Eleven.
Eleven.
Eleven o'clock, Sunday, the twenty-fifth, Veterans Memorial Park, a Gold Star family. Be there?
Yeah.
Thank y'all. With that.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you all for hanging out. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ten forty-nine.